I'd like to welcome everybody to the May 6, 2020, regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council. Consistent with the county shelter in place orders and with the governor's executive orders, allowing this meeting to be held virtually, all council members and staff are participating by video conference from various physical locations. Members of the public can watch or listen to the meeting by any of the many options. And I'm going to ask that our clerk put on the screen the information about where and how people can watch and participate in tonight's meeting.
Sure.
Great. Perfect. Does that show the whole screen, Michelle?
It does. The last thing is my email address.
Okay. Great. And this may work for folks out there. But take a quick picture of that. So it's right there on your iPhone or your whatever kind of device you use, so that you can see that and use any of those ways to communicate with us tonight. Just give it a couple more seconds and we will continue. Okay. Great. So let's begin with a roll call. So clerk, may I please have the roll call?
Yes, Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Here.
And Mayor Goddard.
I am here. Thank you.
May I also add for the record that we have the following staff is present: Town Manager Garrett Toy. Planning Director has just signed in. And our town attorney, Janet Colson. We have a number of consultants who seem to be showing on the screen. And I don't want to remove them. Thank you. They'll be for later items on the agenda.
And clerk, I also see Michael Vivret, who's our Finance Director.
Oh, I don't see him. Oh, Michael. Hi. I'm sorry about that. Finance Director Michael Vivret.
Okay. Terrific. So let's move forward with the approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting. Unless there's anyone who wants to move anything around, I would like to entertain a motion. Would anyone like to move?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda and posting.
Okay. Second?
Second.
All right, great. Kohler?
Would this be the time to ask about pulling something from consent? Or would that be when the consent?
No, Bruce, we'll do that when we look over the consent calendar. Okay, great. So I have a motion, Kohler, second read. And we're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote on, just so that everybody hears how we're each voting on. This is how it will go all evening. So I will go ahead and do that. Councilmember Hellman?
I'm sorry.
We're just approving the agenda.
Hi.
Abit of posting.
Hi.
Councilmember Kohler?
Hi.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Yes.
And Mayor Goddard. Yes. Okay, motion carries. And I would like to also, at this time, report out on a closed session which we held on April 21. The Town Council adopted a resolution determining the industrial disability of employee David Cron. The resolution is available upon request. And moving on, I'm going to read the meeting protocol. And actually, it's kind of wonderful that the meeting protocol is the same as the meeting protocol before COVID. So something remains the same. "The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridicule the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility." And I'd like to ask, well, I don't know if you have to turn off your cell phone. But do mute yourselves, those of us here on the screen, if you're not speaking. And yeah, so I just covered that part. "And the Town Council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule." So we already showed the screen for how people can participate, but I'm assuming there may be some new members who've joined. So let's just take 30 more seconds and show that screen. Thanks, Michelle. You want to share that? Great. All right, that's great. And also, Michelle, I'm actually going to ask you to read through the variety of ways to do this, in case this just feels like a lot of information. So we can stop sharing the screen and I'll let you go ahead and review for people how they can participate tonight.
Okay. I could just read it from the screen. Would that be okay?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
First, if you're watching from our website, obviously, you can see that. On the Town website, it's www.townoffairfax.org. On the homepage, there's a "Watch Live" button. You can also watch it from the CMCM website. CMCM is the people who do our video recordings and broadcasts. The feed on their website, I understand, will be a little faster than the feed on the Town of Fairfax website. The Town of Fairfax website is last in line. And so there's sometimes as much as a minute and a half delay from this Zoom meeting to the time on the Town website. It's also available on cable TV, Comcast Channel 27, or AT&amp;T Channel 99. You can join the Zoom meeting that we are on. There is a URL on our screen. You go to your own Zoom account, which you can download for free, the app. And the webinar ID is 853-3603-4777. You can also listen in by phone if you don't have a computer or a TV, calling 669-900-6833. If you press *67 before dialing, that will hide your phone number from the screen. And you will need the webinar ID, which is 853-3603-4777. And to make public comments during public comment times, when the mayor opens public comment time for each item, you can, if you are on Zoom, you use the Raise Your Hand function, and you're added to the queue, and then we will call on you in the order that hands are raised. If you are on the phone, you just press *9 to be added to the queue. And again, we will call on you when it's your turn to speak. You can also use the public comment form on our website right below the video feed. Or you can email me directly at mgardner@townoffairfax.org. And please put the agenda item in the subject line. I will read your email out loud, up to three minutes, which is the amount of time per speaker. And that's about 400 words.
Great. Thank you, Michelle, for the extraordinary work in making this as easily accessible and transparent as possible. And doing a stellar job. Much appreciated. Before we go on to, oh, Barbara?
I just wanted to mention, I think Michelle may have forgotten to mention that if you want your name to be known with your comment, please put in your email, if you send in an email. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yes, I'm not reading who the emails are from unless you want that as part of your comment. If you want to be recognized, that's your choice.
Okay, thank you so much. Tonight, if I may take one moment, I want to dedicate this meeting to the community and the many, many silver threads that are being spun by the people of Fairfax. A point in time observation is that I have noticed, like never before, clean air. I've never seen such an explosion of volunteerism. There is an appreciation of the vital need for us to support our local businesses. And people are coming together and working and creating ways for us to do that. And there is a visceral sense of gratitude for those who serve our community everywhere, from our grocery clerks to our first responders and our medical personnel. The threads of these, these threads can sustain us through this crisis and way beyond. This week, we lost a member of our community and a very dear friend of mine who exemplified these values and whose memories will remind us every day that we will prevail. He is dearly missed, and we send our love to all of his family and friends, which is huge. So I wanted to give that shout out and dedication before we start tonight. And with that, we're going to move on to announcements. So we do have vacancies on boards and commissions. The applications are avail- Michelle, how are we doing applications while we can't go to Town Hall?
You can email them.
So they're on our website. So any applications are on the website?
Yes. You can also send it in by mail, because I do come in here two times a week and check the mail.
Okay, excellent. So there's a vacancy on the Planning Commission. There's a vacancy on Parks and Rec Commission. And there are up to three vacancies on the Climate Action Committee. As always, the Fairfax Food Pantry continues to serve. The Fairfax Food Pantry served over 200 individual households this week. That's up, that's up almost 50% from the average pre-COVID, which was about 130 meals, I'm sorry, bags of groceries being served. So just a big shout out to all the folks and the volunteers and Larry and Holly Bragman, who are making that work. And we continue to need more food to feed more people. To receive the Town Agendas, newsletters, and updates by email, please do go to the Town of Fairfax website and sign up to receive notifications. And this is more important than ever. We really want to know who you are. And this is the best way for us to stay together and take care of everyone. Spring cleaning extra. Spring cleaning extra. That's an interesting framing. So this week, May 4, if you have not had your regular garbage pickup day, this is the week for our curbside cleanup program. You are encouraged to put out up to 14 extra bags of either green waste, recycling, or landfill at your curbside, and it will be picked up. That is a service that's provided two times per year, and this is the week. We've done a lot of promoting, so I hope people have availed themselves of that program. Chipper Days 2020. I'm thinking that I'm going to give the dates when we reach that item in the agenda, because this is just a lot of talking and announcing. So you will have the dates when we reach that agenda item. I would also like to make a very exciting announcement, and that is that the farmers market is here. And it's taking place right now with a very safe distancing. They have experience in doing this in multiple markets. I'm actually able to look outside there and see that things are working fabulously. Many people don't know about it. There is an online order form, and you can go to And it's a very easy order form, and then you can come curbside pickup. So we're inventing as we go along, but they're doing a fantastic job. Please support your farmers. It's now more than ever. And one last announcement is that we piloted and began a pilot program for the mobile shower care units, which the Big Town Council expressed support for back in 2018. It will take place and is hosted at the Fairfax Community Church, which is on the corner of Oak Manor and Sir Francis Drake. Downtown Streets Team manages the program. And this is a county-funded program that the Town of Fairfax pays into. And we're very excited to bring this service. The church is thrilled to host it. And if you want any more information about it, please look at the Mobile Shower Care Marin or Downtown Streets Team to get more information. And that's it for announcements. Any other council members have announcements or anything they'd like to let us know about? Seeing none, we're moving on to, oop, John?
Yeah, you said that these mobile showers are there. Did you say what time?
Oh, gosh, I did not.
And also, who is the good friend who you're dedicating them meeting to?
Sorry. Yeah, let me do the shower question. And that is Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 12:00. Pardon me, I should have said that. It's not full time. Saturday mornings, 9:00 to 12:00, and it is running in conjunction with the food pantry. So there were many people who visited the food pantry and were very interested to know that there was somewhere that people could shower who have not had any ability to access public showering and sanitation facilities. It also offers a bathroom, three bathrooms, and a sanitizing station. So let people know who you think may need that. There are more people out there in need than we may see. My friend is Dan Hennessy. Okay. Thank you, John. So we're going to move on to open time for public expression. So members of the public may address the council for up to three minutes regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-agendized item unless it can be demonstrated to be of an emergency nature or the need to take action arose after the posting of the agenda. So we're going to open it up to those of you who are here to speak live. And I would like to recommend that people, if you're emailing your comment, go ahead and do so now. Because of the delay, we'd like to give you the time to send that email and start with anyone who may be wishing to express themselves. Michelle, do we have anyone in the queue?
Yes, Mayor, we have two people in the queue. And I'll just say that I'll start, yeah, with the Zoom comments that I can see. And then I'll move to the phone and written comments.
Great.
Okay. And I wanted to ask the Town Manager if he would be keeping the clock. So that you can-
Yes. I will set that up right now.
I'll be looking at the clock, and so I can gently remind people when their time is up.
Okay, so up to three minutes. All right. So the first person here to speak is Walt Vernon. I have unmuted you, I think.
Hi, Walt.
Hey, can you guys see me or no?
No.
Do you want to? I don't know if I have the permission to do that.
No, actually, it's set up so that it's a webinar, so only the panelists have video.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. I'm speaking to you tonight in my capacity as chairman of the Climate Action Committee. Just wanted to give you a very brief update on where we are. Although, and I suppose remind everybody that although the virus is very bad and tragic, and certainly I have people that I know who are suffering. The UN Secretary General last week in his remarks reminded us not to take our eye off the climate change challenge, because it will cause far worse suffering if we fail to deal with it. And actually, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration released a report a couple days ago saying that there's now a 75% likelihood that this will be the hottest year in recorded history. So we are seeing reminders of it every day. I know later on the consent agenda, there will be a motion by Councilman Vice Mayor Ackerman to permit the Climate Action Committee to meet this month. And I support that and hope we can. We have a number of subcommittees who are working very hard. And it would be great if we could convene and continue our work. So I support Vice Mayor. I did want to just quickly update you on a couple of things. One of the things that we are working to do is to improve our processes a little bit, partly by changing the standing date of our meeting, or the date of our standing meeting. I've been working with Councilmen, Councilmembers Hellman and Ackerman, as well as the town staff to go through the logistics of that. And that's in process, not complete at this point. But hopefully that will work. And what I'm hoping to do with that is to allow us to give you a monthly report on our activities, what we've accomplished, where we need help in some way, direction from you, help from staff, whatever, and what we're focusing on for the next month. And I hope that will be helpful to all of us. And so I'm not sure if you guys have to weigh in on that at some point or not, but I'm sure people will help me figure that out. And I did want to just mention a few accomplishments that have occurred in the past month since we last spoke. We're continuing to work on our climate action plan. We're working with the consultant who does this work with all of the towns. We're putting together some surveys that will go out to town residents and thinking about how to involve the town. And this will be a critical document, because it will set our commitments as a town for what we will achieve over the next decade. So it's really important that we do this well and in conjunction with you all. Our team, who's focused on doubling participation in Deep Green, is working very hard. We've got presentation materials ready. We're looking to do outreach, Zoom outreach to people and different civic groups. We have a rap video that's been produced by the kids at Drake High School. We've got a number of initiatives going there, so that's working very well. Our committee that's focused on decarbonizing town operations, you heard from Councilman Ackerman last time about the microgrid. That's certainly an exciting possibility. We want to continue our work with staff on the potential to actually decarbonize our buildings and to look at the internal price on carbon. Would very much like to work with you all on that. And also the Marin Clean Energy Regulations. So a lot going on. And thank you for your support.
Great. Thank you so much, Walt. And we'll be discussing the consent item shortly. Appreciate all the hard work. Wish we could see you. So any other public comment? You're muted.
Sorry. Jody Timms?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, great. So Jody Timms, you're representative to the Commission on Aging. Just wanted to give a quick report. The Commission is meeting on a regular basis via Zoom. So we have a meeting tomorrow for a few hours to catch up with each other, but we have been in touch. I did want to mention also that the Age Friendly Marin Network has also been meeting regularly, twice a month. They are having, we're all having a meeting tomorrow as well. But all of the age-friendly community task forces and leaders have been, well, many of them have been meeting with their local municipalities and supporting efforts to reach out to vulnerable seniors and others. So and also meeting frequently with the VOAD, the Marin VOAD, which is the volunteer organizations that's active in disaster. So lots of Zoom meetings going on, Age Friendly Fairfax itself. The task force will be meeting this Friday. And we've been a little quiet in terms of our forums. We've canceled our forums and our Breakfast with Friends, but we hope to have two forums this month in May. One on emergency preparedness on May 15, and then also one on being an ally to to individuals unlike yourself, whether it's race, or gender, or sexual orientation, et cetera. That is scheduled tentatively for May 29. And then our Breakfast with Friends is scheduled for May 20. So continue to check the website of the town for our updates. And we hope to get a newsletter out. But just wanted to bring everybody up to date on those things. And also, of course, the Rec Department, Parks and Rec, have been active with many of their classes. Tamela's been offering her yoga classes six times a week, which we really, really appreciate the town's support on that. And those classes have been packed. So anyway, I think that's it. I just wanted to touch base and thank you all for your support, as always. We're also really going to, at our task force meeting tomorrow, speak a little bit more in detail about how we continue the process of finding and locating and supporting vulnerable older adults in Fairfax. That is a goal of the task force, and I know it's a goal of the town and other groups. So we're looking forward and trying to figure out how we're going to weave all those pieces together for our next disaster, or power outage, or fire, hopefully not, et cetera. So we're hard at work. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody, so much for all the tireless work you do. Okay, so next, anyone else on there?
Yes, we have someone named Ricky A. I have unmuted you, actually.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Richard Applebaum, 61 Woodland.
Hi, Richard.
Sorry, I don't know how Zoom knows me in many configurations. Mayor's laughing because I have a lot of name things going on. So sorry to dampen the mood early on, but last meeting, when the whole issue of the new fire working group came up, as you know, public comment comes before council speaks. And there were a number of things that got said after we were no longer able to speak that were somewhat troubling for me. And I just felt that I wanted to share these things now. You don't really have a rule or a protocol that I can understand on how, when two or more people both would like to be appointed or to take a seat or represent the town, to resolve that, other than you just vote. And it's fine. And if four to one wants to vote, and that's how it is, that's fine. But what started to happen was each person was sort of laying out a resume. And in the matter of fire, which is still relatively new to everyone in the town, I don't believe that any of the council members has put years of time in working with a Todd Lando type or whatever. Everyone's sort of more or less at the same place. And what I felt happened, and I thought was very inappropriate, was that there was some kind of sort of like resume comparison dynamic. And I felt Councilmember Hellman was on the defensive. There's no way she's going to be able to, a new council member that's been on for a few months is going to be able to say that they have represented the town in this type of capacity compared to someone who's been on there for seven years. But that doesn't mean that she doesn't have the qualifications or knows how to comport herself and represent us. She's an elected, duly-elected official. And comments were made that all of us that called in on the front side and spoke in support of her, and there was no one that called in and supported anyone else, that we were all just campaign supporters of her, as though that we were nullified in our support of her. And I found, I was offended to think that somehow my support of her was only because I was a supporter of her candidacy. In fact, I had very specific reasons. And a couple of years ago, up during council meeting, Councilmember Kohler said, "I tend to be a rule follower," which I found very reflective of some of her approach to certain things. And so my support of Councilmember Hellman in this instance was because I felt that she would approach her role in that group in a certain way that I thought would be good for the town. So it's not a personal thing. And after Councilmember Hellman spoke and said a little bit of her professional life experience and the types of capacities that she's been in, Councilmember Reed then said, "Well, weren't you in marketing?" And I found that an outrageous statement, because I don't even know what that means. And I don't know what bearing that had, and it felt really, really not right. And I think there were really some issues. It's okay if the four longer-serving council people felt that, Councilmember Kohler, who I believe is also qualified, I'm not challenging her qualifications, but I felt that the way that conversation went, it felt like that decision was already predetermined. it felt like that decision was already predetermined. And I didn't like the way public comment, I think Mr. Keith called in to support. He had been very close and an advisor in some of the things about this group forming. And it just felt like it was very dismissive to our public comment to say that just because we had been supporters of her candidacy, that somehow that, that wiped out our input. So.
Richard, I'm so sorry, but your time's up.
Okay, no problem.
Point well taken.
I'm done.
Thank you for commenting. Next commenter, is there anyone else waiting to comment?
Yes, I would just like to report, I'm getting some emails saying that the, our website is, the feed's not working properly. And we had to create a separate page to make it work. And apparently a link is broken as well. So I'm trying to work on that if I seem distracted. But I wanted to read the, the meeting ID over the air, if I may, for the Zoom meeting.
Do you want to put it back up on the screen as well?
Yeah, that's a good idea, actually. Hang on. Well, I'll just read it so that the people who have written to me can hear it.
Okay.
And I understand there's some issues with the CM, CM feed. And so I'm trying to address that as well.
Okay.
We do have another speaker. Would you like to hear from them?
Absolutely.
It is Mark Bell. And I have, and you, oops. I've unmuted you? No, I have not.
I, I think he's unmuted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, several comments. First off, I think it's pretty absurd considering that we've been in confinement for almost two months to even think about having a farmer's market in May, besides the fact that virtually no one is there as far as being a farmer. I think if we're looking at June, or maybe if the governor says something differently in the interim time, then maybe we can look at starting it back up. But otherwise, I don't, I don't understand why that is. Second point is, I know as far as the timing of the meetings, before council members would kind of give an overall view or some thoughts that they had about the particular issue, then you would go to public comment. And then there would kind of be like closing positions from the council members. And I realize that this takes a lot of time. However, what occurs is that the council members don't speak. People in the audience have given their public comment. And then council members speak and people in the audience then want to rebut, which they, what they find to be pretty bizarre comments or comments that they disagree with or comments that they think are inaccurate. But at that point, it's too late. So that's one thing, I think, that maybe there's some way to, to work out a compromise position in that understanding that council members would like to go to bed before three o'clock in the morning. I have one other point. And that is, as far as the Climate Action Committee, at the meeting a couple of months ago, when I walked out of there, I had the impression that unless you have somewhere between $50,000 and $80,000 to spend on solar and backup batteries, when PG&E cuts the power again, then you're going to have a lot of people with, with nothing as far as an infrastructure in which to cope with the situation. Like, we had no heat. We had no water, hot water, because we have electric, electronic ignition. But we have a gas range so that we were at least able to make food and to make hot drinks. And also the comments that they made about we're the main culprits in, you know, the, the carbon issue, was in transportation and home use, meaning more like in heating, et cetera. So I'm, I know we were told for years that natural gas is cleaner than electric. And it's probably true, considering what happens in electric grids, especially with a lot of places burning coal. But I think that some of the priorities of the Climate Action Committee can be amended to look at other issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate the comment. Michelle, do we have any others?
We have, I just received an email that someone is attempting to call in. And I'm looking, I, I'm emailing her back. I don't see, I, I do not see, Valerie, if you're watching, I don't see you on the queue at all.
Let's give it, give it a, give it a.
Give it a minute.
A second.
Maybe you can put on the screen how people call in again?
Sure, that's a good idea. I'm going to do that right now.
I also have, Michelle, a question in that I'm noticing that Richard, Ricky A. stayed up on the screen where the others actually came off the screen after they commented.
I see that, too.
I just wanted to check that isn't something going on.
I'm just getting. I'm, I'm getting a.
Shall we give it another minute, Michelle?
Yes, if you wouldn't mind, I'm just trying to allow an open time comment from a resident who is having technical difficulties.
Okay, no problem.
I understand that for some reason, our website feed wasn't working. And so we had to create a separate page to load the viewer. And, and it's, but it's on, now the viewer, when you're watching on our website, is on a page that's different from the how to participate. And I'm, I'm working on trying to get a link up there.
Okay, great.
But it's hard to manage everything at once.
You're doing great.
Okay. I, so I would like to just go back to stop sharing so I can see the participants. If that's, let me see. I have. Okay, let me see. All right, she's going to write to me.
Okay. Was there anyone else wanting to speak live? Or shall we wait for the email?
There are no other live speakers.
Okay.
Other Zoom speakers and. Okay, so I'm, so I have a written comment now from Valerie Hood.
Okay.
And she would like to reaffirm what Mark and Richard said. Those were some of her comments that she was going to make. So, thank you. And I will work on the website while the meeting carries on.
Okay, great.
I don't see any more comments.
All right, great. We got the reaffirmation. Thank you, Valerie. And now we're going to move on to the consent calendar. So the opportunity for public comment on consent, as always, occurs prior to the town council's vote on the consent calendar. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action. Items on the consent may be removed by any town council or staff member for separate discussions and a vote. If you're watching on the town website, you're encouraged to submit your comments now so that they will be received when we get to the public comment period. Does the council have any questions on consent? Barbara?
I just have comments on a few things that'll be really quick. So on item three, I want to thank Councilmember Hellman and yourself for all your work on the COVID-19 work and all your work with the businesses and the matching program. So thank you for that. I also want to give a shout out to you for getting that mobile shower program here. I remember late 2018, I had asked about it. And it takes time, but I'm glad we're finally here. So thank you so much for all your work on that. And that's great. The other thing I wanted to ask is on item five, for the sidewalk repair, I'm wondering if by the budget workshop, we could have some costs, estimated costs for the remainder of the sidewalk repairs. I realize we're not for the budget workshop on May 15th, I believe. I realize we're not wanting to spend money until we really get a good feel for our budget situation. But I think if, if we can have a clue as to how much really needs to be done, if it's relatively minimal during the shutdown, it would be a nice time to get this done so that we don't have to disrupt businesses in, in the future. And then the last thing I wanted to mention on item six, obviously, we have a budget workshop coming up next week. And I had sent in some comments prior to this meeting on the bare bones budget that doesn't include the budget message and the write-ups and more detail. But I'm hoping we can take those up as well as any subsequent questions that come up when we see the, the package for that meeting. So that were, those were just comments. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else have anything they'd like to talk about or ask questions on consent?
I'm sorry, I was unmuted. I'd like to poll number nine.
All right, let's see what, what, is there anything else?
No.
Okay, is there anyone else with anything on consent? I do have one thing, and I know Bruce has, oh, we all do. Okay, Bruce, go ahead.
Yeah, well, as you, as you've heard by now, I'd like to poll number 11 to discuss a bit more.
Yeah, um, let me see. I guess on the minutes, one thing, when we were talking about going to the county to see if there was a popularity of getting protection for our commercial tenants. Also, I suggested a legal strategy that actually turned out well and the county followed suit. And so that's why our commercial leakers have that. And so I just made that suggestion. But it wasn't reflected in the minutes. That's number two. Let me see, and I guess just a quick comment in relation to number seven. And, and I totally appreciate all of the work that's been going on. But I wanted to do a shout out for the concept of trying to have some outdoor dining at some point in the future to help, you know, segue our, you know, obviously, we've got to cooperate with what's going on in the county. But I really think that that is a good strategy going forward to kind of slowly move into that. Obviously, we have to look at, at, you know, working, you know, unemployment issues and stuff like that with different restaurant staff. And it has to be their choice as a good business decision and also protect the workers. But, you know, I, I would like us to keep that in mind. And I guess my other comments were on things that people want to have polled. I have some note on number 10, but I forget what that comment is.
Okay.
Yeah, just preference for number four. That's it.
Great. Well, if you think of it, we'll, we'll come back to it.
Okay, great.
So I wanted to, because I promised we would talk a bit about chipper days, and that's on consent. That's item number four. And I think it's, you know, we will have the dates of chipper days on the website. And it will be, you know, very clear. And it will be promoted with signage in all of the neighborhoods. But I'm going to quickly read you the dates at this time, in case you're listening and you have your calendars out. June 20th and 21st is the Cascade Neighborhood, Doc Edgar Park, where we've always had it before. The 27th and 28th is Scenic and Manor Hill Neighborhood, Lima and Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. That's where the, let me go back for a second and clarify. The drop-off station is Doc Edgar Park for the Cascades. And Lima and Sir Francis Drake Boulevard is the drop-off for the Scenic and Manor Hill. The downtown is going to take place in the Pavilion Parking Lot, and that's on July 11th from nine to three. And then on July 25th and 26th, there will be a chipper day for the Deer Park Neighborhood. And the collection will again be done in Doc Edgar Park in the base of the Cascades. So I don't know if anyone had any, any questions about that. The availability of the pickup service, and this is in the staff report, will be determined at a later date. And I believe that discussion will take place at budget, at the budget workshop to determine costs for pickup and how we might want to expand it and what we believe we can afford to do this year, realizing the importance of the chipper day program. So I think that, I think that, that covers it, unless there's any other thoughts or concerns on that item.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I interrupt? I'm afraid I overlooked a, a public comment from open time just before the consent calendar. Would it be okay to read it now?
Can we get through our, our questions and organize how we're going to deal with consent? And then hear the comment?
Okay, sure. It's up to you. Thanks.
Yeah, I think that would be good because we're kind of in a flow. So I've heard a lot of things about consent. I want to just clarify real quick about item number seven. And that is the appointing, the subject is to appoint Mayor Goddard and Councilmember Hellman to the Economic Recovery MCCMC Ad-Hoc Committee. This came from a, a discussion at the mayor's select meeting from the MCCMC. And it was determined unanimously that we would form an ad hoc committee. Most of the mayors have appointed themselves, but we wanted to bring this to council. One of the things, John, thanks for pointing, for bringing that up. One of the things is, is looking specifically at these types of things and what we could do potentially with a countywide policy of sorts that would allow us to move forward with these kinds of creative ways of, you know, helping the businesses, potentially expanding their footprint temporarily in order to allow them to accommodate more people and, and help, help with their business. Yeah, recovery. So that is one of the things. But it's about the, the revenues and the expenditures and how we're going to work together and have a seat at the table as elected officials with groups such as the Marin Managers, with the Marin Managers Group. And how we might talk about some form of shared services. And that's in coordination closely with the Marin Managers Group. What we, what we expect this committee to be is additive and not to come in, we're not a lobbying force for anything for one particular city. It's a way to bring the electives to the table. So that's what this ad hoc committee is about. For, for your information. And so with that, the only thing that I might recommend is that the items that we've pulled, if, if you're amenable to this, that we maybe take up item nine now because we have the financial advisor on the phone. Is that right, Garrett?
Yes, that's correct.
And then I might recommend that we go ahead and take 11 at the end of the meeting. And so with that, I will entertain a motion for how we will deal with consent. Barbara, did you want to make a motion?
I think you need to have public comment on consent.
Goodness, I'm so sorry. So yes, I'd like to open it up to public comment first, any live, and then anyone who may have emailed.
May I read the email? Oh, excuse me.
Yes, Michelle, please first, go ahead and read the, go ahead and read the email from public comment. Thanks for waiting.
Yes, I realize, I, I would just like, before I read it. Yes, I realize, I would just like, before I read it, to say that the reason I missed it, it was actually sent just shortly before the 7:00 PM meeting. And I'm getting a lot of emails on the technical difficulties, and I get a lot of emails in general. So that just, I just was looking from 7:00 o'clock on. So I do want to make it really clear that the only emails we typically read on these Zoom meetings will be the ones we received during the meeting, although emails received before are always a part of the record of the meeting.
Okay, great.
Just a way of offering public comment during the meeting. It's from Rick Hamer from Fairfax. "I would like to suggest that the town look into, on a temporary basis, permitting restaurants and other similar sit-down establishments where social distancing limited the number of patrons indoors, to allow impacted businesses, allow impacted businesses expand into adjoining sidewalks, parking streets, or parking lots until social distancing rules are relaxed. Two, by committee or by staff, take the best ideas and best of partially resurrected proposals that have already been reviewed, such as the Bellinas Road pedestrian mall and an extended Streets for People, and apply these concepts on portions of Broadway and anywhere else. Our restaurants, cafes, pubs may need to try to recoup sitting lost by social distancing. Let's bring this on while the weather is seasonally nice and while traffic remains reduced. It may jumpstart these Fairfax businesses and restore our Fairfax identity as a town with a vibrant business central core. I suggest the town do what it takes to pilot this program into a reality quickly, in weeks or maybe even by the next town council meeting. Our sit-down businesses are facing extreme hardship and need your help urgently. Thank you."
Great. Thank you. And thanks for getting that comment in under the wire. So we were going to open public comment on consent at this time.
Okay.
Is there some?
I am just, hang on. There is one raised hand. It's a phone number. The number ends in 74. Trying to protect privacy. So I'm allowing you to speak.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello?
Hi.
You can hear me?
Yes.
Good, it's Valerie. I, I think there's so many things got screwed up with this meeting tonight. Not you guys, but technical stuff. I just mean, like, Michelle, you wrote me that I should say, put star six, and it's actually star nine. So you might want to tell people if they, if they end up trying to call by phone, that's what they need to do. So can I, I actually, I got in touch with the meeting in time to do open comment, but I'm hoping I can do that, the public comment time. Can I do that?
You mean the, the open time for public comment?
The open time, right, because.
Let's go ahead and do that. We're, we're working through all of this.
Yeah, I know you are.
Yes.
Well, so, okay, it's just, it's, I just wanted to say again, it's good to see everybody is still doing well, and everybody looks fine, and that's a really good thing to see these days. And I just wanted to say that, so there were a couple of things on the consent calendar. I might as well just go into that right now. Item three on the, on the consent calendar, I'm just hoping that you'll cover how council members vote about the baseline budget. I'd like the public to have a chance to, to comment and question about that. And number nine, I know Stephanie said something, but I kind of missed it because I was working on this stuff. Please let us know the cost of the exploration into the financing. So those were just those three comments, if I could make those. And then for, for open time, I just wanted to say that I really appreciated the three people that called in, and those were some of the points that I actually did want to make, especially, well, actually, all of them were, I thought were very good. And the other only thing I wanted to say is that, how much time do I have left? I have no idea.
You have another minute and a half.
Another minute and a half, okay. So I just wanted to say that I'm really appreciating the fact that we own our home right now, that, that we're not in this state of trying to find some place to stay at night, that I'm understanding is happening to more and more people that used to be residents here. So I don't know if you all had a chance to look into any of that, but I think it's escalating. It's a problem, and food is becoming more of a problem, too. Another thing is that I have been really appreciating that I live on the creek and that there is some return of wildlife, and I see a lot of mothers with their kids down there having quiet play, which I think is really great, and it's a really nice thing to see. But I'm, I'm really hoping you guys can talk about opening up parking lots for us to go to because there are just so many people that literally who live in this town who are having the cops called on them because they try to park near the places where they can go to open space. And it's just making problems between neighbors. It's creating a lot of hard feelings. I know a lot of people come and park on our street that don't live here so they can walk into the downtown. And I don't see that happening here. But I think the neighbors who live near Elliot Nature Preserve, Deer Park, and other places like that feel entitled to make those calls. And it'd be really great to hear from the cops and hear what their stories are about that. One night when I was walking on Portius, just real quick, one night when I was walking on Portius, three cops went by me so fast, it was unbelievable, no sirens, no lights, on a street where a lot of people were walking. I have no idea where they, you know, I mean, it's just stuff like that. It's, it's getting hard to watch that stuff. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Valerie. So we're still at the point of any public comment that may have come in on consent.
I do not see any more public comments at this time. I can check our website to see.
Okay. And just in response, because this is on consent, we will be holding our budget workshop, and that will be May 15th. Garrett, have we confirmed the time? Is it 10 to 3?
I believe we're selling on 10 to 3:30, but the town clerk might have a better idea if that's what the time is.
Okay, great. And the, the public access to that budget workshop will be again on a Zoom, a Zoom call?
Zoom remote access, yes.
Zoom remote access. It will not be, it will not be broadcast. The Community Media Center of Marin is not going to be broadcasting that, but you will be able to access the meeting of the workshop on a Zoom remote call. And that information will be on our website, correct, Michelle?
Yes, I can explain. You can either join a Zoom meeting and watch it and then do the raise your hand to speak, or you can call in on a telephone number and use your telephone to make the call.
Okay. And that information will be on our website.
And then you push star nine to raise your hand on the phone. And, yeah. I have, I do see one more public comment now.
On consent.
On consent, yes.
Okay, let's hear that comment, please.
Okay. And that is Mallory?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yep, you got on.
So can I do what Valerie did in the, about, because I couldn't get on this thing, and I just had a public comment that was not relevant to anything that we're talking about? Is that okay?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. And thanks for getting back to me, Renee. I appreciate it. So I'm just concerned, things are getting dry again here, and those little pathways are still more overgrown than they were before to, to, to make the streets accessible to people going from a dead-end street to a street where they can get out. So I just want to know, I just want to know what the story is with that. Are we doing anything about it? That's Stella's story.
John, do you have a two, two, two second response to that? We have, we can't just.
I'm all in favor of it, as far as I know, because.
It's, it's hooting.
I think Garrett needs to answer it.
What?
It's the, I'm sorry. So the question sounds like, are we doing maintenance on the pedestrian?
It's 8:00 and people are.
Oh, it's the howling. I don't hear any.
Yeah, it's the howling. Yeah. I do it every night.
All right. So Garrett, did, just, is there any, anything going on with the pedestrian pathways?
Well, there's lots of different pedestrian paths, but I'm not sure she referring to the ones we've already maintained?
They're not, they're not pedestrian paths. They're the paths that people can leave, it's not really, you know, they're little paths between streets that aren't accessible. They're not really walking paths.
They're trails.
Yeah, the little trails.
They're pedestrian right of ways.
Yeah.
Yeah, right of ways between blocks that you can't, that are either dead end, like, like Maple can connect to Willow by one path that's completely, oh, there you are, that's completely inaccessible at the moment because there's a fallen tree and there's lots of weeds, and it's, it's even more inaccessible than it was the last 10 times I've brought this up. So can, is that going to be addressed?
I know that path is on this year's plan of, of work schedule, but since this latest emergency, we have not met to.
Okay, I just, I just want to put it out there, and then I have nothing else to say except thank you guys for doing this.
Okay, thanks, Mallory. Be well.
Okay, I'm gonna hoot now.
Okay. Mute yourself.
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
That was great. So consent, nothing else on consent, correct, Michelle?
I believe, oh, no more comments on consent.
Okay, thank you.
I have the live feed going from our website on another screen, so I can see that we have caught up.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. Who would like to make a motion? Barbara?
I'll make a motion. Just one comment I want to make about the dining in and the comment about dining on the streets. Just to remind people is we have the governor's statewide order that does not allow that. And the local orders can be more restrictive, but not less restrictive. And as we know, our public health officer tends to be more restrictive. So I think there's going to be, Fairfax on its own cannot make those kind of decisions, but, you know, it would be nice. So with that, I would like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar items one through 10, pulling item nine and 11, and also making the edits that John Reed had to item two for the minutes.
Okay. And. Is there a second? Okay. So we have a motion poller and a second read, and I'm going to go ahead and do a roll call vote. Councilmember Hellman?
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Vice, Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
And Mayor Goddard, aye. So that motion carries, and we'll move forward. Just give me one moment, please. Regrouping my paperwork, just one second, please. So now, as we, as we discussed, we would take item number nine immediately following consent. So let's go ahead with number nine. And can we please have a staff report, Garrett?
Sure. So item nine's approving agreements with the town's financial advisor, Wolf Hansen and Company, to explore financing strategies for the town's current retirement obligations. So pretty much, in a nutshell, you know, we've been working with Wolf Hansen since 2008. I believe he did the refunding of that bond issuance back in 2008. The last time we did anything was back in 2016. At that time, we explored the refinancing the town's retirement liabilities, as well as potential for maybe additional capital improvements, financing capital improvements with the savings if we refinance. Council, after discussing all the various options, decided only wanted to revise our pension obligations, which at that time, we were known as what we refer to as a side fund and the pre-2013 UAL pension obligations. Council approved that in 2017. Basically, the structure was a long-term lease agreement, and it uses Town Hall and the Pavilion as security. We saved about 1.5 million in interest. And so now, moving forward to now, given behind a current environment for lower interest rates, we actually think it would benefit the town to go ahead and explore some options again for refinancing our side fund, pre-2013 UAL. That's the current obligation we referred to as the lease agreement. That's about 2.9 million. And we also might want to take a look at our current pension, unfunded pension liability, right now, about 6.5 million. And so, but before we can explore those options, and I'll touch on those options in a second, under state law, we actually have to have an agreement for service with our financial advisor, because he needs to disclose what the fees may be and what the services are. So we know, the council knows and community knows what we're getting for that service. So it's a little odd, in the old days, maybe they would do all this legwork and explore before they come to us. But in this case, it's the other way around. Now, what we're looking at exploring is our current obligation that we, the lease agreement, that's currently held by Capital One, and it sounds like they may be interested in renegotiating interest rate. We could look at refinancing our lease agreement with another lender. We could look at just refinancing our pension liability, unfunded pension liability, or we can bind them all into a new structure and take a look at that. Off the top of my head, I'd be surprised that that odd option doesn't seem to be the best approach for the town to save us the most money in the long run. But that being said, how the process works is if we contract with our municipal advisor, financial advisor, Mr. Pressman and his team, would then discuss advantages, disadvantages of the different options, talk to staff. We would actually go to the finance committee, have that discussion, recommendations. Then it would go back to the council for approval and want to pursue. Then ultimately, whatever action you pursued, that the actual documents would have to come back to the council for approval. Now, how this all works is there's no cost to us unless we actually close on a transaction. And so in the staff report, it talks about renegotiation, renegotiation of the lease with the same lender, existing lender would be about $10,000. If you were just to refinance with a new lender, it'd be 27.5. Off the top of my head, that's probably not a good thing to do, probably not going to save a lot. Three is look at a new pension obligation bond for your unfunded liability. And four is combining everything together. Now, I do know Mark Pressman and his team is on the line, and I had talked to him based on some question from a council member regarding the fee structure, and I asked him to take a look at that with regards to if you were to just look at a lease with an existing lender. Mark did actually send me a letter, but because it's remote access, I can't send it to you and make it available to the public at the same time. So I'll have to get that to you separately. But what I like to do, Mark is on the line, I like to be able to let Mark maybe make a few comments.
Before you do that, Garrett, I have a question. Before you do that, in your intro, you mentioned one, almost 1.5 millions in savings, but that in your discussion paragraph, in your intro paragraph, that was if it endured 20 years. And that, that was just since 2017. So we haven't realized that 1.5 million in savings, correct?
No, that's over the 20-year period, but obviously, we have, you know.
Do we know how much, how much we've realized since 2017?
We do, off the original estimates. I don't have that in front of me, and I don't know if Mark does, but we can get you that answer. I don't know if Michael, Michael's also on the line, our finance director. I don't even know if he has that handy. But we had a spreadsheet that actually detailed how much interest we thought we would save every year.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify that because it, it could have been perceived, by the way, it was just described, that we have realized that. And I just wanted to make sure that that was understood because that was just a point of clarification. Okay.
Okay. So the tricky thing, I know Mark called in, so maybe, Mark, you'll have to electronically raise your hand so Michelle can see you and then unmute you to be able to.
If he has called in, he would need to press star nine on his telephone keypad. And then I'll see. And then I'll see his little hand raise on my screen and I can unmute him. Is he on mute? I, I don't see his phone.
Okay, I'm, I'm also texting him right now because he was on the line to see if he's still there.
There. We wanted to do a low-tech solution. You could call him and put him on speakerphone on your desk.
That's true. Of course, I have my AirPods in, so I need to switch that out too. Okay, so maybe what I can do is, maybe I'll try calling him and see.
Yeah. Are we doing public comment for this item?
Yes, we are. In fact, if anyone has any public comment, would you please send your emails now? If you're going to comment live, then we'll take public comment as soon as we finish our questioning and hear from Mark Pressman.
There's, there's one hand up, is that, but.
That is, is not a call-in.
Right, okay. Hmm. I couldn't get through to him, so I think he's probably on his phone calling in. He must, maybe he's having trouble unmuting.
If you're calling in by phone, sometimes your own phone has been muted, and then you would push star six if, if we can't hear you, but.
Is this star nine or star six?
Star nine is what alerts me that you want to speak. It raises a hand, just like on Zoom.
Right.
And then sometimes you need to use star six to be able to talk, but not always, and I'm not sure why.
Okay, so while we wait to see if Mark is able to re-enter, do we have any questions, councilmembers' questions for Garrett?
Well, I would prefer to have in this staff report a little bit more information for the public, since this will be a record for the public. I would like to understand, for example, what our current interest rates are, so the public can, can know what our opportunity for savings is. And it makes perfect sense that we're doing this right now in this environment, and I'm not pushing back that we're doing this. I just, for someone like me who's coming in, I don't have all the background and it, it kind of dives in a little bit. I didn't know we were using our public buildings as collateral. And so it would just be a little, it would be helpful to have a little bit more detail in here as far as background. And Garrett and I talked a little, a little bit about this today, so I have more information, but I'm saying for the public, I would love to see more information in here as a public document.
Okay.
So, okay, so the taxable rate is about 5.4%.
That's the, that's the rate we're paying on the pre-UAL, the pre-2013?
Yes, the side fund in the pre-2013, the two point, was it 2.9 million? Is the rate of 5.4% because it, it's taxable. That's the taxable rate.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for Garrett? Barbara?
I think I would just mention one thing is that, you know, we've been working on this for a number of years. And the way this works on what we refinanced the first time other than paying CalPERS over time, which costs a lot of money. That's why we did this refi, which saves us 1.4 million over 20 years. So it's hard to jump in after, obviously you're new, but it is hard to jump into this because there's a lot of history and some of us have dug into it over the years. But I also see that there is a call-in user, so I think Mark Pressman is trying to call in, or I think he's raising his hand.
Yes, I would like to unmute caller, the call-in user, if that's okay with the mayor.
Yes, please.
Okay.
I am now unmuted.
Yes, and who are you?
Sorry, sorry for the delay. I, I'm not, somehow it didn't connect when I did star nine. My, my name's Mark Pressman. I'm with Wolf Hansen Company and have worked with the town for a dozen years or more. And with me on the phone is Bud Levine. He's also a resident of Marin County, and he's our specialist in, on the UAL and CalPERS and this kind of proposed financing. Additionally, we have Rob Pancrentz on the phone. He's calling in from Michigan. He's back visiting family. So with that, I'm sorry, I may have missed some of the comments that were given by councilmembers while I was trying to get back on the phone. But in the meantime, what I would like to do is ask Bud if he could sort of review what is being proposed and look at our fees and, and any other questions that the council may have. With that, Bud, can you, I hope you're on?
Pleasure, pleasure to be here. I normally work on most of the cities outside of Marin, even though I've been almost a 50-year resident of Marin. But Mark asked me to work on this with him and I'm delighted to do so. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I think what you, I was hearing some of the questions that, that came up, and I think a quick review of the existing lease that was done to pay off the UAL of pre-2013. As I think has been articulated to you already, the, the lease was issued over a 20-year period, the, at the rate of 5.40% interest. And based on the comparison of the payment on the lease compared to the amortization payment to CalPERS on your unfunded over the 20-year period, it would produce a savings of a million five. And a schedule was provided on a yearly basis. So once you paid up that UAL, there were no more payments due to CalPERS on that unfunded liability. And the payments now were totally on the lease payment that was purchased by Capital One. So obviously, it's only been in operation for a few years, so you haven't yet made the billion five in savings, but you've made the pro rata amount that was projected to be comparing the amount of the payment due to CalPERS in each of the next few years from the issuance of the, of the lease and the payment to Capital One. That difference represented your savings. What, what has come about is that we do a lot of business with Capital One. They probably own 12 or 13 different leases and bonds that we've done over the years for various, for various cities. And in January, they called us and said they were looking at the possibility of doing some renegotiation on existing bonds that they had because the interest rates were such that they wanted to lock in, even for a longer period of time, the obligation in case rates go up even, even more in the future. Remember, this is pre-COVID-19. Market, the bond market was screaming at 25, 28, 29,000. Interest rates got down almost to zero. They were unbelievably low. And the bond market was going bangbusters. So as a result, they were looking for products and were willing to talk about that. So we got into some initial negotiations and discussions with them. I approached Mark to tell him that Capital One had indicated their interest, and that's where we started looking at maybe doing a new pension obligation at the same time as renegotiating whatever we could with, with Capital One. Unfortunately, for a lot of reasons, obviously, COVID-19 appeared. And all of a sudden, things changed dramatically. The country kind of slowed way down, if not stopped economically. The stock market fell off, what are they now down? Four, three, 4,000 points, more at one point. Interest rates, although low, actually went up some. But more importantly, the bond market kind of almost came to a stop. Very, very few deals being done because of the uncertainty. Where was the economy going to go once, once this was dealt with? Where would interest rates go? So when we contacted Capital One, again, on a follow-up, they said, things have changed. We're not going to look at renegotiating any of the deals that are currently there. We have so many deals that cities that are desperate to get bonds done are approaching us on that we're overwhelmed and we don't have time to look at an old deal. We'll come back and look at that a year or two from now. We came up with the idea, after discussing a little bit with the city, that maybe if we went back to, back to Capital One and showed him that there was an opportunity for a new bond deal with an existing client in the new P O B, would they then be willing to also look at doing the restructuring of the existing bond? And they said, yes, we would, mainly for two reasons. Number one, they liked the credit, number one, and two, they like working with us. And so they were giving us a little bit of preferential treatment, considering the number of issues that were being presented to them. Now, here's the thing to keep in mind, that's an important base point to look at, and that is your current 2017 lease. As I said, it's at a 5.4% interest rate set up to save you a million five over the life of the deal. However, it has call protection. By call protection, I mean that the bonds cannot be replaced or paid off by the town until a certain date. And that date is June 15, 2023. That's three years away. In addition, in order to pay off the lease in 2023, you have to pay a premium, which is 102, 102%. In other words, you'd have to pay a 2% premium to, to Capital One after, and to, to call that, that bond in 2023 and replace it with, with another lower interest rate issue. That's about a $56,000 premium that would have to be paid. Plus, if you were going to do a normal refunding, you'd have to escrow all the payments that are going to be due on that 2017 lease, starting now through the call date in 2023. I know that's a lot of bond speak and it's a lot of mumble jumble to a lot of you. Bottom line would be, and we looked into this, if you were to do an outside refunding on the 2017 lease, bring in a different investor and figure out a way to escrow the fund and, and do the deal now to pay off in 2023 with the 102 premium, the total savings to the, to the, to the town versus what you currently have with a million five savings would be about $50,000. That's all additional. That would not obviously be worth doing it. So now, however, in discussing it with Capital One, what they've come back with is, and this has to still be negotiated, but on initial conversation, they said they would be willing to, number one, lower the interest rate. But that's not all they're going to do. They would waive the 102 premium call and they would allow the bond to be called now and not in 2023, so there would be no need to escrow the fund for that purpose. So now our estimate is, and by the way, we're, we're going to refine this as time goes on. What it is, it's not really presenting what we think the real deal is going to be. But based on our initial review, we believe with doing the renegotiation with, with the Capital One, that the savings, this is in addition to the, instead of a million five in savings, it would be more like a million seven or a million eight or maybe more, another two or $300,000 in additional savings that would be generated by allowing, by having this renegotiate. So I want you to keep that in mind when you're looking at our fee. It's not as simple as saying, or maybe asking somebody, what would be a normal fee to get a interest rate reset? Yeah, not, not that much, because that's all you'd be doing. But here, you're completely restructuring by doing away with the two major protections that the investor has. The protection to keep his rate at 5.30, or to get paid a 2% premium to lower it, they're willing to waive that, and to allow the bonds, the lease to be called early. So I just went through a lot of stuff. Are there any questions up to this point?
Well, what you just described is number four?
No.
Well, I know, I just described, actually, just described refunding and restructuring the, the, the existing, the existing lease.
On, on the, on the, on the, on the staff, on the staff report, it'd be option number one.
Number one.
Oh, it's just, it's just, it's just number one? Really?
Just to renegotiate the lease, yes.
Yes. But this is probably, I have to tell you, I've been doing this for 50 years, and I'm not trying to sell you on anything, but it is an extremely, extremely unusually good opportunity. Because normally, my experience, I know Mark, yours has been too. Investors are reluctant to give up a good thing when they have it. So they're really allowing a very good restructuring. Now, the trade-off is, they think they, they want to, they'll only do this if we do number four, if they get the new, the new bond issue also.
You're saying they're only willing to do number four? You're saying that.
Go ahead.
You're saying they're only willing to do number one if we do number four? Is that what you just said?
That is correct. That is correct. I just told you that they were willing to do it as a standalone back in January, and I don't know how good we would have been able to negotiate that. But now that they're so overwhelmed and they want to do as many new deals that they can do, they're willing to make an exception for this deal, that if they can also get a new, a new, a new, a bond deal or lease deal, it would actually, in this case, be a bond issue, then they're willing to allow the restructuring on this basis to be done on, on the lease.
So if I can just clarify then, for my own understanding, so it's, it's really, it's like number four, where you're proposing refinancing what we already have financed, plus adding the new, the pension obligation bond, but doing it with Capital One. And that's what actually makes it all work.
Correct.
There, there's, there's one additional, or maybe several, but one important additional nuance. And that is the 2017 lease transaction. That lease, the lease proceeds were used to pay off your UAL. But the lease is secured by City Hall and the gymnasium. Now, if we go to option number four, what we would do is we would restructure that transaction to be a direct obligation of the town without a lease involvement. And the Town Hall and the gymnasium would be freed up. They, they would not be used as security for the transaction. We would, we would go through what is called a validation, a court validation suit process. And as a matter of fact, we have just completed that process with the city of Larkspur.
Excuse me, one second, if I may interrupt. Garrett, you were looking like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, so Mark and Ben, I appreciate all the information, but I need to clarify for the council. This is agreement for service. It's not picking any of these options at this time.
Absolutely.
I think what they were sharing with you is how it could play out, how you could save. There's no question you'll save. You'll just save more under one of these options. But that's not what we're discussing this evening. We're just discussing, can we move forward with agreements to explore all this? And I think I did look up a number for estimates of savings. I think the original estimate off the lease agreement, we'd save about 78,000 a year for the first five years. That's what it said in one document I found. But again, I think what Ben and Mark were sharing is the value added from our relationship, their knowledge with the town, their knowledge with the different lenders over how they can provide a better quality of service than just doing RP and trying to find someone. It, it's true, we've had a relationship with them now for over 10 years. But as you could see, there's a certain trust and there's a knowledge of what we have and what we're trying to do. And we're just thinking at this point, it makes sense to move forward with these service agreements. So that's, that's all I wanted to clarify this evening.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. That's a perfect clarification, exactly right. And the reason I went into the detail I did is I knew them, I, I understood there was some question about the, the $10,000 fee on the, on the restructuring or the resetting of the interest rate, which is probably a very limited description of, of what's actually being done. And that's why I wanted to go into, into that. And to just give you the fact of the comparison, just on that portion, that staying where, where you are, nothing happens, obviously. Uh, if you tried to do a refunding of that, uh, uh, outside of Capital One, the savings, additional savings would be 50,000 roughly. And doing one with Capital One could be as much as, you know, it's going to be several hundred thousand dollars, uh, give or take. And that's going to be developed, as was just pointed out, once we're hired. Then we go to work on really putting together a specific proposal to come back to you with the four, with maybe probably at this point, the three choices. Because you're really, the one, you're right. One, one is probably shouldn't be listed as a separate choice. It just is identified separately because it's a separate portion of the, of the, uh, of the, of the grouping that will be done. But it has to be done with Capital One, uh, as part of, uh, of doing the new, which is choice four. Yes.
Okay.
But that shows the relative involved, sure.
Can you, I'm, I'm not familiar, the bond market is something that I'm not very familiar with. Can you help me understand, um, why Cap One? Why we are wedded to Cap One here?
You're not, you're not. But, but if, if, if we go outside of Capital One and if part of the transaction is to refinance the existing lease, the savings will be negligible. And that, that hurts your overall savings. Uh, as, as Bud indicated, uh, if, if we go to an outside, a different lender, there will be that prepayment penalty. We'll have to escrow interest payments or principal and interest payments to the call date. And that really, um, that in essence increases the cost of, of that refinancing to the point that you'd only save, uh, in approximately, approximate amount of around $50,000. In our mind, that's not enough to really push us forward.
Yeah, you would.
We, 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 and as, as I also want to indicate, as municipal advisors to the town, we take on a fiduciary relationship with you, uh, where we have to put, um, your interests ahead of our own. And we've already provided the town, as part of our agreement, numerous disclosures that are required by law to show that, you know, if we go this way for compensation, then there's these, um, these conflicts. If we go a different way, there are other conflicts. All that stuff has to be disclosed and that is included in, I think in the last page of our, um, our agreement. So what, taking on a fiduciary relationship with you, we are charged with doing the best situation that we can find for the town, whether that's with Capital One or somebody outside. And we are acutely aware of that responsibility. And if we come together with all these options, uh, and numbers to, um, to support them and we go to, not only through staff, but also the finance committee and then to ultimately to the council, um, we will show you, um, the difference between going with Capital One and somebody on the outside. Um, oftentimes we will go through an RFP process, uh, to institutional investors. But in this instance, we've got a unique situation where Capital One, um, has a, a hold on us, uh, for the next several years. And if we can waive those fees, that, that is something that we feel should be evaluated in the, uh, numerical analysis to see whether that waiving of fees increases the savings sufficiently to offset what an interest rate would be from somebody else outside, um, but where we have to pay those fees. So that, that would all be part of our analysis that we would provide to the town and then ultimately for you to, uh, make a decision.
Let me, let me answer this in a slightly different way, uh, to your, to your question. Um, the reason, as Mark pointed out, one of the reasons we're married to Capital One is by doing this restructuring, we're going to save you, let's just use the number, 2, 300,000 than if you just leave it where it is. Now, let's leave that for a second and look at the P O B that we're talking about doing, uh, option three. Um, if we do option three alone and we don't do the restructuring, because the only way we can do the restructuring is with Capital One. So let's say we don't want to do business with Capital One and we do the restructuring, we do a new issue on the P O B. Then what Mark was just describing would be what we would do. We would come back with an RFP proposal to go out to all the different banks that are buying, uh, the, uh, pension obligation bond. And unfortunately, the reality right now, as a result of COVID-19, is that the universe of 20 to 25 banks that were knocking over one another to buy these are now down to two or three or four. Capital One is one of those. So we have a much more limited market now until things straighten out. And Capital One would be probably one of the, one of the, uh, of, of the proposers. But without Capital One being allowed to do both deals, you're going to lose that extra 300,000 or so in savings and you'll just lock in the savings you have on the P O B alone. This other way, by doing it combined with them, is you lock in the best of all world. So that's where we think right now would be what we would be recommending. Again, all we're asking to be is to be signed up, to go do our work, watch the market, come up with the best analysis and the best proposal that we can for you to choose from. And then you make your decision. And if at the end of the day, you decide that none of them worked for you, then you simply don't move forward. We don't get paid anything. It's just time that we spent, but that's part of what we do. A lot of times we do all this work and we don't get a payday, but then we build up enough goodwill that those cities understand that, you know, when the next time comes up where they have a deal that really can be done, hopefully we get that deal and then we do. But that's our model for, for operation.
Can I just interrupt? This is Barbara Caller. I just, I've had my hand up for a while. Um, so we've had a long-term relationship with this company and Mark Pressman. And Bud, I think added, I think even more information. And I think, uh, the town manager pointed out, we're not picking right now. But I will also say, we've also seen that relationships with a specific bank, uh, right now with Small Business Administration and the PPP makes a huge difference on what kind of deals you can get. I also read through every page of the contract and saw the conflict of interest. Um, it's not an issue for me. I guess the one question I have is the timing on, I mean, my thoughts are, I think we should go forward with this. We've saved money in the past. Let's continue. I think one of the things the MCCMC, uh, pension group showed is that Fairfax is in really good shape because of some of the things we've done. So I would like to ask is, what is the timing, uh, if we vote for this? And I'm supportive of it, uh, of going to the finance committee and then, uh, bringing it to the council? Because it seems like to me, uh, we don't want to rush into things, but we also need to act quickly while the time is right. So Mark, do you have an answer for that?
I, I do, and that's an excellent question. Um, we, as I said, this would not be, uh, secured with a lease on any, um, of the town.
I understand that. I was just talking about the timing of coming back to the finance committee. Should we vote for this to sign this agreement, which I think we may? Um, so I don't think we need more information right now, at least I don't. Is what is the timing? Should we say go forward, um, of you getting to the finance committee with recommendations, which would then potentially come to the council? Is that two months? Is it one month? Is it three weeks?
We would, we would try to mobilize, uh, and I don't know if we'd be able to do it in time for the next council meeting, but, uh, for sure in, in, in two months away, uh, we would be able to come back to the council. And then that would, uh, with that go-ahead, then we would go through the court, uh, process of validating the process. And that could, with the court shut down now, that could take two or three months. We don't know.
So what we'll do is, Mark, and generally what will happen is, once we move forward, we'll talk about this finance committee and the council. In that time, you could talk to, about them, about the whole process and what it will take.
Okay, so, um, thanks, Garrett. And did anyone else have any questions?
I have one last question. I'm sorry, in the contract, what is, this said, you said, um, sorry, on the first page, it says you're not including in, um, absorption analysis. What is that?
Not including what?
Absorption analysis. What is that?
That would be, um, well, that, that is not really relevant to this particular transaction. I apologize for that being in there. Uh, that, that would, that would be when we do a new housing development. Your absorption would be the, the rate of sales and that, that doesn't apply here.
Okay.
You know, I really appreciate that you actually really did read the contract. That was a great, that was a great catch.
All right. Thank you. Um, any other questions from council? Because then we want to go out to the public. Then we can bring it back and, uh, discuss this and deliberate. Anyone else? All right, then, um, I don't have any questions at this time. I got my questions answered before. And so let's go out to the public. Michelle, uh, do we have any live Zoom comments or anyone who's emailed?
We do not.
Okay. Um, did I forget to ask people to email at the beginning of the item?
No, I think you did ask people to, but this might not have been the item that was of interest to them.
Right.
People here for another item.
All righty, so, um.
If, if, if I may interject, if I may interject, this is simply letting us do the analysis and that sort of thing. You, we will, uh, obviously come back to council before this, you know, moves forward. So you, you'll have another bite at the apple.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much. So we'll, we'll move forward. I don't think we have too much of a delay. Yes, Michelle?
I see two comments on the website now.
Oh, okay.
On Zoom.
Excellent. So let's go ahead and invite the first commenter.
Okay, and that is Valerie.
Hey, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, great. Ha, what a relief. Um, so Michelle, thank you very much for helping me with everything. And, um, number two, um, Stephanie, I really appreciated, uh, your comments so much and your questions. Um, I need guidance through this too. I, I find this an extremely important topic because it's going to affect all of the taxpayers in town and it's going to affect the health of our town. So I'd actually like more questions. And if, I wish I had, um, more information just to understand this anyway so that I could ask better questions, but I can't. So, um, you know, the more questions you guys, the more questions you raise, all of you, would be really appreciated out here in audience, Liam. Thank you, bye.
Okay, thank you very much. Another comment? Mallory?
I was. Yes. Hi, I just want to say that this was a really great presentation from, uh, whoever was doing it. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
So I just want to thank you for the information. It was really, really well done. And, uh, I think it was a great idea to just keep where it is right now. So I just want to put that in. Thank you.
We appreciate that, we really do.
I might add, I might add that, I'm sorry, but when we were doing our preliminary analysis of, of your numbers, we didn't realize, and I don't know that you realized it either, but CalPERS is giving you a negative amortization on your unfunded liability. In other words, you pay today your principal and interest portion, next year you'll owe more. And I, I was just flabbergasted that that was happening. And if you do the pension obligation bond, you get them totally paid off and you will not have negative, um, negative amortization. You will be fully amortizing the loan every year. And in addition, what we would propose would be to shorten the length of the loan so that you'd pay it off in a shorter period of time while still earning, uh, savings each year.
I, I like that too. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, okay, good. So Michelle, were there any others?
Um, I do not see any other comments at this time.
Okay, so then we'll bring it back to council for any comments or, um, further questions and see if we're ready to proceed with the vote. Bruce?
So I, uh, I also really appreciate that, uh, that explanation. So thank you, Mark and Bud. And just to, uh, because I, I know this is hard to understand and not to, not to put it off or minimize it, but just, uh, as what, what we're looking at tonight is really, uh, the, the presentation and the discussion we just had is kind of going ahead to a decision that would be made later on. But what we're looking at tonight is only authorizing these folks to investigate this further and come back to us with real specific numbers about what our options are. And that we have before us a fee schedule, but the fee would not even be paid if we decided not to do that. So there's really no real risk in doing what we're doing tonight other than that we, that, that we shouldn't tell these folks to start working on it unless we're serious about it. But, um, I for one would say, yes, this sounds like something we should investigate and, um, and thank you all.
Okay, John?
Yeah, I just wanted to, especially because this last little bombshell of the negative amortization on, on CalPERS. I mean, this is actually not surprising at all coming from CalPERS. I've seen them do a lot of similar things over the years, especially in relation to our fire department thing, which we fixed there. Um, and I would, I, I'm in favor of, of voting for this exploratory situation here. And, uh, obviously our, the, well, the global financial picture is, is volatile. Um, so we necessarily don't move that fast as a government body and, and, you know, it takes a while to figure all this out. Uh, and you don't really know until the last minute, but I think it's, it's a good bet. Um, and I would very much like to get out from underneath of, um, CalPERS's, finicky approach to, you know, how they're, they have their own particular hole that they're trying to dig themselves out of. And they, a lot of times they try to put that on the towns. And so that's one of the things that we're seeing here. So, uh, with the negative amortization. So I would also support exploring this.
I'd like to make a motion.
Uh, I, I need one.
I didn't get to comment, Barbara.
And Barbara, I had one thing too. Stephanie, go ahead.
Yeah, I want to thank Garrett for, um, spending time with me to do this. But also for inviting Wolf Hansen and, you know, particularly the insight and detail you, you provided on service number one. Because in looking at it today, I just thought you were, you know, renegotiating an interest rate. So, um, thank you. I thought your presentation was really helpful and I appreciate your patience and your time this evening. And, um, I, I think it makes a lot of sense to proceed. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Um, okay, thanks, Stephanie. I, I also, um, you know, uh, was thinking back through the previous transactions and, and assistance that we've, uh, been provided, um, and the lucrative nature of those transactions. And I feel as though from asking the questions I've asked and from working and learning and listening from Michael Vivret, um, with this very complicated, uh, issue, I feel comfortable as well moving, moving forward to explore this. And then a deeper conversation will ensue as to what we want to do once we have the information we need. I would ask also that anytime we bring these, um, these kinds of things to, uh, council, which means we're bringing them to the public, that we do everything we can to, um, make them, uh, accessible to people, a little more user-friendly because, uh, this takes an extraordinary amount of work and questioning behind the scenes in order to even understand it. So when the public are listening to this and don't have the, the historical perspective of what happened last time we refi, and so we're going based on that legacy, I think we just need to do a little bit more comprehensive job at making it more user-friendly. So that's my only comment.
We, we will, we will take that to heart and be sure that we give you very clearly understood presentations that the public will be able to see when we bring the actual, uh, proposal for moving forward with a specific, uh, refunding and new, and new money at that time. With a PowerPoint presentation and, and, uh, and, uh, and done in plain English, so.
Excellent. We're always asking for that. And, um, having said that, I absolutely, um, appreciate your presentation. And I think you informed many people things they didn't know before. So thanks a lot for that. And then I'd like to entertain a motion. Whoever unmutes for.
I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay.
Yeah, go for it.
Authorize the town manager to execute a gr- authorize the town manager to execute agreements with the town's financial advisor, Wolf, Hansen and Company, to explore financing strategies for the town's current retirement obligations.
Okay, second. Okay, so we have a motion, Kohler, and a second, Reed. And we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. So council member Hellman?
Aye.
Council member Kohler?
Aye.
Council member Reed?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman?
Aye.
And Mayor Goddard, I vote aye. And so the motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for attending our Zoom extraordinaire.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you.
As well, you too. As he says, we'll be back.
So Mayor, I think the next item will take a bit of time. Do you think we could take a quick break?
Yes, absolutely. Let's go ahead and do that. And so we'll be back at, right now it's 8:51. Why don't we come back at 8:57? That was random, but does that work for everyone?
Don't want to go till nine, huh?
Well, we're looking at our computers, so we see our digital readout here. So I'd say 8:57, I'll see you back. Okay. Any council members out there besides Stephanie Hellman?
I'm here.
Great.
Yeah. Hi.
Hi. Welcome back. So we're waiting for Bruce. John, did you say you're here?
Yes.
Okay. Andy Garrett?
I'm here.
Okay. Bruce, come back. Oh. Okay, excellent. So we're going to move on to item number 13. And before we begin that, I will.
Item number 12? Did you already announce it was continued?
I did not. Because I... Yes, so, sorry about that. I overlooked. So item number 12 is the first of the public hearing items, and this item has been continued to the July 1st, 2020 town council meeting. So all parties, of course, have agreed to this, and so the continuance will go until the next, not the next meeting, sorry, July 1st. And moving on to item 13, I will remind people that I will be recusing myself from this item because of the proximity of my private residence to the location of the project. So with that, what I'll do is turn this over to Vice Mayor Ackerman, who will be conducting the public hearing, and I will be turning my camera off and muting myself, and someone will let me know when it's time to come back on. So, okay, see you all soon.
Okay, so item 13 is to consider adopting resolutions, adopting the Environmental, California Environmental Quality Act Final Initial Study and Mitigated Negative Declaration and Mitigated Monitoring and Reporting Program for the proposed Meadowway Bridge Replacement Project and approving the proposed project. So that's what we'll be considering tonight. And so for this item, we will begin by receiving a staff report, and then we'll allow time for council members to ask any questions of staff and to the other presenters who will be helping with the staff report. And then I'll open the public hearing for comment. And so for anyone who wants to email comments in, this would be a good time to get them on their way to Michelle. And then after public comment, town council will discuss and may vote on the item. So Garrett, would you lead off with the staff report, please?
Sure. As you may see in the agenda packet, that really, since you first considered this item at your March 4th meeting, we've actually received quite a bit of comments since then. Comment letters regarding the Meadowway Bridge Replacement Project and the initial study mitigating neg deck. Now, our professional teams have prepared responses for your review related to those comments. You'll see that was actually attached to the staff report. It also provides consideration that pretty much our findings are that the detail, why none of the comments, none of those comments present substantial evidence of the fair argument the project would, after implementation and mitigation, result in significant impact to the environment. So as a result, staff was recommending the adoption of the IS MND and approval of the project. Now, however, today, as late as 5 o'clock today, we've received multiple additional comments on the IS MND. So after a brief review of these comments, I think our position of us and our professional team is that we don't see any substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project would, after the implementation of mitigation, result in significant impact to the environment. However, in abundance of caution, what we are recommending this evening is that you actually receive the presentation from CIC and WRA. You open the public hearing to consider public comment, and then we're going to recommend that you continue the item to your June 3rd meeting, because then that would allow us and our professional team to carefully review these late comments that were submitted and prepare detailed responses for the council review and consideration. And so that's what we're recommending. We're recommending receive the presentation, conduct the public hearing, and then continue it to June 3rd, so we have time to respond to all these late letters that we received. And so in terms of the presentation, before I turn it over to Nodder Tammy May, who's CIC, and he's going to give a brief project overview, and then Jeff Riley with WRA and his team will talk more about the IS MND and the responses that we actually prepared and attached to the staff report. But what I wanted to do was just really go through a brief bridge chronology and address a couple of the issues that are floating out there. I think that just requires some clarification. So if I may, really, back in 2009, Caltrans.
I just asked one thing, Garrett, and I just want to interrupt. There's a lot of acronyms being thrown around, and.
Sure.
I realize that some of the acronyms, when they're spelled out, are also a bit confusing, but I think for members of the public, it would be a good idea to really speak those out, and particularly in the chronology as well, because I think there are acronyms in what I've seen of a chronology that's in the packet. So, sorry to interrupt you, but I think we tend to speak in technical terms, and that can be confusing.
Okay, so when I say IS MND, that's the initial study mitigating neg deck, and so I'll try to remember to say that. But back in 2009, Caltrans originally obligated funds for bridges, that one of them being Meadowway, and that's highway bridge funding, we call it HBP, Highway Bridge Program. At that time, our understanding is that the town didn't really pursue the funding at that time because it probably didn't have the funds necessary for the matching requirements. So that was in 2009. So fast forward, 2013, CIC, that's our consulting team, California Infrastructure Consultancy, referred to them as CIC, reminded us of funding for Meadowway, Creek, and some of the other bridges. And so at that time, what we did was we issued RFP for those five bridges, which included Meadow, Meadow, Creek, Marin Spruce, and Canyon. But, and that RFP included the services for design, as well as environmental and all communications. And so that was just one RFP for all those services. So in September 2013, the council actually approved the master agreement with CIC for all the bridges except Meadowway, because the council had some more questions regarding the Meadowway Bridge, based on concerns raised by the community. March 2013 is when the council actually approved an amendment to the master agreement to include the Meadowway Bridge and its current scope of work. So, in November 2013, we actually held our work, first workshop with the residents regarding the bridge. And then from basically 2014 to 15, that 18-month period, staff really worked with CIC, trying to get answers to a lot of questions raised at the workshop. So one of those key questions was, can the bridge be made out of wood? Now, initially, Caltrans did say, no, it cannot be a wooden bridge. But they did agree that we could appeal to the Federal Highway Administration, who provides the funding for the program, FHWA. So we actually did that, and they agreed that the town could explore the option of a wooden bridge. So that was one thing. The other thing that came up with the residents is they really wanted the bridge to remain one lane, because currently it is one lane. And so we had to work back and forth with Caltrans, took a little time, but Caltrans finally agreed the bridge could be striped one lane. What that means is the bridge has to meet federal standards for width, but you could stripe it so it could be one lane. And so that's what we said we would do, and then we moved forward. Now, one of the other things we took a look at in the beginning, there are some concern, not concern, comments of, can the existing bridge be rehabbed and not replaced? And so actually, we did spend some time and money on taking a look at, could something like that work? Now, at some point, Caltrans pretty much said, you need to stop, you can't spend any more money exploring that option, because the bridge needs to be replaced. That's pretty clear. Nodder could probably touch on that more, because that's kind of a do nothing, not to do nothing, but Caltrans was basically saying, hey, it's not feasible, you're going to have to build it to standards. The existing bridge is deteriorating, continues to deteriorate. There's really no way that something like that could really work. But Nodder could touch on that more if you liked in his presentation. And so, moving forward, we answer those key questions, and that took some time. And then in 2015 and 16, so basically from September 2015 through August 16, staff worked at CIC and design, and we conducted another community workshop to talk about different design options. And this is important, because I'm going to touch on this one thing that keeps on coming up in the community. So we looked at three designs, a wooden bridge, a concrete bridge, and a metal steel bridge. We call it, you could, there's a little nomenclature here, and some people may call that a drop-in bridge. I'll get to that in a minute. So we talked about all those options. So steel is pretty, a prefabricated bridge. The neighborhood decided that it wanted a concrete bridge, and it was pretty much, I think, a super majority. Question?
Again, coming in here new, what was the method of capturing community, the Meadowway community feedback on the bridge type, the concrete versus steel versus wood?
So we had a workshop, and then we took a community poll of the residents. We asked the residents to send emails, and we actually did an online poll for what they prefer. I think it was a super majority said they preferred a concrete bridge. Now, keep in mind, we talked about a steel-metal bridge. So there's talk about a drop-in metal bridge. So a drop-in metal bridge, in essence, it's pretty much prefabricated, and you put it down. But here's what we're trying to point out. You just can't put a bridge on top of the existing wooden bridge. We took like, you have to have a foundation for the bridge to sit on, regardless of its type of material, concrete, wood, steel. It has to sit in something. That's something are the abutments. The abutments are what keeps the bridge safe if you have an earthquake, in terms of what the earthquake would do to the existing wooden bridge. And so if you have abutments, you also need to prevent erosion and scour in the creek that could go and damage your abutment. So that's why you have a wing wall and some of the other design elements that we put in to protect the bridge structure, as well as the banks. I think some council members will recall, this became an issue for the Pastore Bridge, and we actually had to spend, I think it was over $300,000, repairing the creek bank scour and erosion, and put in more permanent improvements to prevent that. So again, if you put a bridge in, it needs to sit on something regardless. It just can't sit on existing bridge. That existing bridge is wood. It's on piers. It sits in the middle of the creek. It's subject to liquefaction at a certain earthquake event. That thing could fail. If it fails, anything on top of it is also going to fail. One of the other things that's important is all the utilities sit on a bridge, except maybe power. So you have sewer, water, gas. Actually, I don't know if cables on it or goes above it. But anyway, what happens is not only would you not have access, you wouldn't have utilities. So it's pretty important that this bridge be able to survive certain earthquake events. And so we did explore that. We've always said, if you think you could put it down without abutments, have an engineer talk to us. We're all interested in doing that. Caltrans does hundreds of these bridges. They're always looking for the most efficient approach. You know, my understanding is they allocate $300 million a year, and there's a billion dollars a year in demand. So it's not something we took likely, we took a hard look at it. And so to be clear, dropping in a middle bridge, it's got to sit in something. It doesn't matter what material it is. You just can't drop a bridge, walk away, and call it done. So we took a look at that, and that's addressing a lot of the public comments. And all we see is, well, we could just put a bridge on there, and we're done. So now, in January 2017, we did go back to council and approve a preliminary design for Meadowway. That's where we indicated concrete bridge, and then we started the environmental analysis. Now, during that timeframe, January 2018, we provided an update on the environmental analysis, and then we actually proposed an alternate design for the retaining walls in the creek. And that was made by some of the residents in the neighborhood, indicating that they thought there was too much concrete in the walls in the creek. So what we ended up doing was coming up with a hybrid, which is half retaining wall, half riprap, to address the neighborhood concerns and make it more environmentally friendly. We had to take that, once we got council approval, then we had to go to Caltrans for approval. And August 2019, we actually reported to you that Caltrans approved it and approved the additional funding, and then we went forth and, you know, continued and finished up our environmental analysis. So one of the things, too, is project costs. Just to clarify how this works is the CEQA costs, CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, that's what we do our environmental analysis on. Those costs, and that's the initial study mitigating neg deck, that's the IS and MND, those costs are not covered by the grant. Those costs come out of the town. Town's responsible for those costs. However, the federal version of CEQA, which is NEPA, National Environmental Protection Act, that has, that, under NEPA, you have to conduct lots of similar studies. And so we were able to take a lot of those studies and use that to prepare our initial study mitigating neg deck. So how it works is design, up to when you get to construction, how it works is the grant covers 89.5%, our share is 11.5% plus our out-of-pocket CEQA costs. Same thing when you do construction drawings. However, the big difference is, when you get to construction, it's 100% funded by the grant. So construction, 100% funded by the grant. Construction management, 100% funded by the grant. And any right-of-way issues that we may have regarding easements, that's all covered by the grant. So currently, our estimate, including our share of construction costs, is about $200,000, and that includes the total CEQA costs. So while the project may ultimately cost $4.7 million or something like that, our share, based on $4.7 million, would be closer to about $200,000. So need to make that very clear on terms of the cost, how the matching works, as well as the different options that we have explored. And then lastly, before I turn it over to, I believe, Nodder is going to go next, it seems to me, I saw someone say, there's neighborhood controversy. I would say with the residents in Meadowway, there is no controversy in terms of, it's true, all the residents agree, the bridge needs to be replaced. Now, I would say, my understanding is, all the residents but one believe that the initial study mitigating neg deck is sufficient and would like to see the project move forward. So that's not a controversy. I don't think one person makes it a controversy. So I just, that's my opinion in terms of clarifying of where we're at and where the residents stand. It's a different issue of what's being raised, of whether or not, what's the level of environmental analysis that's appropriate. Again, we've, we've kind of said in our analysis that we don't see any substantial evidence raised by anyone of a fair argument that the project would, after implementation, result in a significant impact to the environment. However, I know Jeff at WRA will help clarify that. So with that, that concludes my portion of staff report. So unless there's any questions, then I'd probably like to turn it over to Nodder, and then he'll turn it over to Jeff, if that's okay with the council.
Thank you, Garrett. This is Nodder Tammy, I'm the project engineer for this project. I'm the project engineer for this project, and the project manager for the project. And I'm very happy to be here making this presentation again before you. Let's start with my slides. Michelle, please.
Okay, I will put those up.
Great, right there. All right, so the number one slide, and kind of a profile view of the bridge. You can notice the utility pipes that Garrett was talking about, water sewer. The other stuff is overhead communications, and then electrical are overhead. Also, you may notice the steep descent down in the foreground. That is the current unofficial path to the creek. The only place you can get down to the creek from. Slide two, please.
I'm sorry, it's not forwarding there.
There you go. So this is a view of the east abutment area. We talk about scour a lot in this. You can just see what essentially the forces of river have done to this east abutment area. That's a concrete, unreinforced concrete fortification that is actually scoured under for about a depth, horizontal depth of six feet. It's very worrisome to an engineer, by the way. I have been doing this for 41 years as a bridge engineer, and this is one of the worst cases of scour. It's really scaring me with this kind of exposure that the bridge has. You can also see the scour in the support next to the abutment support. Those boards that you see, at one point, they were sitting on the creek bed. So about 23 feet have just washed away in this area. So that's a, that's a major worry. One of the reasons for this project is where the bridge is located, and how the banks on both sides actually scour out, erode, and endanger both the bank and the bridge. Slide three, please. This is immediately downstream of the bridge. You can see that it is already semi-channelized, and you can also see the creek is blown dry at this, as this is probably a midsummer photo right there. Slide four, please.
Sorry, I'm not sure why it's not forwarding.
Maybe go back one, and then go back. So this is immediately upstream on the left. This is the remnants of the wood retaining wall from a bygone era. By the way, the entire project, for the entire project, you can also see that some of the vegetation and the greenery. One tree, which is a cluster of bay trees, is going to be removed. That's the only tree that, in the entire project, that's going to be removed. The vegetation that you see here will also be removed, and these will be removed en masse, en masse, and uprooted with essentially road building machinery, not poisoned for removal. All will be replaced with native and non-invasive plants, including California blackberries. So these are Himalayan blackberries that you see here. They're gonna be replaced with non-invasive native riparian blackberries and then other plants. Next, please. This is right next to that old dilapidated wall that you just saw. This is, again, remnants of a rock riprap program that was put in here. This is, this rock riprap was sized wrongly for the flow of the forces. It's all scattered out, and it's like, actually, this kind of thing is totally unacceptable to the regulatory agencies today, since it spills into the water and disturbs the fish. The fish do not like to travel on rock. They like to travel on riverbed materials. Next one, please. Great. So this is kind of an aerial view of the entire project. We've taken the stage construction and superimposed it all on one drawing for everyone to see. The crosshatched area near the top is the existing bridge. Then the blue, that, mainly blue, that in places mixes with the orange below it, becomes purple. But that is the stage one, where the existing bridge is maintained in place. The bridge will be built next to it. The roadway approaches on both sides. You can see that with that blue color. Bypasses, they bypass the existing bridge and get to the other side. No fences or other amenities belonging to the residents get touched. This is in stage two. And then in stage three is where you see that orangey color in the middle of the right-of-way, half of the distance between each side of the street. That would be the final alignment of the bridge. Next slide, please. This is, again, a technically called Bridge General Plan, GP, where it shows the plan views, kind of similar to what you just saw with an aerial. That's down at the bottom. Again, the three positions of the bridges are shown in yellow for existing, red for stage one, and then black outlines for the final stage. Then you also see the elevation. That's like standing in the south side of the bridge, looking at the profile of the bridge. It's a nice, slight arch bridge that is single span and jumps from one side to the other with a single jump. No supports in the creek. And then, of course, you see the two typical sections to the left. That's, again, one is at the abutment, the east abutment, and the other one below it is in the middle of the span. Next one, please. This is the architects, the bridge architects concept rendering of the future bridge within its environment. Again, on an S curve in the bridge, single leap across with one arch span bridge. Next, please. And of course, you can see the walls that we're talking about, the wing walls that we're talking about as well. This is the concept of the access road that descends down. This is on the opposite side where the informal access is at the existing bridge. This is the other side of the road. Kind of serpentine road that comes down, steep and narrow, just for the contractor's benefit. Now, we will not be showing any kind of access road, or this will not be part of the plans, but we will be allowing the contractor to use such access road, because we think, because of the heavy machinery that's gonna be needed, this access road will be needed. The contractors can move mountains and rebuild mountains. So, we will be making the specifications for this project open so that they can propose something that they do every day, and they are a lot better at it than us imagining that as engineers. And we'll be open to proposals by the contractor, or ways to bid the contract that would save the project the bid money. This is a low bid selection. And so it would be ways to make it faster and cheaper. But this will not be in the contract. We did it to see what the area of potential effect, APE, for the project would be, so that we could cover it in both NEPA and CEQA, and that's what we did. But again, we will not be specific on this to the contract here. We'll just, if they propose it, we will show that the limits that they can go out are, you know, this is the APE, that will be actually established in the field with the orange plastic fence. They can't step across that fence with their work. Next one, please. This is, again, the rendition, another aerial, the architectural, and archaeological APs are rendered on this. We did this, and had to do this early in the process, identified that to Caltrans, the area of impact that I was talking about, both in terms of what the contractor can use, which is the archaeological APE, and then there's an architectural APE, which was the area that had to be studied for historic and natural, and cultural resources. Next one, please. This is the access area after construction is done. So the bridge will be on the right-hand side, a very gentle descent down. That slope will be essentially morphed into this. It will be planted with, again, natural native riparian plants, bushes, trees, and the like. The wall that you see at the creek level is what we call the wing wall. Originally, as Garrett was saying, that wall continued all the way on the edge of the creek. What we did was, was we cut off that wall, put a slope next to it, and this slope is very significant. I'll talk about it in a little bit again. And then, the remainder of the grades will be taken up by a much shorter wall up on the, on top of the slope, very top of the bank, next to Scott McHathlin Davis's home. Next one, please. Is this, oh, there you go. So this is, again, that area, you see the red little bubbles are this large boulders that we will be putting in that area with. Next slide, please, then I'll segue into what we are going to do. I think there is one before this. There you go. So that area next to the bridge wing wall will be one of our mitigation features for this entire project, which is going to be very unique in this entire watershed, which is a revetment. It's called log rootwad and boulder revetment where you lay down these large whole stumps, trunks of trees in a grid fashion, maybe a couple of grids on top of each other at the very bottom of the creek. When that slope is removed, that slope that the contractor comes down to do his work on is going to be removed. Or this could be actually done at the beginning of the project as well, that they lay this down and work on it, and eventually convert it to this log rootwad. But anyway, at the creek level, it would be a grid of large logs that would, their roots would stick out in the creek area. They hang over these pools that are going to be, shallow pools that are gonna be dug in, essentially creating, and then, of course, the grid will be filled with rock, and then on top of that will be, will be three feet of natural embankment and soil materials. And by the way, this entire project, we are using riprap to protect the bridge abutments, their foundations, but they're all going to be topped with three feet of soil. This is one of the features that NOAA and other regulatory agencies love to see, that when you use riprap, and it's all buried. So essentially, you end up with a semi-curved trough that meanders through the site, which is the creek. And it's going to be soil up to flood elevations, 50-year flood elevations are quite high. The banks continue on up, but you will have this trough of soil for fish to travel, which, what the fish like to do, to spawn, when they're spawning. Next, please. And this is that area, maybe I think we went backwards, or we can go up, there we go, all the way to the last slide. This is a picture of a similar, this is going to be very similar to San Samuel Creek and Meadow Way area. This is an example of log rootwad revetment. It catches other woody, traveling elements in the creek. The fish love to go hide among those, there's shade, and they like to hang around and play in those pools. So this is the end of the PowerPoint, but just a couple of quick notes to add at the end, that we are here for CEQA and environmental details tonight. When it comes to design details, design construction details, we are planning on having a third and last workshop during the design phase, where we will take, again, comments and suggestions about design, and will be making, to make modifications that would benefit the project, the residents, and users. This next phase after, now, will be, after CEQA, will be dealing with right-of-way activities, easement agreements, et cetera. The second point was that, again, I guess I covered this earlier, which is through specifications, we will allow the contractor to show innovation, to show ways to do this faster and cheaper, and we will be open to entertaining those, and analyzing them during construction quickly, and reject or accept them to speed construction, and so on and so forth. The results of, well, this is, I'm sorry. What I was gonna say was that, we, at the workshop, we will have actually a good summer. By then, we will be close to 85, 90% design, and we will be able to let everyone know where things are at, and to make suggestions, to make changes. So this is, I will be taking notes about points and questions that will be raised tonight by various speakers, and if the council would like, I'd be happy to respond to those at some point individually, one by one before you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nodder. Again, I'm Jeff Riley. Can you hear me?
It's, you know, a little bit. It sounds like the internet.
So, I'm Jeff Riley. I'm a senior environmental professor, Mr. Nicholas Brenton. Can you hear me? Can you hear me okay?
The sound is breaking up.
Okay.
We hear you. I hear you.
Thank you. All right. Let me know if I break up again, maybe wave your hand. It's now I'm gonna provide an overview of the March 4th presentation that I gave
Your internet connection is really bad.
Regarding the initial study, MND, mitigated negative declaration, IS, MND. And I'm gonna go, the comments that were made, some comments. Sorry.
You know, if you, if you wanted to turn off your video, that might, that might help, because it's probably a matter of internet bandwidth. So let's see if the sound is better if you, by that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Sorry about that. Again, just wave your hand, I guess, if you have any problems. And then, what I'm also gonna address too is some late comment letters that came in after the initial study mitigated negative declaration, public review period, that was submitted by the Sierra Club, and then some information submitted by, say, Fairfax on April 27th. Next slide, please. And there is a presentation I have too, if you wanna, if you can see it. Michelle, if you don't mind putting that up, the PowerPoint. Thank you. So let's go to the next slide, please. And as you're doing that, I'll just continue. So again, as you know, WRA was hired as a subconsultant to Nodder's firm to prepare what we call an initial study pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act, CEQA for short, to determine if the project might result in any potentially significant impacts to the environment, and whether the project would qualify for a mitigated negative declaration, or an MND, excuse me, or an environmental impact report, also known as an EIR. Now, the CEQA checklist, initial study checklist consists of 20 environmental topics ranging from agricultural resources to wildfires. And we addressed all of those, or looked at all of those. And the list that you see on the screen there is all the project impacts that were potentially potentially significant. And, but with mitigation measures, these impacts can be reduced to less than significant levels. And because we And because we were found that all impact could be reduced to less than significant levels, an MND or mitigated negative declaration is sufficient or is appropriate for the project instead of an EIR. Next slide, please. So just quick history about the project, the process, for those that may not have been at the the previous public meeting. The the draft, which is known as a public version, the draft initial study was published for a thirty seven day review period, starting on December sixteenth and ending on January twenty second. And we sent out all the required notices, including the notice of availability to adopt the initial study MND to interested parties, and it was posted on the town's website, including its technical appendices to the initial study and MND. We also made it available at the town hall lobby. And then for the state agencies, we submit the document with 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 a form called the Notice of Completion Form that goes to what's called the State Clearinghouse. And the State Clearinghouse is responsible for forwarding it to all applicable state agencies, such as Caltrans and Fish and Game, for example, now known as Fish and Wildlife. Next slide, please. And then. Starts, so the.
Can't hear you. I can't hear you at all, if you're talking.
The requirement of.
Jeff, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, you broke up for a little bit, so we didn't hear anything too much on the slide.
Sorry about, all right, I apologize for this. All of my other internet's off in the house. Normally have pretty good bandwidth here. Just stop me, I guess, and I'll go back. But so again, the State Clearinghouse acknowledged receipt of the draft environmental of the initial study, excuse me, and concluded or sent a letter to the town stating that the town had met all the requirements for the State Clearinghouse. And during the thirty day seven thirty seven day review period, one comment letter was submitted from Mr. Egger, and it included the the main topics that you see on the screen there. Next slide, please. And amongst those key topics. Next slide about from Mr. Egger, biological resources. Thank you, Michelle. And I'll go into those separately in just a second, after I go over the sequel process. My view of the the initial study process, and and that consists of, we prepare what's called the final initial study, MND. And what it does is it responds to all the comments on the draft MND. And what we found was that none of the responses required, no edits were required to the to the draft based on the comments provided on the draft MND. And the the final initial study mitigated negative declaration does not describe a project of having any new or substantially greater impacts than was originally analyzed in the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. And therefore, under SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act, recirculation of the draft and initial study and mitigated negative declaration is not required, and technically, an EIR is not necessary either, because all impacts could be mitigated. And a notice of availability of the final was sent to all interested parties prior to the March fourth hearing, including the commenter, Mr. Egger. Next slide, please. So what I'd like to go over next is is a just an overview of some substantive comments that were made at the March fourth meeting, which some of you were at the meeting and heard the the comments and the responses verbally from WRA and Nicholas and myself, as well as I'm going to go over some of the key comments from Sierra Club and Save Fairfax. Now, as you may know, the staff report has a very detailed discussion of of these comments, of comments and responses for all three items. And I want to point out that, you know, many of these comments provided at the meeting, as well as in the Sierra Club letter and from Save Fairfax, were very similar to the comments made by Mr. Egger on the the draft initial study mitigated negative declaration. And so but so that some of the newer comments that came up, or the ones that weren't raised by Mr. Egger, included the three key items, if I may, the that there have been other EIRs, environmental impact reports, prepared for other bridges in Marin County, that's one. And they raised the possible impacts to bats was another new comment. And then the third new comment was comments related to potential impacts of the project related to channelization, which is not proposed, or increased flooding impacts. Next slide, please. So one of the main, thank you, I'm just, one of the main requests the commentators have, as you've heard already, is that the town should prepare an environmental impact report for the project instead of adopting the mitigated negative declaration, and that an EIR would allow the town to consider alternatives to the project. Now, just I want to point out that the initial study mitigated negative declaration, as I alluded to earlier, it addresses all the topics in the checklist. And so what an EIR would do is address the same topics. And quite frankly, probably include the same mitigation measures as the mitigated negative declaration, and hence would conclude, in my professional opinion, that the all the potentially significant impacts could be fully mitigated, which we've already demonstrated with the mitigated negative declaration. Now, so so the MND is very similar to the EIR with a few exceptions. The it does analyze all the topics that a EIR would, with the exception of things that are called growth inducing impacts and and significant irreversible environmental impacts are two exceptions. The the other one is alternatives. And while EIRs do require analysis of alternatives, Garrett got into this pretty well earlier, the project involves several public meetings and outreach regarding bridge design and size. And I want to point out some of the requirements of EIR alternatives include, the alternatives must avoid or reduce the project's significant impacts while still meeting the basic objectives of the project. And the alternative analysis in under SEQA, unlike NEPA, is required, the the alternative analysis does not have to be at the same level of analysis as the project analysis. So oftentimes, what I've seen in my career is that agencies may want to approve an alternative in the EIR, but it doesn't have enough analysis to fully inform the lead agency on the impacts. And so that's one deficiency, I think, I guess, in trying to choose an EIR alternative when you're looking at an EIR on a given project. And I, lastly, on this slide, I wanted to point out that, you know, there were some ideas mentioned for alternatives by the commentators, but not in sufficient detail to demonstrate if they would, one, reduce or eliminate, let me back up, sorry. One of the key points of alternatives is to reduce or eliminate a project's significant impacts while still meeting the objectives. And the ideas that were recommended by the commentators don't provide enough specifics to confirm that it would actually reduce impacts or maybe even generate other impacts that weren't contemplated, and and whether or not such alternatives would meet the basic objectives of the project. Next slide, please. So some of the new comments, I'll just go over that, and then I'll try to round up here so you can get into the Q and A, is that the other bridge projects required an EIR. Specifically, an EIR was required for the Lagunitas Road Bridge in in the town of Ross, because it would result in impacts that cannot be fully mitigated, specifically cultural resources. It's eligible for historic bridge in Ross, that bridge, and emergency in access impacts were found to be unavoidable impacts. You can't fully mitigate them, unlike the Meadow Way EIR, excuse me, initial study, where you can fully mitigate the impacts. So that's why an EIR was required for that project. The other example was the Lagunitas Creek Bridge Project, also known as the Green Bridge Project cited by the commentators. And this bridge is on State Highway one, and it provides access to the Point Reyes National Seashore. And the the environmental setting and the regulatory setting for that bridge is completely different than Meadow Way. And so the choice to prepare EIRs for those bridges has no bearing on the town of Fairfax's determination to use a mitigated negative declaration for the proposed project. Now, quickly, some of the other new comments that came up related to bats, and as the initial study suggests and the or, excuse me, discloses, as well as the final initial study, there is no suitable habitat for bats present on site. Specifically, the bridge does not contain what our biologists described as deep expansion joints or crevices to support stable temperatures and conditions to support roosting bats. So that impact was found to be less than significant, and the commentators don't provide any substantial evidence to the contrary. Thirdly, contrary to the commentators' comments, no channelization is proposed for this project. And as Nader explained pretty well there, the project includes fish habitat restoration using bioengineering techniques, low earth berms and woody nooks, for example. So it's fish friendly, as approved by NIPS, the National Fisheries Marine Service, NIPS. And so, lastly, the project would not substantially alter drainage patterns. It was it does result in a slight increase of the permeal surface, but flooding but impacts to flooding were deemed to be less than significant. Next slide, please. And then just to round out, so these some of these were new and some of them were carryovers, the concept of intermittent stream. Well, we do acknowledge that San Salmo Creek, its entire length, is designated as a perennial creek for its entire length. However, the creek at Meadow Way Bridge is not perennial, and it often dries up in the summer, as you saw in some of the photos that Nader shared in his presentation. We covered this a little bit, the vegetation removal, you know, the project will be required to include a tree removal permit. A planting plan will be prepared for revegetation, including native riparian trees, shrubs, vines, ground cover, and willows. And as Nader alluded to, it will discuss or cover blackberries. And it also provides shade for fish as well. So again, it is a fish friendly design. Now, there is comments about access and that the project would block access to the public and to wildlife. But quite frankly, as Nader showed, the 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 project provides new and improved access and including for wildlife, and there's no fencing to obstruct access to the creek during the operational phase of the project. Next slide, please. So these slides were presented in my March fourth presentation, and similar comments were raised after this, the the March fourth meeting about following wildlife. So I'll do this kind of high level, none of our conclusions have changed on these slides. It's the same information, including that coho salmon have been extirpated from the bay and its tributaries. And NIPS has confirmed it does not exist in San Salmo Creek, National Marines Fisheries Service. And so and that's supported by our our consultation with them and in their, what's called a biological opinion, a VO that NIPS prepared. And again, the staff report includes much more details on this, as does the final initial study mitigated negative declaration. Next slide, please, Michelle. So steelhead, then as the commentators note, and we acknowledge it is present in San Salmo Creek. And we again had consultation with NIPS regarding the species and with project design and and proposed minimization avoidance measures, NIPS concurred that there will be no significant impacts after mitigation to the species. Next slide, please. Rounding out the the wildlife topics, and I'll conclude, like the steelhead, and as acknowledged by the commentators, this owl, northern spotted owl, is present in the project vicinity. However, based on consultation with the service, U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, the project would not result in any significant impacts to the species. It doesn't have suitable habitat on site, but it is located nearby, and the minimization measures to be that have been discussed with the service and will ultimately be reapproved by the service ensure that impacts would be less than significant. Next slide. And so the we talked about perennial and intermittent nature. And so the foothill yellow-legged frog is known to exist upstream of the the project site, near Cascade or in the headwaters of the creek itself. However, this project requires a permanent source of water, and particularly during the dry season, and is not, so the suitable habitat is not available at the site. And therefore, we concluded that impacts would be less than significant, and that was supported by the regulatory agencies as well. Next slide, please. And then this comment came up a few times, wildlife movement in general, including and that the project would compromise wildlife movement. And, you know, as I mentioned, on March fourth, there's only a few hours of construction at night on one day or one night to install the bridge, after all the work that Nader explained on the various phases, and which is when the these species typically would migrate in that area. They've adapted to the area, as we all see and know. And so we deemed that those impacts were less than significant. Next slide, and final slide, please. So just to conclude with the implementation, we've said this before, Garrett repeated it a few times, but I just want to iron this, hammer this into you, so you understand that with the mitigation, there are no remaining impacts, that all the impacts are fully mitigated. And the commentators failed to provide any substantial evidence of a fair argument that the project would result in potentially significant impacts that are not already addressed in the initial study mitigated negative declaration, and therefore, we feel an EIR is not warranted or required. Thank you.
So Garrett, does that finish your staff report?
Right, I believe Jeff and Nader are done, we're done. So at this point, again, our recommendation is if you have specific questions of what we discussed, now would be the time. And then after that, then open it up for public comment, and then we're recommending we continue it to the June, I think I said, that was the June third council meeting.
So if council members have any questions of staff, just wave and I'll call on you. Councilmember Kohler.
I just want to mention that I have read all the documentation and all the emails up until about six o'clock today, as well as the document itself. I did ask some questions prior to the meeting, which were answered by WRA, and some of those were based on some of the comments received. So I don't have any questions at this time, but I do want to make it clear that I I did have several questions, and I was, I felt the answers were more than adequate. Thank you.
Councilmember Reed.
Yeah, it's just more of a comment. I I guess I could form it in terms of a question, in terms of the whole question of whether this is an intermittent stream or a perennial stream. I know, I don't know how many dozens of times I've walked up that stream, different times of the year, and I know that it it does dry up, as we saw in one of the one of the photographs. And I I I don't know exactly, perhaps that's the actual question that that I would have is, is how is that actually determined to, you know, if it if it regularly goes dry, you know, August, September, like that, you know, sometimes it's as early as June some years, it really depends. I mean, I live on a stream, look out my window at one, I know that Fairfax Creek runs above ground for most of the year, if all the year, some sometimes, but I've also walked this creek, Cascade Creek, or San Salmo Creek as it is, and I've found that one to be dry a lot of the times that the one outside my window is not. So I just, I guess that's a clarifying question is, how do you determine that? Is it just dry on the surface and then you call it intermittent? Or does it have to be? Or does it have to be a certain amount of time out of the year or what?
I think I could probably help you with that one, Councilman Reed. So I'm Nick with WRA. I'm the wildlife biologist and fisheries biologist for the project. And generally speaking, an intermittent stream only flows for a certain portion of the year and then goes dry during the dry season, i.e. it doesn't have connected surface flow after that point. Now, a perennial stream can occasionally go dry, but it's only going to go dry when there's a very severe drought. And usually then only for a short period, for like maybe a week or two, when it gets like the absolute hottest. However, an intermittent stream will seasonally dry up on the surface, just the way this section of San Onofre Creek does. Does that help you?
So I'd like to interject here. So what maps did you use as a resource when you classified this as an intermittent stream? Because the letters we've gotten from the Watershed Alliance, which is a local expert in our watershed, they say it's not a matter of opinion that this is a blue line on our local maps. And there is no question, this is a perennial stream, as does the Sierra Club. So this concerns me a lot that you seemingly, no disrespect, downgraded this stream.
Can I further comment on this? Because I mean, I know on Marin map, it shows it as a solid blue line. And that was in the Sierra Club letter and stuff like that. But from personal experience, I know that I've walked through that and it's been completely dry.
Right, but it can be fed through the hillsides and from the, the ground, right?
Well, no, I'm talking about standing in the stream bed in the summertime and there's no water in it. There's, there's no water anywhere. It's underground. I mean, there's probably water moving, but it's down, you know, several feet below the surface.
So the, I guess this is, I'll ask
Personal experience.
Question, and then let Nicholas try to explain this and sort this out for us. I guess one thing I heard during the earlier part of the report was that it is, it is certainly possible and I believe I heard that this is the case with this creek, that overall, the creek would be considered a perennial creek in that all year round, there is some water in some parts of the creek. But that a portion of the creek could be not a perennial creek because in that portion, it generally never flows for the entire year. And I guess that the reason for the designation that Nicholas described to us is probably because the, the real reason for these designations is to look at what species have adapted to. Is that, is that correct? That if they, if there's always a dry period every year, then species that require water all year round will not make their home there.
But Bruce, could I have my question answered, which is what resource he uses? Or does he just classify these per project? There has to be a resource, right? That architects use?
This is Jeff. You know, I don't see any citation of the map that was sourced. And it acknowledged that as the commentators, Sierra Club and other late comment letters do point out that the entire stream is deemed perennial, a blue line stream. So we acknowledge that. And maybe that's an oversight in terms of that description. But I think Councilmember Ackerman explained it well is that, you know, portions of the creek aren't always flowing. And, and what we're, this does not change any of the conclusions, the impact conclusions to the species analyzed in the initial study mitigated negative declaration, particularly yellow-legged frog. And which requires free flowing water and couldn't migrate from upstream at Cascade where they're known to exist if during the summer, when large swaths are clearly dry. That's the main point that we were trying to get at. And as otherwise, it's, you know, the mischaracterization of a portion doesn't affect any of the conclusions of the impact analysis.
And did you get the, the letter that came through today from the Watershed Alliance?
Yes, we did.
So I'm sorry, maybe, sorry. Maybe Jeff, you could better explain that the IS MND described at that location, the area of potential impact, the area we're going to work is intermittent. You weren't saying the whole creek is intermittent, because we know that's not correct. But everything says that location, because that's what matters. It's the area of potential impact that we're working in. So you probably might want to make that a little more clear.
Thank you. So I'm looking at page 37 of the final initial study MND. And you're absolutely right, the very beginning of the sentence says, "At this location, comma, San Onofre Creek is an intermittent creek with flows that vary with little, excuse me, with the rainfall patterns of a given season." So yeah, it is disclosed that way.
And to sum up the, the two comments together here. Yes, Vice Mayor Ackerman, the designation or the evaluation was for the specific site there. And that's in relation to what wildlife would use the site because whether sections of stream, you know, a mile up are perennial or not, has no bearing on what the project is going to do at that location. So we're evaluating the effects at that location within that, we call it in the report a BSA, the Biological Study Area. The area where we're reasonably expecting to encounter or to potentially impact wildlife.
Do we have any further questions from council members at this point?
No, I'm going to wait till next month, till we have, I'd like to hear what the publicists say.
I just want to mention one thing. You know, I wasn't here on March 4th because I had surgery that day, but I just wonder. I mean, it seems like to me, after reading all the documents and the presentations tonight, I don't think, it sounds like you went over some of these issues last time. So I'm just wondering, and I don't want you to recreate the wheel a bit, is there anything that I missed? I tried to watch the meeting, but I couldn't watch the whole thing. Is there anything that was impactful that came out of the March 4th meeting? I read through Larry Bragman's and Mr. Egger's comments and responses, but. So I don't want to keep talking. Jeff, did you have something, was there anything impactful I missed at that meeting?
No, no, I mean, my presentation gave a high level overview of the key comments provided at that meeting in combination with the comments from Sierra Club and Save Fairfax. Because quite frankly, they're all very similar and they all kind of piggyback on, well, not all of them, excuse me, many of them do. So now again, we don't find any of the comments that would result in any new significant impacts that weren't already disclosed in the initial study mitigated negative declaration that couldn't be fully mitigated.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay, so it sounds like the, our questions have been addressed. And so we can open to the public comments. And then, then we'll return to council and probably follow staff report to continue this. But for now, let's hear the public comments. And I will also point out that we have, as other people have said, received an enormous number of emails about this. And so we've, we've got a good sense of what the community is thinking about this, but we'll hear public comments now. Garrett, yes?
So just to clarify, you're actually opening the public hearing?
Opening a public hearing, yes. Okay, Michelle, if you can go through that process for us, thank you.
Sure. And so I see two comments on Zoom that we can start with. And I'm, I'm monitoring the latency on our website so that people catch up. We now have three comments, so I'll start with the first one is Valerie.
Hello?
Hi.
Hey, good, thank you. All right, so I would like to know if the speed of the water at the site during floodwater events has been evaluated. And also, because I live downstream and any construction in the town of Fairfax affects the entire town, especially when you're talking about any addition of concrete or channeling of the water. We've seen these effects throughout the Corder Medera Creek watershed. I helped in the mapping of much of the creek in Fairfax. And areas downstream of every concrete construction were quite evident and showed much destruction. And I did that with friends at Corder Medera Creek over several years. So the entire community of Fairfax has an interest in this, especially those of us who've lived through high water events in the eighties and onwards. I'd like to direct your attention to a wonderful book by Craig Childs about water. And one of the things that he talks about is how water comes up at night. It's called Secret Knowledge of Water. And he, he particularly talks about what happens in the desert, but it happens here too. I live on the creek and I can tell you that there've been times in, in the life of our creek that where it seemed completely dry, but you go out at night and the trees let down the water at night. Has that been looked at? I mean, it's really, it really does matter at certain times of the year, what different species use the creek for and what different species may be using the creek for. And so it's very important to know all, all that kind of stuff. The other thing is the artist's rendition doesn't look a bit like that creek. So I think you need to replace that, that drawing. It really dresses it up in quite a strange way for those of us who've been there. We do have steelhead, we saw our first mercansers yesterday. We were a little worried about that, but we're glad to see our fishing ducks are back. Concrete and steel are extremely environmentally expensive compared to wood. And I mean environmentally expensive. And our town needs to talk to the public about the environmental costs, which are above and beyond the financial costs. They can be quite different. And I think in the world that we're living in now, anything we do that degrades our environment needs to be looked at very carefully. Aesthetically, this makes me so very sad to see this design. What we have right now, as time goes by, in the last several years, we're watching the degradation of the look of our town with the kind of storefronts that we see downtown. Widening of roads, poor quality of concrete sidewalks, all kinds of things. It's kind of like this bizarre modernization that makes no sense within what has been a very quaint town. I, I just really hope that we will take into consideration some of this a little bit more. It's, it's just really sad to see what's going on here. Thank you.
So I, I think we'll hold off on getting responses to some of those, those questions until after we get all the public comment, but thank you.
Michelle, you're on mute.
Michelle, we have a
Got it, sorry. I'm trying to unmute. I'm sorry. I would like to unmute Jess L., but you are using, Jess, you are using an older version of Zoom that won't let me unmute you. Do you want to send me an email and I'll read your comment into the record in a little bit? I'm going to move on to Jane K.
Jane? Hello?
Hi.
Can you hear me? My name's Jane Knowles. Sorry, I'm just having a sound problem, we're just sorting it out. I live on Meadowway, I've lived at 52 Meadowway for 27 years and I'm a member of Cascade Canyon Faraway Steering Group. As we know, wooden bridges don't last forever and this one needs to be replaced. As Nadia Tamani reported, it had serious erosion and bridge foundation problems and the foundation soil could behave like quicksand in a major earthquake. The climate too is changing and as we all know, our risk of experiencing serious fire has been increasing along with that. Everyone's worried about evacuation routes in the event of fire, but we haven't been paying so much attention to earthquakes. There's still a risk of a serious earthquake, which could coincide with fire or itself could generate fire. And if that happened before the bridges were placed, evacuation for all residents of Meadowway could be impossible. I, I agree with almost all my neighbors on Meadowway that it would be good to go ahead and replace the bridge as soon as possible. I'd also like to mention that the Sierra Club argues that project fencing will restrict historic local access enjoyed by the public, which needs to be protected. But if the creek was teeming with frogs and steelhead and mountain lions, it would probably be the creek which needed protecting, not public access. And the creek definitely is dry on much of the year. I think the proposals sound very exciting and it looks as though it'll be an awful lot nicer than it currently is. And I do hope the council move ahead without further delay. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next person is Larry Bragman. See if this works.
Got it. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. So thanks for putting this presentation together. I'm here as a resident of Fairfax in my individual capacity and would urge you not to approve the mitigated negative declaration for the Meadowway Bridge Replacement Project. In its present form, the replacement bridge is the most costly and carbon intensive approach possible. Given the current coronavirus emergency, few that further review of the project need not delay construction and could well result in a better and less and less costly approach. The current all concrete design involves the use of hundreds of tons of the single most climate disruptive building material possible without consideration or even mention of its impact or alternatives. Cement is one of the global economy's most carbon polluting industries. It's responsible for 8% of global carbon CO2 emissions. The mission statement of the Fairfax Climate Action Committee includes a commitment by our community to reduce our town's carbon footprint. At a minimum, this study should be augmented to analyze and reduce CO2 pollution and include more climate compatible design alternatives such as steel and prefabricated structures. By reducing the need for massive foundations, these alternative approaches would also reduce the direct habitat disturbances to the creek, which were also inadequately addressed in the MND. As to the direct impacts, the MND categorically states that the project area is not a yellow-legged frog habitat in spite of recent discovery of these threatened creatures within upstream areas of Cascade Creek and ongoing efforts to map their presence elsewhere. While this section of the creek does get intermittently dry, there are deep pools in the area that provide habitat for steelhead and other creatures. Upstream of the project, Marin County Open Space signs advise visitors of the sensitivity of the creek and actually recruit volunteers to help survey the area for yellow-legged frogs. for yellow-legged frogs, which were excluded entirely from the MND. The MND also fails to analyze the direct impacts of the proposed construction approach, which includes building a massive 200-foot earth-and- roadway ramp into the creek for construction access over a two-year, a minimum two-year construction window. Not only will this affect the stream flow and hydrology of the creek, it poses a risk of massive erosion into the upstream and downstream habitat of threatened Steelheads should heavy seasonal rains occur during the construction window. And this happened at our project out at Victory Village just last winter. While I understand the frustration with the timeline of the project, the current review process is not the sole or even primary contributing factor to its length. The Meadow Way Bridge Replacement Design was modified-
You need to wind up. Okay.
I am almost there. Okay. The project was modified in January 2018 and wasn't approved by the state until August of 2019. This is an 18-month lag that was caused by administrative necessity and not the concerned residents who wish to see further review of the project. It should also be noted that due to the pandemic, the project would not have begun this year, even if the council had approved the MND in March. Further environmental review of alternative approaches could and would significantly shorten construction time and associated inconvenience. Hence, the current crisis actually gives us an opportunity to reduce the project's environmental and social costs. The Meadow Way Replacement Bridge may well last for 100 years. The completed structure will be a monument, not only to the technology of our times, but the public process from which it sprang. Fairfax has a culture of robust debate and discussion when it comes to construction projects. It usually has chosen a very green and progressive path and should do so now. I've got one more paragraph. "Project of this-"
I have sent this in an email as well, but-
"A project of this magnitude should not be a popularity contest. If neighborhood preference was the determining factor, we wouldn't have good earth." This is a $5 million project that all Fairfax residents will pay for and will reflect upon the entire community's stewardship of Cascade Creek. I believe that further review is in the best interests of the town, based on the inadequacy of the MND and because, and most importantly, it'll result in a better and probably less costly project, more reflective of the environmental and social values of our community. So thank you for our time. I know I've run over, and thank you.
Michelle?
Okay, we have some more comments. And next is, I'm sorry, it seems, I'm going to go with Nadeem.
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes. Hello.
Excellent. So I just want to voice my support for moving this project going forward as it's been proposed. I live on Meadow Way. I live on the creek. This has been going on for seven years. And no, I'm kind of at the point where I'm losing my wits about this whole thing. It seems like it's a lot of grandstanding going on for forgetting maybe your name in the newspaper. I don't know what really the intention is. The creek runs dry in the summertime. All this talk about a perennial creek. I've lived on this creek since 2006. It is dry in the summertime. So I don't, you know, I don't kind of believe these counter arguments that I'm hearing. I've walked up and down the creek with my kids ever since they were little, and it's dry in the summer, especially where they're going to build a new bridge. The new bridge is wood. It's soaked in chemicals. It's still off-gases after 70 years. Any wood bridge that you would put in its place would have the same problem. The concrete bridge was voted on by the neighbors. We all decided, we looked at three different design choices. It was wood, it was steel, it was concrete. The designers actually scaled the bridge down to a one lane. They did listen to the input of the neighbors here, and they did a really good job. I got to commend Garrett for moving this along. I don't know how long this is going to take. I'm actually appalled that this thing is being put off until the June 3 meeting. And because obstructionists decided to give 5:00 p.m. emails to the town council. This has been going on for seven years. The people on our street are growing very concerned. I'm sure you've got emails from everybody except probably one or two supporting the bridge. The word around my street is that's a wooden bridge. If there's ever a fire, that bridge will go out. We will all be stuck here on this side of the creek. So you can probably sense my frustration, but I am giving my overwhelming vote of approval to move this bridge forward as proposed and stop the obstruction. Thanks.
Thank you.
Next, we have Chance.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Good evening, all. Thank you so much for having this on here. It worked really well for me, this whole tech thing. Yeah, so I just wanted to first thank Garrett for giving that little background about the three different bridges and the liquefaction concerns. I think that's really helpful in understanding or providing context. And I also wanted to thank Jeff and Nader as well for both of your presentations. I think, Nader, you're, you know, I agree with Valerie that actually that artist's rendition probably was not the most helpful in explaining some of the benefits of, you know, the, I guess it was pages 20 and 21 of the mitigated neg deck, the final stage construction, which talked about the, you know, substantial mitigation habitat restoration and stream flow management interventions that really alleviated some concerns about, you know, concrete canalization of this portion of San Anselmo Creek. I think a lot of the notes you guys had in there about the woody nooks, the protruding salvage logs and things like that, you know, that sounds very similar to the type of work that Spawn is doing in Lagunitas Creek to restore Selmonad habitat. So I was really happy to see some of that stuff in there. And I recognize the concerns a couple folks raised about the concrete, the carbon footprint of that. You know, I come from the environmental background, so I tend to agree in principle. It'd be great if there were more, you know, carbon-neutral concrete options or abilities to source that sort of thing. So I don't know if that's something down the road to look into during the design phase, but yeah, generally, I just, you know, I shared a comment today. I wanted to say specifically that I'd done quite a bit of research on that discrepancy in the classification of San Anselmo Creek, whether or not it was, you know, perennial or intermittent. And I recognize that, you know, some of these maps from the county, from flood control, you know, watershed district and from, as well as the U.S. Geological Survey, their hydrography data sets, you know, if you look at their hydrographic information online, the flow lines are, they say this is coded perennial. However, and I know this created some confusion earlier in this discussion, but, you know, I looked at some other bridge mitigated neg decks in the area, and they also talked about the National Wetlands Inventory from U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. And I did share this in my comments, but I do want the public to know as well. You can look at different sections of the creek, and in the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service National Wetlands Inventory at this location, I'm glad that Garrett brought this, you know, was specific with this, as well as Jeff, but it does say that, you know, this is coded. It's R4SBC, so riverine, intermittent, streambed, seasonally flooded. And other sections of San Anselmo Creek are coded differently in the National Wetlands Inventory, and they are coded upland perennial. So, you know, there is documentation that speaks to the claim in the mitigated neg deck that, you know, this particular section is intermittent, and this might alleviate concerns about frogs, habitat, because I know they are, they, you know, spawn in streambeds and stuff like that. But yeah, I think, you know, it would be great to make that a little more clear if there's a possible to have an addendum or something supplemental. And if you guys can look at those tools as opposed to using, I think you talked about the ordinary high watermark as a tool, but there are databases that also support what was cited in there. So I think-
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. I was just hoping if you could, just one other thing, like the, I don't know what the difference moving forward for you for your permitting, if it's classified perennial or intermittent, I don't know what that difference is, and it would be great if WRA could speak to, you know, I believe they're both jurisdictional under Clean Water Act, and I don't think there's a big difference. So if you could speak to how you approach it, if there's any difference, I think that'd be helpful for the public. Thank you.
Okay. There's a question in there for later on. Thank you, Chance.
Okay. And the next person is calling in by phone. I'm going to-
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. This is Jess Lerner, Canyon Road. So I just want to say I am, I'm glad I got through. There were some technical difficulties. I am by no means an expert on the technical aspects or the engineering aspects of this project, and I'm pretty new to it because I haven't been around for the many, many years it's been going on. So I'm just speaking from my personal perspective as a resident of the Cascades and also as a naturalist that appreciates the ecosystem and the watershed that we live in. So I, first of all, agree with everything that Larry Bragman said. And when I was listening to the presentations, I was left with a lot of questions. This may be because I have not been on a lot of other discussions about this. Maybe there have been other workshops or charrettes where this has been discussed. And maybe because I don't know the intricacies of CEQA, and I need to understand those guidelines more in depth. But I was left with wondering, what do they mean by significant levels of impact? What does that look like? And is that what we want? In other words, can we determine, besides just looking at those guidelines, unique to Fairfax and unique to this creek bed, what are we willing to tolerate as significant impact? I think there have been a lot of other concerns, even if it is an intermittent creek we're looking at. We don't always notice what's going on and the wildlife and the ecosystems we have going on. And I feel like we're not always aware of the environmental impact. I think there's no reason why we shouldn't do an environmental impact report. I hear people calling in who've been dealing with this way longer than I have. I have tremendous respect for that, for wanting to get it done. But it isn't, it sounds like it's not because of the environmental impact questions that this has taken so long. It's another reason, and it's the fault of some other issues. So that doesn't mean that it should be rushed forward without the environmental impact report, which I hear the engineers and everyone saying isn't necessary. But I wasn't convinced by that presentation because it wasn't clear. And kind of like Chance said in his comments just now, more details and more clarity is needed. So I wish there were more details and clarity. The sketches, again, that I just saw of the potential bridge were kind of small and really hard to decipher what it would look like. I really appreciate the woody debris going into the stream. I agree that that oil will be great for fish and has been used by Spawn. I think that's a really good tool, and that's the kind of thing that should be happening. A road going straight into the creek sounds like a heavy impact to me, and the length of time that this will take sounds really intense. For the people who are rushing to get it done, it sounds like the length of time and the intensity of the project could hopefully be mitigated. I think the safety of people is of utmost importance, and so is our environmental impact. And last, I just want to say that, you know, I see that the Bon Air Bridge over by the hospital, like that that is done by the same group. They seem like wonderful people, nice guys. I personally see that project as really kind of not so great. It's taking forever. It's a mess, and it's really urban. So I don't know what the design of this will look like, and it has me, it left me with some questions. So my final comments are, I really support an EIR and any other environmental impact, and more communication about and clarity around these issues with the public. If that's already been done, I apologize, but I want to learn more about that. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Going forward, I'm not sure whether the commenters can actually see the clock, unless you're looking online. If you are, you can see that Garrett is holding up a clock. But I will go ahead and just pop in at 3 minutes and tell you that it's 3 minutes so that you can wind it up, just so future commenters will know. Thanks. Go ahead, Michelle.
Okay. This next speaker is Mark.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Yeah, I'm also a resident of Meadow Way. And I just want to say, can we please, please get on and build this bridge? I hear what just everyone's saying about the environment protection, but we've had however many years. I mean, I think the idea, the bridge was first raised 20 years ago, and, you know, it's been getting serious for seven years. There was plenty of time for review. He could have mentioned it then. It hadn't happened. Can we just? And it's getting dangerous to cross that bridge. You know, they keep patching it up. And it's, if you go underneath, you saw those pictures. It's quite scary. You know, what's going to happen if the bridge actually collapses? It's going to be very bad. There'll be a lot of lawsuits. So yeah, that's all I've got to say. I just want to put my word behind getting it done as soon as possible. I don't think any further environmental reviews are going to change anything significantly.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, we have, the next person is Annika.
Actually, it's Nader. It's her husband.
Okay.
Matt. I'm a resident on Meadow Way, and I want to, I got to echo what Nadeem said. This has been going on for a long time. It is not a delay of a couple months, as was mentioned a little while ago. And it's absurd that everything has been reviewed by the regulatory agencies. It's time to move on, and I think anybody who suggests otherwise, I hope that means they're assuming responsibility for the fire risk for everybody on Meadow Way. I will note that everybody who's called in, who has been in opposition from that, does not live on Meadow Way. And contrary to the notion that it's not a popularity contest, if you ask the residents, the citizens of your town, what they want, and they tell you what they want, you're contravening it if you go against that. So I urge the city to move as quickly as it can to do the bridge. The environmental studies have been done. Everybody on Meadow Way is here because they like the environment. Nobody here wants big concrete buildings and unsightly bridges. So I think it's time to move on, and we should not have punted it down to June. There'll just be more obfuscation about moving forward with this, so I urge you to move forward.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another comment. And that is a call-in, just says "call in user four," so if you have called in.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Valerie, and I just, I understand both sides. I wish there were a way we can do this more ecologically without the concrete. We could do it more financially better than what we're spending. It seems like a huge amount of money for this thing. And I really hear what everybody is saying, and I also think the environment is as important as the human environment is. And if there's a way that we could do this better and serve everybody, I don't know there is. But I would be in favor of that. I agreed completely with what Larry said and with what Valerie said. And I also understand the people who are on Meadow Way and what their concerns are. I just, you know, wish there were another solution to this. And if there is, if somebody can come up with one that would work, that would be great. That's it. Thank you. Also, I lost you on the video, by the way.
You did?
We're still-
Yeah. Yeah. Zoom went off, and I'm unable to connect, which is why I called in.
I'm sorry.
Okay. All right. I think that, I think there might be a lot of people who may be on Zoom, so you might want to give them the number, the phone number to call and the number nine to press if they want to put their voice in.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I can do that right now. The telephone number to- The telephone number, is that okay, Vice Mayor?
Yes, yes, go ahead.
The telephone number to call into the meeting with your telephone is 669-900-6833. And you will be asked for the ID to the meeting. That is 853-3603-4777. I do see two more call in users now.
Yeah, and calling in by phone makes a lot of sense because we can't see your face anyway, so it's about the same. So feel free to call in by phone. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, I think you gave a different number than was on the website. 900-9128 is what it says for the call in option.
Really?
Yeah. It says *676699009128.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and then to press *9.
*9 to, so I can see you. Yes.
Yeah. Okay, bye.
Bye.
So that comment was just to help us out. Well, thank you very much. User four.
Okay. So user four. Now we're on caller two. Did that work?
Who's caller two?
Hi. Yes, you're on air.
Frank Agar, 13 Meadow Way.
Okay.
COVID-19 shelter in place is severely restricting the public's right to participate in important governmental decisions. Zoom is not working, so I'm on the phone. I'm speaking for Save Fairfax this evening. I have sent three emails for the record this evening. The mitigative negative declaration was a predetermined decision. A June 2016 email from Bridge Consultant Mr. Tamaney to Town Manager Toy and Engineer Bush stating the drop-in steel bridge is the best solution for the Meadow Creek Crossing. It fits the site, and it fits Fairfax's long-term goals. What would that do? It'd be, it'd be no 230-foot dirt road bulldozed into the creek for a two-year project, a much less adverse environmental impact, a huge reduction in carbon effects. Two, the 2009/2013 California Department of Fish and Wildlife report on San Anselmo Creek. I've forwarded that to you and the link. The mitigative deck does not address in depth the groundwater flows during drought, dry seasons. Is the groundwater six inches down, one foot down, three feet down? Number three, I email the town, and I've emailed these to the town council also. The 2019 map of Fairfax prepared by the California Natural Diversity Database, and it shows locations of yellow-legged frogs and northern spotted owls. Northern spotted owls are very close to the Meadow site. In fact, you may have, you may have a nest within 200 feet of the bridge. The mitigated negative deck does not, does not include the method that will be used to eliminate a half acre of blackberries on either side of the creek, southwest of the bridge. Now, Mr. Tamaney said this evening they're going to, I guess, hand remove them. But the mitigated negative deck does not address that. Fairfax has an ordinance, number 852, about pesticides, and it bans the use of pesticides on the commons and public property, and most of the sites' public property. Number two, the mitigated negative declaration does not show an alternative from moving the historic bridge location seven feet towards the southwest, towards six, number six Meadow Way. If the bridge remained where it is, no roadway into the creek would be necessary, and no need to remove the 15-year-old federal emergency management agency-funded riprap and replace it with a concrete wall. Number three, the mitigated negative deck misses a very special law for Fairfax adopted to protect her creeks, her creeks, its creek setback law, 20 feet from the top of the bank for structures, including new concrete walls higher or longer than existing. So all the proposed concrete walls need special discretionary permits from Fairfax. The mitigated negative deck does not address the impact downtown, on downtown San Anselmo Ross, the result of the flooding that's going to occur. The natural floodplain will be, will be reduced. The past three days, I have received over 800 pages of a Public Records Act request. I've been reading it though. The mitigated negative deck does not tell you because of the roadway to the creek and moving the bridge over, Fairfax must buy private property. One resident is paid $187,500 for a piece of their land. Another resident is paid $22,000 for a piece of their land. And a third resident is paid $6,500 for an easement only. The town council needs to see that email. Keep the bridge where it is, build it in one season in three to four weeks' time. I've seen online where Sacramento Bridge Building Firm built a train bridge much longer than the Meadow one in 48 hours. Number six, the loss of historical public wildlife access on public property is lost. The Sierra Club, Spawn, Marin Watershed Alliance, and a number of residents have requested an EIR. Seven, the clear, the clear cut of the native willows, buckeyes, alders, and bays that provide shade and for steelhead, and an EIR will actually save Fairfax money in time. It will allow the town council to look at a much less destructive project, reduce costs, and build the new bridge in three to four weeks in one season. Temporary bridge crossing for pedestrians and bicyclists, park fire engines across the bridge on our side, have residents move their vehicles across, and have a precast concrete bridge transported over. We are going to introduce documents on Zoom, but it's impossible to connect. Attorney Michael Graff has forwarded comments for Save Fairfax and myself citing references and points of law to support our positions. We know that an alternative is available and will save time and money. So thank you very much. I look forward to the, to the hearing on, on June 3rd. Thank you.
Michelle?
Okay, we have, next is Kirsten Asher.
Are you there? Yes, hi, can you hear?
Yes.
Wonderful. Hi, everyone. Let me just get to my notes here. Bottom line, this project is way overdone. There is no need to build such a large bridge in that area. There's no need to pay residents for their land. There's no need to go overboard. In my opinion, the current design is just way too expensive, too extensive in scale, and doesn't match the style of the houses in the surrounding area. You know, the Cascade area is really beautiful. It's an environmental treasure. It's host to northern spotted owl, owl, excuse me, yellow-legged frogs, steelhead trout, California gray foxes, mountain lions, and California black-tailed deer. The stream running through it connects watersheds and is an essential contribution to the health of the Marin County waterways. We all know that. Why you would insert so much concrete in that area, overbuild a bridge that really doesn't need to be built in such a large scale is beyond me. It's very concerning, the amount of money that this bridge is costing the town of Fairfax. And I just think that the town really needs to stop and consider an environmental overview. There are people that have been calling in saying, get it, get it done, get it done. And it's kind of actually shocking to me. We are, you know, known in Fairfax as being environmentalists. We are known as people who take, have respect for nature and take the steps that we need to in order to understand the area, understand the waters and the, and nature and the waterways. Why you would want to go ahead and build something so large and not do an environmental impact report is astounding to me. To me, that's just who we are in Fairfax, and I'd like to urge the council to reconsider that, to just go ahead and do the environmental report, see what happens, see what we come up with. We'll have more information and less of a large albatross in that area. It's really overkill. It's just too much. Thanks so much for listening. Okay, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, and we have Ricky.
Richard Applebaum, 61, Woodland.
That's right.
Sorry, it's okay.
Hi, Ricky.
So the, the question really before the council ultimately is, do you support this plan? Are you going to vote in favor of this plan? I realize there's no vote tonight. Maybe there will be in June or July. And I have tremendous empathy for the neighbors who are just anxious to get on with it. I, I live there. I could imagine if I'd been waiting seven, 10, 15 years, that I would, I really get that. So there's really two, two groups of people in the town. There's the people who live down there and use the bridge every day, and then there's the rest of us who are the taxpayers and have other concerns and other thoughts. And so I really don't mean to minimize or dismiss the folks who live down there. But the way the staff report was put out and the way the consultants presented it was that this is the best plan. And almost sounded like this is the only plan. If I heard Town Manager Buttman's are in danger of whatever, nothing else could be supported here. And the problem is that Frank and Larry, and Kristin, and others are commenting on different things, and it seems like maybe there are some other possibilities. And I think what we really need to do is we need to get clarity on whether or not the proposal that's being put by these consultants is really the only option we have. And members of the public and others with expertise are suggesting that there may be, in fact, other solutions that are less disruptive, and in fact, will end up having a shorter timeline. It was also a little bit murky, but if I followed Town Manager and his comments earlier, it sounded like what he was saying is there's some relatively order of magnitude nominal fees in the couple hundred thousand dollar range, and that everything else was going to be covered in some way by grants and government things and whoever. I don't know, all the agencies that are kicking the money in. And we should really get that spelled out very, very clearly. How much are the taxpayers on the hook for? This whole thing about parcels of land, sections of people's property being, when I do the fast math, that was over $200,000 as well. So is that an additional $200,000 on the $200,000 that we're responsible for? And one of the consultants had mentioned that essentially the MND was almost analogous to an EIR. Why bother with the EIR? They're essentially the same thing. And maybe that's so, but if it is, I'm just curious, why do EIRs exist then? You know, is there really no, no distinction, or the distinction doesn't apply here? So, you know, Jess came in with good comments about, you know, mitigating impact, but, you know, that, that's sort of a bit of a judgment call. You know, I mean, obviously, there are people with expertise and officials that say what mitigation is and that it's acceptable, but I don't think it's unreasonable for concerned citizens in the town to be having this conversation. We've come this far. We take another month or two. We really think this thing through. And I would really encourage that we get clarity on the money and the budget part, and we get clarity on whether or not this is in fact, not only the preferred or best option to some people, but the only option. Because if there really are some other solutions, and in fact, some of those other solutions are cheaper, or more timely in their own way, or cost less disruption, and there's, there's other benefits, I think it is absolutely reasonable to weigh those other options. And I feel like the way it was presented to, to the council was that there weren't any. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have another caller. Peter, or not a caller, but. Another hand raised.
That's me. It's Peter Arnold.
Hi.
Hi. Karen and I, my wife Karen and I have lived on Meadow Way for 29 years. And this bridge was first proposed to be replaced about 25 years ago. And it was stopped at that point because people wanted to keep the wood bridge. But the bridge at that point, we, we think was a smaller, more, you know, keeping with what's there now type of a structure, but it would have been concrete most likely. But that was stopped. Move forward 15 years plus, and now we've gone through seven years of a process of reviews and public comment. We've had opinions about the project given tonight, obviously by people that haven't read the report or looked at the design closely, and they don't live on Meadow Way. None of these people live on Meadow Way. We are too worried about this bridge. And if you go under it and actually look at the creek, if you think that's a wonderful, beautiful, natural environment, you have a different opinion than I do. A drop-in bridge still requires concrete abutments and walls and creek remediations and the access to the creek. So the drop-in, drop-in bridge does not solve all these problems that Frank is saying they've solved. And the riprap repair was a temporary one, and the next flood event will most likely damage that and take it out again. So that was just done, and it's an emergency. And as like most emergency repairs are not permanent. And an EIR would cost a lot of money and would have significant scheduled delays due to it. It's not something that just is done over a couple-month period. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay. I do not see any more comments. And the website latency has more than caught up to us, so I think that's it for the comments.
Okay.
No, I see one more. I'm sorry. A hand just. Sorry. Mark Bell.
Hello?
Hello?
We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, fine. You know, I understand the residents being frustrated, but also, you know, monies through that bridge are coming out of everyone who pays property taxes in Fairfax, so we do have a say in it. If they were privately financing it, it would be a different story. However, I do understand their concerns. But how about concerns of other people in Fairfax? For example, in the 19, I think it was 1929, the Culver was built where Town Hall is to stop the flooding in downtown. And it turned out, you know, of course, there were experts at the time, the Culver was too small. That's why it floods. So when you start looking at technologies, you know, I think you have to look at other technologies and other solutions than what is being presented to us as the only way. Furthermore, you have subterranean flow of water. Just because you don't see water on the surface all the, all year long doesn't mean that it's not flowing underneath. And once you start disrupting those channels, you're causing more problems, and I don't see the solutions. Everything that they're talking about is, oh, well, this problem can be mitigated so that it's not a problem. Well, really? That's, that's great news. I guess like you could just say, oh, that's really, nothing's a problem because it can all be mitigated. Basically, it just sounds like a bunch of mumbo jumbo. And if it's true, what Kirsten said about these people building the bridge on Bon Air, or that was Jen, I mean, that thing's been going on forever. The French built a suspension bridge longer than the Golden Gate in like half the time that they're doing that little bridge over there. And the other thing that I have to say is, I'd like to know who the frog expert is, because I know frog experts, and I'd like to know who your frog expert is, who says that the yellow frogs, there have been enough studies so that they're not going to be endangered. Because I'd like to get them vetted by my frog expert. That's all I have to add. Because I'd like to get them vetted by my frog expert. That's all I have to add at the present time. I'll be here in June.
Okay.
Okay, Michelle, how are we doing now?
Uh now we have more people.
Okay.
I'm going to go to uh call in user. Oops. Can you talk? Hello? I think you're on.
Is that the same call-in user two that was Frank earlier, but maybe they uh used the same number again on Zoom? I don't know.
My, I'm not sure how it works. Okay, we'll. Now and um go to Alexander Binick.
Alexander.
I pushed on.
Uh can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great. Uh one second, I was trying to get through. So I'm Alexander Binick, Seven Meadowway, speaking rapidly for five minutes on behalf of Detoxics Institute. Nearly every Meadowway resident supports adoption of the ISNMD for the proposed bridge project. Why is that? We live in a cul-de-sac and the bridge provides the only access to and from our homes. Our present sixty-five-plus-year-old wooden bridge was once charming, but is now decrepit and unsafe. Its support beams and decking are rotting. The decking continuously needs expensive repairs. Their cost, fifty to one hundred thousand in the last five years alone, was borne entirely by Fairfax from its very limited reserves. There's now continuous off-gassing of toxic chemicals and heavy metals from the bridge support beams and the pressure-treated deck repairs. Unsafe for our kids and for any fish in the creek. At some point, the bridge will be totally unsafe for vehicle or traffic, and we will be trapped. Even before then, Ross Valley Fire Department is unwilling to have a full-sized engine cross it even in the event of a firestorm. The bridge replacement process has already been going on since twenty thirteen, when the first workshops were held to explore designs. I believed that the major issues had been settled long ago. Through hard-fought collective action by the Meadowway residents, we prevailed about the new bridge, remaining one lane, not requiring two separate bridges during construction, et cetera. The required width of the new bridge was determined by Caltrans minimum requirements. And that would be true for any alternative bridge that received federal funding to make it affordable. We're still waiting, so many years later, for construction to begin, and our safety is effectively being held hostage to any further delays. Producing a full and unnecessary EIR would add at least one more year to our weight. And Fairfax alone would be totally responsible for bearing its exorbitant cost, perhaps a million dollars. In fact, our town likely couldn't afford it at all. So effectively requiring an EIR would mean that no replacement bills could ever, bridge could ever be built, and our street would become a sacrifice area. If that were the case, the town should expect a lawsuit from its Meadowway residents. Even if an EIR could somehow be financed through major indebtedness by Fairfax, the town and residents would thereafter still be faced with the same set of looming decisions. This replacement project with its mitigation measures will ensure that threatened species are not at risk. In fact, habitat for steelhead will actually be improved by the careful placement of woody debris and shading to provide a spawning site and by reduced stormwater velocity. As for northern spotted owls, the proposed mitigation is sufficient to protect them during the construction period. Sadly, myself living right next to the bridge, for many years earlier, I would hear frogs singing every night during late spring. But they have been absent now for a number of recent years. Removing a couple specific trees will actually be protective, reducing the risks of blocked fish passage, of flooding, and of infection of adjacent trees with sudden oak disease. Hydrology studies indicate that currently, because of the way the creek very sharply bends by the bridge. Velocity of water flow there during big storms tends to scour the banks, increasing erosion. Rather than channelization along the banks, natural features such as fast-growing willows, riprap, and one section of retaining wall. Will be used to protect the new bridge itself and the homes on both sides from scouring. Most of us Meadowway neighbors voted to have our replacement bridge be aesthetically designed and primarily constructed of concrete. Which could possibly have ground-up automotive tires added to reduce the amount of new concrete and thus the project's carbon footprint. The existing proposed construction plan for our new bridge will use as much precasting and separate transportation of sections as possible to save time and money. It's even possible that the project can be completed in only one construction season involving long workdays, Mondays through Saturdays. Finally, the Meadowway neighbors collectively are primary stakeholders in the decisions reached about this project. We are the people who will be most affected, and I hope the town gives particular weight to the wishes of the majority of our group. Please immediately, as soon as possible, adopt the CECL final initial study and mitigate the negative declaration and approve the proposed Meadowway Bridge Replacement Project. Thank you.
Thank you, Alexander. So, Michelle.
Sorry, I muted myself. We have one more speaker, that is Ling Chen Bell.
Hello.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to um say that I agreed with both Frank Egger and the other person who were saying that. If there is another, the possibility of a metal bridge, that would be a lot quicker, and why not? I don't understand why we wouldn't wanna do that, something that's gonna be quicker and cheaper, why not do that? Why not make, why make this this huge um commitment of of, you know, such a long time to make this this bridge that's kind of an overkill for for this area? Then why not go by it with a simpler thing? It seems also that it's been presented as the only solution, but it's not the only solution. So then I think we should, we need to look at the possibility of the metal bridge that would be simpler and faster and cheaper. Okay, that's that's it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And we have another speaker. Um. You see? Karen Arnold.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you very much. Um I wanted to thank the town for their extensive work on this bridge project. Um as my husband Peter mentioned, it's been going on for a really long time. And we've studied it and we looked at many designs. The meetings were open to the public for review. The folks that are claiming they have a solution that will be quicker and faster and easier really haven't read all the reports. And don't understand the geology of our creek here and the S-turn and then the challenge we have with building in this location. I also want to applaud the environmental firm that studied it. I read the entire report. And I think they did a really good job. They came out to the creek side and they observed all the native plants and the vegetation. And they did a very good job with the animals and what uses a creek. And I think we do not need an environmental impact report. We're working in one small section of the creek, and they've identified any possible problems and how to mitigate those problems. And they're enhancing the environment. That creek bed is so torn up, it's really in disrepair, it's eroding, it's gonna fall down. And we really need, this project will improve the environment that that small section of the creek bed. But that's only one section of San Sommo Creek, it goes way up the canyon and it goes way down. And comparing what we do in this one little section to something in Bonner or something in the Fairfax Tunnel is not the same. This is a separate, unique location. And I know the town's worked really hard, our neighbors have worked really hard, we've been part of the process. I know other people in Fairfax attended the meetings as well and provided input. It's it's a little late, and it seems very disingenuous to bring this all up at this moment. When we've already done all the required reviews and we've determined all the mitigation strategies. So I would really encourage the town to approve this proposal. A lot of people have talked about costs. My understanding is the state is gonna pay eighty-eight percent of the cost of construction. Every delay makes the construction costs go higher, and that will make our percentage, the town of Fairfax, to go higher. Along with the repair costs, as Alex mentioned, that they have to do every year. The repairs on this bridge are constant. So I really would encourage you to look, do your due diligence and read the reports. They've done extensive studies and they've reviewed it, and we have a really good design at this moment. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen. And I uh I assume that last part is directed to the public because I think speaking for us on the council, we have certainly read the reports, and they're quite lengthy. But uh as you say, pretty thoroughly done. Michelle, is there any?
I I do not see any more public comment. So if you wanna close the public hearing.
Okay. Well, with that, we will in fact close the public hearing, and um I think we have had some questions in there, which. Um possibly staff or the consultants would want to reply to. And then we might have some comments by council members, so we can take a round at that. And then we can consider what will be our next step, whether to continue this or what. Um so Garrett and. You you folks um.
Okay, so if I may, if I smear, so before I forget, one is uh it's after eleven o'clock, so you'll need to do some action related to. Items you're gonna talk about, but what we had recommended for this item is that. You hear your, here, receive all the public comments unless you have other questions. What we're recommending is because we had received those letters so late in the day. I think Mr. Egger referred to a letter he sent from his attorney or his attorney sent us, and so. We need some time to prepare the responses, and I know the people that spoke were concerned about that. But we need some time to prepare responses so that you could have that at the next meeting. So I I don't know if we need to say anything. I know for myself, there are some things that people said that I probably should correct. But at this point, I think it'd be better, we can clarify all this again. We'll have another meeting in June, unfortunately. Um you know, that's our recommendation, because I think it's fair that you should see our review and response to the letters that you received. So that's our recommendation at at this point.
Okay, so um let's go around and see if council members, and we don't have to respond, but if if people wanna say anything, I think I might have a few things to say. John, you had your hand up.
Yeah, um I guess this is more of a a general question, but I think it would be important to have the answer in front of us. Is that about how long and how much money does an environmental impact report take?
Garrett or?
About how?
I'm sorry, you want an answer now? Oh, I thought, I thought you were referring to the next meeting, you wanted us to have that information.
No, in terms of.
Well, just to have a general idea for the public, I mean, I I've I've heard various things um. But.
So our our staff report previously had said that's eight to twelve months and maybe upwards of two hundred thousand, but who knows? We could come back and make sure we refine that better and get back, bring that back to you in June as information.
Okay.
And that would all be funded by us, that's not covered by the grant. And just to clarify, since we're talking about the grant, the grant does cover a hundred percent of construction costs and right-of-way costs. It only cover, it covers eighty-nine point five percent of the design costs, environmental costs, not including CECL. So again, just clarifying that.
So can we just, can we just stay on this topic really quick? On the EIR, I understood that there were so many. Deliverables of the EIR that have already been delivered. That in fact, the EIR would not take that long, and the scope of it would be reduced and thus would not be as costly. That was my understanding.
Well, we will report back to you in June because we'll take a little more time to figure that out, because that's what you want us to do, so we'll come back with that information.
Okay.
But I think that the uh one of the issues that Garrett would be looking into would be that the EIR process would require. Comment periods, and that that will, no matter how quickly it could be written, there's gonna be a delay in there. And given that, um given the construction seasons, we'd have to see how that all fit in. Um John, did you have more?
I'm good. I made some earlier comments, and I think I'm.
Uh huh, yeah. Um Barbara? Or Stephanie?
Well, I guess I'm just a little confused by one of the comments that was shared. So Garrett, could you, I know you talked about the drop-in earlier, but could you comment on what Mr. Egger shared earlier about Nadir actually. Recommending that as a solution? So what is the disconnect there?
Uh there is no disconnect. What we said, all we said from the beginning, steel bridge is an option, wood, concrete. All bridges need abutments, it needs a foundation to sit on. So whether it's metal and you bring the prefab bridge and you put it on top, it's got, it has to sit on something. So we've always made that clear. A bridge always needs to sit in something, and regardless of the type, you're in the creek because you have to build the abutments. The wing walls to prevent the scouring erosion of your abutments and the creek banks. And so we've always made that clear. That's what has to happen. You just cannot drop a bridge, any bridge, on top of this wooden bridge that has sits on piers in the creek. Because what happens is if this, that bridge fails, which we're trying to replace, so it wouldn't fail, but if it fails, whatever sits on it's going to fail. So you need to build these things, and the reason, and when you build it, you have to be in the creek. Nodder had pointed out that the access road was one possibility that someone could do because of the level of work. Now, we're leaving it up ultimately to a contractor to decide what's the best way to perform the work. Because then, you know, maybe they have capacity where they could just crane everything in, who who knows? But the key point we're always trying to make, when everyone's saying there's these options, is. There is no option that we're aware of, that you could build a new bridge and not have it sit on abutments. That's the key point. You need a foundation for it. Otherwise, you put on existing bridge, it fails, everything on top is gonna go with the tube. That's the key point that we've always made from day one, and that's the key point. When we talk about a drop-in steel bridge, it's, yeah, that was one of the options, neighborhood chose concrete. Again, it's gotta sit on something, and that's the point we're trying to make. So Mr. Egger says, well, somewhere they did, who knows what the facts are? But the key is, has to have a button. If the buttsman's already existed and we're in a good shape, and you had a wing walls and you had all that, then sure, maybe you could do something like that. But that's not a possibility here because you don't have the existing abutments. So hopefully that answers that question.
I just wanna mention that in the chronology that was provided in, I believe it was the supplement. There was a a longer explanation of why the steel drop-in bridge is not workable for this site. And also that uh the town with uh Nodder's group actually went to. The company that Mr. Egger had suggested. And we've looked at this, we've talked about it. It's it's simply not an option. And I wanna point out that the chronology that was as part of, I believe, the supplement. Goes into even a longer explanation, and it also talks about needing much more access in the area as well. So there was quite a lot to that, and I know there's a lot of materials to read and digest.
Councilmember Hellman, did you have any further? This month, okay. Barbara, were you raising your hand?
Yeah, so I have something, you know, I've been spending a lot of time on this, as I'm sure we all have. And I may repeat some of this in June, but I wanna kind of provide some of my thoughts right now. First of all, I wanna thank everyone for attending tonight or providing comments. Um you know, we have probably the most engaged community in all of Marin. I think that is for sure. And I have read the entire four hundred or so pages of that document, and some of it I read twice because I was preparing for the March fourth meeting.
And some of it I read twice because I was preparing for the March 4th meeting, even though I wasn't going to be there. I also read all the materials that we were sent and all the emails. And I want to talk a little bit about my background because I'm a scientist and I spent many decades doing environmental work. Cleanup of hazardous waste sites statewide, creation of new environmental programs for Cali PA and nationally. Pursuing hazardous waste enforcement against large corporations. And one of those was I was the negotiator for the state against the DDT dischargers down at the Continental Shelf where we achieved an $83 million natural resources damages settlement for the DDT dischargers, which brought back endangered gray foxes on the Channel Islands as well as repatriated bald eagles. So I've got some environmental cred here. And I just want to say that in reading these documents, I have maybe a broader knowledge of some of the science involved. But I've also done air quality, climate change work and a lot more. And in my early years, I was actually an aquatic ecologist. My thesis, my other graduate work and my years of work experience in the early years was spent evaluating water qualities in streams, creeks, rivers, lakes and swamps. And so I've done a lot and I've also worked a lot on California Environmental Quality Act documents, preparing some as well as reviewing a number of four large projects. So I feel kind of well poised to make a decision to move forward or not based on my background. I counted and read all the emails and letters, although I kind of stopped at about six o'clock tonight because, so I'm not sure if I missed a few. But it's not a popularity contest, but in looking at those, there were 30 comments that I saw, including the March 4th comments that were given in testimony that dealt with residents of Meadowway. And of those, 29 were people in favor of moving forward. There were other emails that were submitted. As we know, there was about 36 that were in favor of approval, 22 against. Some of these people were outside Fairfax. But I think many of the Meadowway residents emails provided very thoughtful reflections on the bridge. And Larry Davidson, who didn't speak tonight, kind of started this, sending emails that I saw. He's been a resident for 58 years of Meadowway and he urged us to move forward with the documents. A lot continued to come in and Alexander Binnick, who I'm glad was able to speak tonight, sent in a lengthy email, some of which I think he read tonight and talked about the environmental issues as well as not really looking forward to construction, but it's time to move forward. And he ended by saying, and he said tonight, that Meadowway residents are the primary stakeholders. And the council should lend particular weight to their comments. And I consider Alexander, who I've known over the years through council work, to be both thoughtful, but also a pretty hardcore environmentalist. And I've read all carefully and considered all. I've seen the responses to comments by Mr. Edgar, Mr. Bragman and the Sierra Club. All those comments were very helpful and I raised some of those issues before the meeting to our town manager who forwarded those to the appropriate folks on the consultants. I'm concerned that there continues to be misinformation that even got repeated tonight on this project. The town worked with the residents of Meadowway and about two thirds chose a concrete bridge with changes for the retaining walls. It would be less intrusive. As I said, the steel drop in bridge will simply not work. And it was discussed in the chronology in more detail and discussed tonight. I've heard some say that the bridge is going to cost the town $4.7 million. That's completely untrue. And Garrett talked about the estimates of our costs, about $200,000 plus I'm sure we will be spending more money on responses to comments tonight, which were well worth it and the environmental repairs of the bridge, which we will continue to have to do more this year. So it's, but it's not going to be 4.7 million. That will be borne by the grant. So this is not the taxpayers of, of Fairfax through our parcel taxes and whatever. But bridges are expensive. And thankfully, we're very lucky that our town manager worked with CIC to make sure that we could get as much money as possible out of this grant. And it's also interesting that the feds can conducted a national environmental policy act evaluation, which resulted in a categorical exemption. And so based on my experience with CEQA and the environmental projects for decades, I, after reading the, the initial study mitigating neck deck and the mitigation monitoring plan, I thought it was a really good document and I think it really answered a lot of the questions I had, but the further ones I had were further answered. And I've also considered the potential risk to residents on Meadowways. Should there be an earthquake, wildfire or other disaster which takes down the bridge or renders it unusable? I think that what I've seen so far, and I'm waiting to hear more in June, is I think not only is the plan to protect the environment, but improve the environment for wildlife, the riparian habitat, and the community of Meadowway and the larger community of Fairfax. So those are my thoughts after spending quite a bit of time thinking through this and reading everyone's emails. And I'm sorry it's so long, but I thought it was important to kind of get out my thoughts so far. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. So if, if I may, I will put some thoughts out of my own and then we can talk about what we're going to do going forward. I echo and support what Barbara said and appreciate Barbara's, of all of us on the council, most extensive experience with reviewing these types of documents and with this type of biology. I will point out that what we're talking about here is there's no, nothing we're talking about as far as long-term effects of the bridge. In fact, the long-term effects of the bridge are positive on the biology. Because as we've seen, it, it will improve and has been referred to it. It's kind of a mess down there right now. We've got undercutting, we've got toxic wood that's, that's leaching out into the stream. We're going to get rid of all that and we're going to end up with a pretty innovative design that will, that will actually increase habitat for steelhead. And I think that's, that's pretty clear. All we're really talking about here as far as the effects on the environment is during the construction. And the construction is limited to a season in which the creek is dry. And so I think we, we need to sort of remember that. And remember also, one, one commenter actually said that she was shocked as to why there was so much concern about moving this project forward, which there definitely is. As, as Barbara referred to on the emails, it was absolutely abundantly clear that without exception other than Mr. Edgar, so one exception on the, in the entire Meadowway neighborhood. Everybody who has written to us has written very thoughtful and impassioned comments saying that they really want this to move forward. And the reason they do is because they are under extreme fire danger up there. So everybody in Fairfax is suffering right now with COVID. But people who live up the Cascade Canyon have an additional burden to bear because Cascade Canyon is a high fire zone with limited evacuation potential. And then people who live up Meadowway have yet another layer of concern because they not only are living up Cascade Canyon, but they're living on a side canyon of Cascade Canyon. That's, that the only way out is a bridge that could go down or could burn in a fire. It's not a good situation and we are now looking at, at a fire. Given the winter that we've had, we're looking at a fire season, as was mentioned by Walt, actually, in an earlier comment. At a fire season this year that, that could be the hottest summer that we've had in recorded history. And fired, this, this could be a pretty scary fire season. This is not a good time to be consigning that entire neighborhood to another year of hoping that things don't go badly for them. So that's why there's a concern about moving it forward. So just to keep that in perspective. I wanted to say that it's the, one of the things that does speak to me is the concern that Larry Bragman brought up about the concrete. It is indeed the case that concrete is a very large contributor to greenhouse gas emissions and that is an issue. But unfortunately, most of the concrete, and I'm not sure the exact amount of it, but most of the concrete I bet for that bridge is actually in the abutments and the wing walls, which as we've heard, and I definitely believe this, are needed anyway. They would be needed for any kind of bridge that were to go in there. So we, we're just left with that because there's a neighborhood there. They need a bridge in that location. We need a bridge that will last. We need a bridge that will be safe. There's a really nasty S curve right there in the, in the creek bed. So that when we have a really severe rainy season, or probably almost any year in the rainy season, the water comes crashing down there and hits one wall, ricochets over and hits the other wall. And it's undercutting very badly in there. And it's going to require something to, to fix that. And we've, we've talked about that. We've even talked about it on council and gone over what I think is a pretty innovative design, the half retaining wall, half wall, half riprap approach. These are not channelization. This is nothing like, some mention was made of Corta Madera Creek, which has a long stretch that's channelized, channelized meaning right, you can just look right down and it looks like a, looks like just a cement tunnel. And so the water comes rushing down there and that indeed is not something that anybody would do at this point. That was a sort of 50s Corps of Engineers kind of approach to just, let's just get rid of the whole creek and just turn it into cement. That is not what's being contemplated here whatsoever. What's being contemplated here is something that would actually keep the creek protected from, from tearing, tearing those, those, those areas apart where it hits the, hits that S curve. But it doesn't do anything more to, in fact, leaves the, most of the creek bed in a natural state, other than what's absolutely required to stop that erosion from happening. I think it's a good design and that unfortunately is where a lot of the concrete goes. But I think we have to do it because we have a neighborhood there. And as far as the aesthetics, whatever we think about the aesthetics, that really is an issue that was decided by the neighborhood. And the town went to great lengths to ask the neighborhood what they wanted in terms of the aesthetics. And the neighborhood picked a, a design. And I don't think it's up to any of the rest of us who don't live in that neighborhood to tell them that they can't have the design that they want when there's no particular advantage to it. We've talked about that there's not a big advantage to a steel bridge in that you still need the, the abutments. You need the, the foundation for it to be on. So I will leave it at that for now, except to say that I'm really sorry to have to even consider putting this off for the reasons I just said. I really sympathize with the neighbors and they are passionate about this. They want to see this done. And they're pretty frustrated at our town for not being able to get it done. Although I think every one of them understands that it's not that council or staff is not paying attention to it. It's that we're being sort of stopped at every stage. I'm not at all, well, I don't know exactly what adjective to use, but I'm pretty upset that we got two very large emails from lawyers dropped on us literally at five o'clock this evening. So that's more than just a pain in the neck when we're preparing for the council meeting. It's much more severe than that. And I imagine it was intentional to create just the situation where we might feel that we have to put this off for yet another month because legally we should have a very clear response to every one of the things that's raised, even though they may be similar things to what's been raised in the past, but that causes the thing to be put off. And I just think that's not, not what I would call a respectful tactic to the people on Meadowway who clearly want this built. To, to use a tactic like that to just force it to be put off. However, I'm going to bring this to the council for a vote as to whether to adapt the, adopt the recommendation of staff, which is to postpone this for one more month. And let's just get a straw poll of whether we are going to postpone it for another month.
I think we should continue it for another month. I think it, it makes sense. I think we can always, there can always be people submitting things later again. And I think at some point we will have to say, you know, it's enough. But I think it makes sense and I respect staff saying with an abundance of caution, it's a good idea to go ahead.
John?
Yeah, I would, for the same reasons, I'd very reluctantly also agree. I mean, it clearly is a tactic to drop a bunch of legal letters at the last minute. It's, which I find disingenuous and it's, it's, it's basically, it costs our community a lot of money. It's good to get these things worked out ahead of time. It's kind of a last dish effort just to kind of throw a wrench in the works, it seems. Even though a lot of the subject matter has been brought up before, you know, if, you know, if we, it puts us in a a bad legal position to, to move without addressing these, then unfortunately that's what we've got to do. But I, I agree with Barbara that, you know, sooner or later, we've got to, we've got to act. And I think it's abundantly clear that this, this choice that is in front of us is the logical choice. And, you know, it's, it's very difficult to balance out. I mean, yes, in an ideal world, you would take the utmost care to do the, you know, most careful job with, with every EIR, you know, looking at, with the EIR, looking at every possible thing. Sorry, I'm a little tired right now. But I, I think that the mitigated negative declaration, everybody says neck deck. So that's, that's really what it's short for. Is it has taken in, it, it's very thorough. It documents very well where the different wildlife centers are. It, it has studied a whole lot of stuff and to that extent, it covers a lot of the same ground that the EIR also would cover. And it evaluates those. I mean, the spotted owls are upstream about a third of a mile. They, and so the mitigation for that is you don't make a lot, you don't make a lot of noise during their nesting season, which is what they are sensitive to. And so that is the mitigation. You know, the mitigation for there being potentially fish that are migrating through that section of stream is that you do it during the dry season when there is no possibility of fish passing through. And these are mitigations for these very real things that have been found. But that's why it's stretching over potentially a two-year build cycle. If a builder comes along and says, I know how to do this in one, that's great. From where I sit, it, I, I feel quite comfortable with this that's already been done, you know, that in terms of what I see on the face of it. With the environmental cautions that are necessary balanced on the other side is, is the, the problems with the people there. I see signals from Garrett there.
Maybe council, I, I know you want to make your comments, but you're going to end up making the same comments at your next meeting because we're going to have to conduct the public hearing again.
I'm hoping for next month.
Right. So we just need a motion that says that you will continue to June, what did I say? June 3rd meeting. And then after this, you need to take some action on your agenda because of the timeframes. You're past 11:30 now, so.
Well, Councilmember Hellman, did you have any objection to going to continuing it? That's the main thing I was straw pulling.
No, thank you, Brett.
All right. So if we'll have a motion to continue it?
I'll move.
Oh, second.
Okay. Councilmember Reed, second caller. All in favor?
Your roll call.
Councilmember Hellman?
Aye, here.
Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Okay.
Excuse me?
Object is continued. Michelle?
Just for clarity, were you continuing the public hearing to June 3rd?
Yeah, I believe we would.
Yes.
That's correct.
Just wanted to get it.
So yes, we're.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do need to consider the, what is it, 11:30 rule? Or maybe we already passed the 10:30 rule. We can bring Mayor Goddard back in for that.
Can we just go ahead before she gets in and make, I would like to make a motion to suspend the 11:30 rule. And I think we could probably get to the last items.
Do we have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, Councilmember Hellman. Suspend the 11:30 rule?
I'm thinking about it. What's the last item?
Well, we have, we continued an item that'll probably be pretty quick from consent about the having public meetings this month. And we have a discussion about, we have another hearing. I'm just looking for the agenda. It is
Still needs.
Things.
We still have to talk about 14 and 15.
Yeah, yeah, we have two, two items on the agenda. The Small Business Relief Program, which I think, I think we should talk about.
Absolutely.
And then there's a second reading, which should be pretty quick. So there's those two. And then the continued item, which I also think is pretty quick. Just to say my, my census, we should continue and discuss.
Okay, I'm favor aye.
Okay, Councilmember Reed?
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler?
Aye.
You made the motion. Okay, and I will vote aye. So I'd say we are, we have suspended the 11:30 rule. And Barbara, I mean, Renee? Come back in.
I, I'm here, but can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay, great. I missed you guys.
Well, we miss you too.
All right. So we have three more items. I heard that you suspended the 11:30 rule. So let's move forward. We will start with item 14, which is to approve the creation of a Fairfax Small Business Relief Program due to the economic impact of COVID-19. And I'm going to ask Garrett to go ahead with the staff report, please.
Sure. You may recall back at your April 15th meeting, you discussed an interest of developing a business relief program similar to Sammerfell's. At that time, we indicated the county in Marin would, would probably consider providing matching funds since they did so with Sammerfell. And so we checked with the county and what they indicated to us per their formula is the maximum contribution they could give to Fairfax is based on population. So that would be $7,500. And in order to get the $7,500, we would have to provide three times of the match. So in other words, if we contributed $22,500, we would get a match from the county of $7,500, meaning you have a total of $30,000 for whatever program you wanted to create. You could always put in more money, but that's the minimum amount you'd have to put in in order to get the, a total of $30,000. Now, the county did indicate the funding can be used for a business release, which is program, which is direct financial assistance to businesses. Or the town could decide to try to use that money to save fund the program that would benefit businesses, such as marketing, website updates, or something like that. We would just need to justify what those public benefits are to the county. Now, what we need some guidance on in terms of business relief program is if you decide to go that route is what is the grant amount? Like, would it be $1,000 to $2,000? I believe Corder Madera and, what's the town, Larkspur? Larkspur, Larkspur and Corder Madera, I think are doing $1,000 grants to provide to businesses. Obviously, Sammerfell in Nevada is a much higher amount to be eligible.
Tiburon and Socileto are doing $1,000.
$1,000, okay. So to be eligible, we've created some guidelines based on what Sammerfell uses. But we could also tweak those too, because I know, I do know, I'm looking quickly at Corder Maderas and Tiburon's. They have maybe some slightly different criteria. But in essence, what it would be is you'd have to have a business in town, a brick and mortar establishment, be in business for at least one year. And then we have provisions that you can't have more than a million dollars gross revenue, demonstrated loss of 40%. We set a certain number not to exceed the number of employees, in our case, 26, and we set a business license. I do know some of the other communities also have a caveat that says you also cannot have a GoFundMe or some type of other individual funding that you've already put in place. That's, that's something some of the other communities had. Now, I will say, these are just draft guidelines. What I'd like is we need to create a grant selection committee, then they can help me refine what those guidelines are. Can help me put together whatever the application would be, because Larkspur, Corder Maderas is much simplified than Sammerfell's. But more importantly for the grant selection committee is if you get more applications than you have money, then you need to decide who is going to get the grant. And that would be the role for the grant selection committee, unless you said, have a member applications you get, as long as they meet base eligibility, just split whatever's available among them. But the key of the grant selection committee is they would then make the recommendations and determine. One of the things for the grant selection committee is obviously none of the members can apply for assistance and they can't be on the board of the chambers, board of the chamber, board of directors, just to keep more of that conflict of interests away from that. So one of the other things we wanted to talk about that some communities have is you also work with what we refer to as a nonprofit fiscal sponsor. They would, not only would they issue the checks, but they're a nonprofit, a 501(c)(3). So if the community wanted to donate money to the business relief program, which you could then use to contribute to more, assist more businesses, then that could be a tax deductible donation that would work through that entity. I know Nevada uses Marin Links. I did talk to their executive director. I believe the Sammerfell Chamber actually has an educational arm that's a 501(c)(3). And they've indicated that that's something maybe we can go through or the chamber can go through. But that all needs to be established. But the key is having some type of nonprofit sponsor so you can create an entity in which people can make donations, take a deduction, and then goes into the overall business relief program. So then the last thing we have is, you know, town's approach to date has been assisting the chamber with its website updates in terms of paying for some of those upgrades. Kind of some of the key policies, you know, is, is it if we do financial assistance, is really the goal to ensure a business can try to reopen? Or is it, well, that's really not what we're trying to do. It's really if you're eligible, you should be able to receive the funding. But again, that flexibility working with the grant selection committee. So that's pretty much the staff report. And unless there's any questions, it's.
Yeah, Garrett, actually, can I, so in order to organize this, given that it's 11:45, there's a lot of pieces and there's a lot of discussion that could, that could ensue from that. So you, you want to, do you want to organize this with what it is you're hoping to get out of here? Do you want us to decide amongst us how much money we want to allocate as the town toward this? And do you want us to talk about who should be on the selection committee? I just need you to break it down a little so I can, I can run the meeting.
So the core issue, oh, sorry. So the core issue would be, obviously, do you want to fund a business relief program as in direct financial, not using it to try to fund some other activities or programs that could benefit businesses, but it's not direct assistance? So that's the first question. Then how much? Are we fine with the minimum match, $30,000? Then the next question would be, what's the grant amount? If you're, if it's $30,000, I assume you just would use 1,000, which is what Corder Madera and Larkspur works. That'd be fine. Then after that, it would be the grant selection committee, I think. It, unless you have suggestions, I think that'd be something staff would form. I mean, we would maybe get an accountant, a banker or something like that, probably ask the town treasurer to, to be on it. And then be able to then figure out what the minimum qualifications would be if you said, well, you know, make it more like Larkspur and Corder Madera, that's fine. I have their application. That's easy enough direction to do. And so we're trying to make it so that we can create this program, but just if you can give us guidance on the amount, how much? And if you're okay with what I just proposed.
All right, sounds good.
Pretty much in a nutshell.
And I know you're wondering, Stephanie, who Gail is down there?
Yeah.
On the Zoom? Yeah, this is Gail from BBK, who's here to work with us on the MTA.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Hi.
Great. Hi, you look different on Zoom.
My hair is overgrown, that's all.
All righty. So let's start with the very, the very basic question, which is do we want to establish this fund to assist our small businesses? I, everybody nod.
So so this is the part where you would ask questions and you should probably take public comment and then go into your more broad policy discussion.
Sorry. There's just multiple pieces to this very late at night. So questions? Any specific questions?
Yeah, I like the idea. I'm wondering if, let's say we had a situation which there weren't as many, there weren't enough. But let's say we had a certain number of $1,000 to give out once it was all said and done, including donations possibly to the nonprofit side of it and everything. And, and we had said that the grant amount was going to be, say, $1,000, but we had more money than we, than we, than, than we had applications. Could we have some system where we could go back around and say that the people who applied would get an extra $200 and that would finish it up? I mean, is that, maybe that sounds ridiculous. Maybe there's no way that we'll have more money than we have applications. But if we set the, the amount really conservatively so that the money would last, then maybe we might have that situation. So I'm just wondering if any town has considered that? How do you wrap this up when you come to?
You, I think you can do that. I don't know. I haven't asked if they had, typically, you think they have more applications than they have funding. But sure, we could, we could do that. You would set a deadline, people would apply. And then whatever you have, you would, you could spread it out that way if that's what the council wanted to do.
Stephanie?
Well, I think as a contributing, you know, channel into this fund will be fundraising. So that, that's, that very well could be, right? And so I, I would be in favor of the subsequent distribution, like you're describing, Bruce, as something we potentially, you know, support at a point in time, like three months after the fact. And I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's really going to be a significant amount, if it exists at all, but yeah, absolutely.
At least have a plan for it, yeah.
Any other questions? Barbara?
Just on, on that question, I'm not sure that we would get a whole lot of donations. We don't have a lot of big businesses in town. And it looks like the chamber does not have the financial wherewithal to contribute. Whereas in all the other towns I follow, the chamber has. So my suggestion would be on that area is, I don't think we're going to run into problems with having too much money. I think we're going to run into more of the situation where we don't have enough to go around. But in the event that we had enough extra money left over, I would do one thing like we do in CDVG, which is where there is more, if we have a due date of X and we only have 25 and there's $30,000 or something, that we give the flexibility to staff to allocate more money. Because I'm sure $1,000 is not going to keep somebody alive. It's going to help them get a little bit further. So just a thought that I don't think too much money is going to be a problem.
May I just say that, like Stephanie was starting to say, that, that this fund, I'm hoping, might be a fund that will continue to grow as we get either private donors or there's more fundraisers in the community, like an online auction, or a lot of the ideas that are being generated in the community right now. So if we could decide on this initial setup this fund through this nonprofit in order to have a fiscal sponsor, so that we could start putting money there now, we could create this structure, get these mini grants out to these applicants, and then continue to grow the fund, in which case there'll be a subsequent allocation, depending on how much we come up with. That's sort of the structure I was thinking about with this fund. So
Fine.
Okay, so I'm wondering if we want to tackle, because I think it's really important to talk about the grant amount, and not the grand amount, but the amount of money that the town wants to invest in this. And I, because I want to have public comment come into this before we get too deep in the weeds, why don't, why don't you ask any other questions about anything that has to do with the fiscal sponsor or even the selection committee? And then we'll go to the public in case there's public comment to weigh into the discussion. Stephanie?
So Garrett, do you have a point of view on the 501(c)(3)? Because I know the chamber is a 501(c)(3)6, which we don't want to go, because they, that, you can't write that off, right? You can't write off those donations.
Right, that's, that's correct. You need to be a 501(c)(3) and the, the chamber isn't because they have the ability to advocate politically.
And that the 501(c)(3), I know that's not too difficult to do. Like, what, what's the recommendation there?
Uh, you mean, well, I wouldn't create one. I would just, if you go through one of the nonprofit fiscal sponsors, then you automatically get that status for the donations.
From the county?
No, no, the 501(c)(3) would be a nonprofit. In this case, there's one in Nevada that's called Marin Link. The other option is I believe the Sammerfell Chamber has an educational arm that's a 501(c)(3). I, I have an approach to them about how that would work using that status. That is actually something the chamber, our chamber should be talking to them about, about trying to create. But I haven't gone that far yet. I've just talked to Nevada.
So the volunteers, I believe, are a 501(c)(3). And if you, I, I think you could figure out how to, who to go with. But the volunteers became a 501(c)(3) again. And you could have something where it's just dedicated for this fund. It doesn't go into the volunteer pot for overall. If that would make it easier, but otherwise I would rely on you. I, I just don't want somebody to start charging us 3% or 2% or whatever.
Right.
So if it's possible.
Eight percent, so.
But anyway, I think I would, I would defer to you guys as far as making that selection, that I would look into the volunteers as. that I would look into the volunteers as just a dedicated pot, just for this purpose, not for their general overall.
Yeah, John, do you know if they've maintained that they're 501(c)(3)?
They regot it, they got it again. Marcia, I think worked on it.
Yeah, it's, it's been a lot of work getting there and.
Okay, good.
Yeah, it's, it's not so easy anymore as it used to be.
Right. And neither is Marin Link. So were there, were there any other questions? Or do we want to clarify anything around the selection committee? Or can we go out to the public to just weigh in generally to this? So we'll go to the public.
I'm ready to hear this from the public.
Okay. Great, so Michelle, where are you?
Right here.
Oh, hi. Has anyone raised their hand or is there any?
I see that we have five people left.
Five people that are watching?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm seeing, yeah, 14, but.
So, so what does that mean? No comment, right?
Um, there are no comments at this moment. If you want to wait, sometimes there's a little delay, but.
Okay, well, let's just wait a few seconds and then we'll continue. Because there's multiple pieces of this and we do want to, we want to get moving on this as quickly as possible.
If, if someone does raise their hand, then I would interrupt you. Is that okay if you want to continue?
Yes. Let's, let, let's go like that, yeah. Because people, as we talk, people may decide to join. So let's talk about how much. Because we had a broad range of ideas from the last meeting and Garrett's made a recommendation, but I'd love to hear from everybody what, uh, what, what you're, what you're thinking, what you think is a reasonable and generous way to support our businesses. Who wants to talk? Barbara?
All right, I think I'm a bit of a big mouth, but I originally last month talked about 50,000 total. And I would suggest to us, since we're getting 7,500 from the county, that we consider putting in 42,500 to make it 50,000. And that way, we obviously have more than 50 businesses in town with storefronts. And I would suggest that we would have the ability to do 50 mini grants and maybe like you and Stephanie were talking about, um, the fund could grow. But to me, I know it's a really hard time for us, but the difference between 22,500 and whatever I suggested, 42,500 is just $20,000. And I think it may be able to help people, you know, have a little bit of a lifeline. It's not going to bring them back if they were already going under. But it'll give them enough of a lifeline. And if we can spread it around to 50 businesses, that would be great. So that's my two cents.
Great, John, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I mean, I was going to, let's go at the 30 level and see how it goes. We can always add more money later. I mean, but basically that gets us the maximum money that the county's going to put in. And, um, go from there. You know, I, I, you know, it, I, I feel that, I mean, looking at a, Grilly's rent was $5,000 a month, just to give you an idea of the scale of this. I mean, I, I think it, it's a, it's, we're not going to make or break any business out there. I mean, we're going to say, yes, we're trying to help you. I think some of the things that we can look to do to support our businesses are, not just writing a check. I think we can do a lot of things to help our businesses and, you know, facilitate people, you know, getting them back on their feet as fast as we can. But I, I think it's going to take a whole lot more money than any of us are contemplating right now. To really, I mean, I think our businesses are really hurting right now and it's a lot more than 1,000 or even 5,000.
Well, we're, we're going.
I mean, I, call me a pessimist, but you know, um, I, I think it'd be wonderful if our, you know, local town government could come in and save everybody. But frankly, I think the task is huge and we should start somewhere that's affordable for us and then ratchet it up from there. We, we have to see what the response is. We, have we been talking with businesses to see what their needs are?
Yes, we have. And I'm curious as to whether you're saying 22.5 from the town to be matched by the 75. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, who, who else would like to weigh in on this? Stephanie?
So I like Barbara's approach, or I would be comfortable with an approach where we say X amount, as long as we're amenable to coming back to fund. What I don't want to do is turn anyone away that's eligible. So if you, if we agree on what the criteria is and you applied in time, I don't want to turn anyone away. So if we run out of funds, we need to go back to the well. So whatever everyone's comfortable with, is it, you know, getting, saying what that dollar amount is now? Or starting with the lower amount and coming up with an increase later? I, I would be comfortable with either approach, as long as we're not turning any eligible business away.
And I would concur with that, 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 that spirit is entirely correct.
Okay, I mean, the issue is, we would need to have a time where we actually distribute these funds based on what we've decided we're going to distribute to all eligible applicants.
Right, and if we get 60 businesses applying, then we should up the ante.
But, but I'm just, you mean, we'll, we'll know once the application.
Yeah, we'll know once we get into this, yeah.
I, I see. Bruce, did you have something? You're muted.
Sorry, I, I guess I'm just, I understood what Barbara was saying, but the, uh, the, the idea of, so we would, the proposal that Stephanie and, and John were talking about was that we would put a certain amount in and then we would get, see how many applications we got and then we would possibly put more in. We would set, set an amount that each applicant would get. And like, let's say it was 1,000 for each applicant and we had a total of 30,000 in the pot. The town put in 22.5. But then if we got 35 applications or, or 40 applications, then that means we would go back and put 5,000 or 10,000 more into the pot. Is that, is that what you both were saying, just to clarify?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Like, uh, that sounds like a reasonable approach, yeah. Uh, we guess that we, that probably is what would happen if we go well with those numbers, is we probably would put more into the pot, but it gives us a chance to get, get started. But I'm, I'm also okay with what Barbara said, just that amount is just.
I think one thing we have to be cognizant of is what if we got 100 applications or 150? I don't know how many businesses there are in town with.
We don't have that many brick and mortar.
Okay, well, just, I, we have to be cognizant of, we're not in the, you know, we're in a little bit of hard times. So I'm in agreement with the concept, but I'm just concerned that we would get so many and then we'd be committing to being able to fund it.
Okay, um, so I'm wondering, Michelle, if anyone is waiting in the waiting room?
And I am, uh, yes, we have one person.
Okay, great, would you please admit them?
That is a caller.
Hi, it's Mallory.
Hi, Mallory.
Hey, guys, um, it's good to be a night owl. So here's the deal, we, I, I would give as mu, have you, if you guys have walked around town and you feel i- it's just so dead and it's, you know, there's no vibrancy because there are no stores, um, except for the food stores, which I'm glad they're the restaurants who are, who are doing takeout. But we manage to spend so much, I'm not going to use the bad word, money for consultants that most of the time are not necessary or highly overpriced, in my opinion, that I would like to make a, a, a deal to not do two consultants coming up for the next year and use that probably $300,000 or whatever it is that even one consultant and give it to the businesses that, that we want to keep in town, which should be all of them. And, um, I, I just think that that's a priority. It should be a priority. And we use money that I consider a lot are priorities for things that we don't need. We bring in outside people and we, and we be, build, you know, we get billed by lawyers who bring in their partner lawyers, when we don't need so much stuff. And let's just give it to our businesses, our town, our people who are here, who are serving us. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mallory, appreciate the comment. I would like to weigh in and I, I would like to join Barbara in her initial proposal. I, I can only see us coming back to, to talk about this again and again as we see that we'd be 50 to 60 applicants and we have 22.5 plus 7.5. We kind of have to keep, you know, ratcheting it up. And I'd rather start with the 42.5, it feels clean. Add that seven. And then I, I personally know, as Stephanie does, because we're working with the Chamber and, um, in the Fairfax Open for Business site and some of the ways to support the businesses, that, um, we will have some other funds coming in. We've had private donors ask, we've had, um, all of those, as I said, these creative projects that people are starting that are actual, uh, potential moneymakers. And they won't be huge, but if we could get our fund up to 60 and pretty much feel clear that we could give people 1,000, um, I'd like, I'd like to start with that and hope that it would grow at least to bring it right up over the 1,000. That would be the hope. So that's my two cents on this. So we, how do we want to do this? So we've, we need to vote on that. Since there's no public at this point, can, can we take one piece at a time and just vote?
You can, I mean, you can, but I could just write down the notes, you could take it, you know, at the end. But since, well, okay, if you do take it separate, then that's fine, we go to the next item. But I do have a couple of other things I have to discuss with the council related to this program. But we could talk about that. Have you moved to something else?
No, 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 I'm just talking about all the pieces here. Because we've got, we've got the eligibility requirements and we've got, so I'm trying to move through this efficiently, but there's multiple pieces. So let's just decide on the money. And we put it all together and.
But I, but I agree with, with Barbara's proposal and, and what you, it sounds like you're saying the same thing. Go with a total of 50 from the, the combination of the town and the match from the county. And rather than going up in stages, just go with, go to 50 right away and then try to get some more money in from, from other sources as the political one. Well, I, I think that makes sense. Let's just get on with it. So that would be my.
Okay, can we, um, let's see, how do we want to do this? Can we just?
Why don't I make a motion that we go for the town committing 42,500? And maybe you could take a vote on that, just and so we can do a piecemeal so we can get through this. Like, say, Renee.
Thank you very much.
So I would suggest, I don't want to have, it's getting too easy if you take 10 different motions and different things. However, it sounds like from your straw poll, there's at least three of you that want to do this 50. We'll keep track of that. And then at the end, you could just make a motion that covers everything and then it's much cleaner that way.
Thank you. Okay, so, uh, moving on to the next piece, which is, um, the eligibility requirements. And it's in the staff report on that first page. And I think it's really very clear. So does anyone have any, anything to add or something that you'd like to take off the eligibility requirements? I could read it for the public, Garrett?
So the one thing I didn't have on there, which I think we definitely need guidance is, we talked about, um, the business can already have an established GoFundMe or independent friend raising effort. Need to know if that's okay for a criteria. And another one that we didn't really talk about is, are we okay if a business office, like tax service, I'm just making this up, tax service, massage therapist, whatever, tattoo parlor, should they be allowed if it's considered more of a service business office? Or we focus more on food and retailers? I, I just, I noticed Larkspur has that restriction, but Cora Madera doesn't, if you want an example.
Whether, you mean they've stipulated food and retail?
Well, actually, Larkspur says, we are not accepting applications from business offices, such as real estate, financial services, tax services, law firms. But to me, those are commercial businesses that have a storefront. But is that who you're trying to help?
Merchants, about merchants. Anyway, wait, Bruce, sorry, you had your hand up.
I'm just wondering what, what folks think about restaurants, which were, I mean, food stores have been able to be open. Obviously, uh, it's a challenging time. Restaurants have, many of them have been able to do takeout, but that's obviously way less business than they got before, but there's at least something. And then there are businesses that just absolutely didn't, they've, they've been completely shut down to zero.
Right.
What do you think about that and what do other towns think about that?
Well, the, the, the Chamber group, um, has to discuss that at length. And we really came all the way around to this idea that we really can't, uh, can't determine, you know, based on whether they were considered an essential business or not, given that they're all struggling, unless we want to create a selection committee that's going to be totally subjective and have to pick. And it, it, it's not an efficient way to look at it. We have to assume they're all in need. Um, and then if they've demonstrated a loss of 40% or more of gross revenues, I think that, that, that's a rather adequate kind of, um, you know, measure.
But just so we're clear to Garrett's question, like, some of the, some of the sto, the storefronts, if you will, or businesses operating like in Fair and Selm on the second floor, for example. They're renting business properties, they're operating business, they're paying business rents, you know, high business rents, you know, in Fairfax. Are they eligible?
Well.
Well, I think some of those businesses are, for example, one of them is a, um, I know the guy who owns us, he's on our volunteers, he runs a, some sort of martial arts thing. And then there's actually a woman who does an unusual kind of acupuncture. But I don't think we should necessarily worry about that. But I think there were a couple of those businesses that Garrett mentioned. Taxes, financial services were all considered essential services. So they are, were able to keep their business open. But I think Renee's point is very well taken. If somebody can document a loss of 40% or more, even if they were considered an essential business, then why not make them eligible and not try to split hairs on this?
There you go.
You know, let's not, let's not try to thread the needle too much and just kind of go with, it's good enough.
So, so if we talk about store, if we talk about brick and mortar.
Yeah, I think it has to be that.
Based business, accounting or something like that. We're talking about brick and mortar. And they should all, if they can display that they're eligible through these criteria, should in my mind be able to, uh, apply and be considered for it.
I think that makes sense.
I, I agree.
Okay, so, um, Garrett, was there one other thing? You said there were two.
The thing on not having a GoFundMe page or some sort of crowdfunding is, I think that's a good criterion to add. Because it's not fair to other folk who, um, weren't able to do that or didn't think of it. I mean, I don't care if you guys want to allow it and just leave it simple like this, so be it.
How much are you really raising on those things? I mean, why penalize?
I don't know.
Why penal, I mean, you're going to penalize Hummingbird. I'll tell you that right now.
Okay, so then let's not, let's not include that.
Yeah, I mean, my, my suggestion, only because I. Yeah, I mean, my my suggestion, only because I know that some of those businesses are doing their own GoFundMes, but half of them are also giving to people who are in need through portions of that GoFundMe. So I think to keep it clean, we might want to just, you know, do Fairfax, Boundaries, Brick and Mortar businesses. Does that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think I think in a way that that does keep it simpler because you could even say that someone who's put together a GoFundMe thing is more desperate. And you could also say that someone who's put that together is maybe more likely to really, really try to stay open, which we would like for businesses.
Exactly.
So I, you know, it could cut either way. So to keep it simpler, maybe maybe not have that criterion added.
Okay, I think we're all we're moving forward on that. Um, the I mean, I think we're we're in good shape here. The last thing would be what would be the the optimal makeup of the selection committee?
I think before you go there, I think Garrett asked a question earlier about the application, which I think is related to the criteria kind of. And I would say this, I think we should go to the simpler application than what San Rafael did. Even though I haven't seen it, I think simpler is better. Um, so that would be my thought.
Okay, yeah, we it sounds like you're probably fine with that. We just we can have some flexibility do that. Um, I do new guidance, though, on the nonprofit fiscal sponsor. So the whole purpose of doing that is that we have a third party who could actually issue checks and hold the money and keep track of it. If we have to, I'll make this up, if we have to issue fifty checks, we've just created a huge burden on staff. And then if we have to track this money that comes in through the volunteers, we just create this other problem of tracking it and people saying, hey, that's not how much was in there, it should have been X, Y, and Z. We get a fiscal sponsor, there's a cost, but they're tracking it. It's pretty clear, they can issue the tax deduct, they can issue the letters on the tax deduction, they could issue the checks. Uh, it's on their website, I believe we could structure something like that. Um, it it just makes it that much cleaner. It it does cost money, but it's that much cleaner for tracking and audit purposes.
One that has, I don't know what Marin Links costs, but keep it to try to keep it to three percent rather than five or eight percent.
Yeah, Marin was eight last time I used. I think she was willing to, I think for Nevada, she's charging five. So I could talk to her, maybe we get it down to she's waiving the application fees, there's some savings there. But, you know, it might be upwards of five, but there's a great value to not having the town have to do all this.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty high from from my experience, but then I've been, you know, my experience is probably unusual. But we've paid four for a fiscal sponsor, but that did not include any bookkeeping. My experience hasn't included a fiscal sponsor doing bookkeeping or writing checks. They just did the pass through of the money, just very, very simple. They just did the legal requirement of being a five oh one C three and allowing people to do a tax deductible donation. But then when we needed the money for the other organization, they just handed it back to us, so.
Right, we need that we need the full service, right? Garrett, who have you checked with who Corder Madera is using or Larkspur?
No, I haven't. I haven't checked with them. I I only my first thing was I knew Nevada Marin Links, so I talked to them. And then I just know the Sam F M Chamber mentioned something about their educational fund. So I think whoever I check with, that's fine, I could get different things. But I just want the flexibility to be able to use a nonprofit, third-party fiscal sponsor. And if the goal is to try to keep it at five percent or less, that's perfect guidance.
Okay, as is that are we in agreement with that? Does that sound right? We'll put this into our motion in the end. Um. So I I have we covered it, Garrett? For what you need to move forward and and any idea of how long this might take to get set up? Because I mean, I I could see there would be someone wanting to write a check right now.
So it sounds like if you were to make a motion, your motion would be let's let's put in forty two five. We'll go to the county, get seventy five hundred to start with a fifty thousand dollar pot. It looks like you're fine keeping it simple, any business, okay, they have some fundraising, keep a simpler application. Keep what we have on here for just the basic guidelines. And you're fine with us using some type of nonprofit fiscal sponsor to administer the program. And with all that, I do not know how long it will take. The goal is obviously they can put simple, people need to apply probably online, that would be our goal. And then we set a deadline by which all the applications have to come in and then we would evaluate them. Probably the harder part is finding two, three people to sit on the grant selection committee. I'm sure I could get the town treasurer, but that's only one. I need to get a couple of more, you know, business type people or bankers or accountants or whatever.
I I have a couple of of ideas, but we could that we could talk about separately. Um, if that's okay with everyone, Stephanie.
So we want to talk about it. You and I connected a little bit on the name for this fund. Do we want to come up with an official name? If people are going to be writing checks, this is.
Right. Any thoughts, anyone?
Delegate that to you and Stephanie to make that decision rather than us.
Okay.
I just I just will say that it's and I and I think this should be delegated to um to you all who uh we just talked about Garrett and Stephanie and Renee maybe. But the uh this fiscal sponsor doing the bookkeeping is is still a little confusing to me because usually a fiscal sponsor would take five percent of the money that was passed through them, which would mean, for example, the town is going to put money in and then and then the county puts money in. That fifty thousand wouldn't go through the fiscal sponsor. They wouldn't take five percent of that under what I've the way I've worked with the fiscal sponsor in the past. And then if someone wanted to donate ten thousand to the fund, that would go through the fiscal sponsor so that donor could get a tax deduction. They would take five percent of that. So that's from what I've understood, a traditional fiscal fiscal sponsorship, but then asking them to do bookkeeping for the whole thing, I'm not sure.
So it's a little different.
Sort that out with them as to what's what's the arrangement, you know?
Sure, the the arrangement, my preference, they issue the checks, they can't, they check money, they issue the, you know, the letter on the nonprofit deduction and they're handling everything. They might have some flexibility to work with us on on the website. And so that's I just need that flexibility. I think subset of what was said for council member Hellman and Mayor Goddard would be if they could be your subcommittee, I could ask questions about as I do all this, that that would be great.
Mm hmm, yeah. And you don't think that it would be possible for Janet, for example, to do the the bookkeeping? I mean, it's a fairly straightforward bookkeeping thing. It's it's uh checks are all the same size, one bank account, money goes in, money goes out.
We have to issue the checks, we have to sign them, we have to track it. People that right now donate money to all the different groups, we have to make sure that's separated out because that goes into one account. We have to separate it, we have to track it. If there's interest, we have to allocate it. It's I I'm telling you, if you want this done really fast, don't don't put it on staff because your finance staff, who's only here each a couple of days a week, I I've just all of a sudden added this extra level of work to be done and we're still trying to do budget and everything else.
To do that, I I would volunteer to do it. I mean, it's it's really you you know it's done right in the end because it balances with a bank statement. So there's this real clear balance.
I appreciate the sorry, okay.
Yeah.
I I appreciate the volunteering, but I just think that's never a good idea to have a volunteer, especially a council member doing any type of accounting for us. With all due respect, that's just not the way to to do it.
Got it.
So everything you need, right? Do you need a motion?
I think we also just the one thing that I would want to know is um just to give us some kind of cost analysis once you get some information about how much we're talking about that five percent, what five percent of what and what that might look like.
I'm guessing it's going to be, you know, it's 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 going to run you somewhere between fifteen hundred and twenty five hundred when you're at the end of the day with all the stuff we're going to be asking them to do. That's just my guess.
Okay.
If I could rely on the subcommittee, once I get all those details, then that'd be great. If we decide to do it in-house, then we decide to do it in-house, but right now, that's not my inclination.
Okay, thank you, Garrett. Um, would somebody like to make a motion that incorporates all of those things?
I could do it.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that our pot of money is fifty thousand. It would be forty two thousand five hundred from the town plus seventy five hundred from the county. We are giving uh the town manager the authority to choose the fiscal sponsor with up to a five percent charge. Uh, keep the criteria uh simple or as in the staff report. And it would be many grants of one thousand per. And then the subcommittee that you could work with would be Stephanie Hellman and Renee Goddard. I believe that's all.
Thank you, I think that's thorough. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, terrific. So we have motion Kohler, uh second Ackerman, and I'm going to do a roll call vote. So Stephanie Hellman.
Aye.
Uh, council member Kohler.
Aye.
Uh, council member Reed.
Aye.
And vice mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And mayor Goddard, aye as well. So the ayes prevail, so um we will move on this as quickly as possible. And Stephanie and I can set up a time to meet with Garrett.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Uh, so the next item is item number fifteen, which Gail has joined us for, uh, which is to conduct a second reading, title only, and adopt an ordinance to terminate the Marin telecommunications agency by repealing chapter thirteen point one two telecommunications of the town code. It's exempt from CEQA per CEQA guidelines, section one five three seven eight B five and section one five zero one. Great. So uh, could we please have a staff report?
Sure. So as you may recall, on April fifteenth, town council, oops, it looks like, sorry, it looks on my iPad. It's going to be dead in a few minutes, so I'll make this go fast.
Uh-oh.
Sounds very funny, too.
And my AirPods are going out too, so who knew? I guess we have shorter meetings. Okay, so April fifteenth meeting, um, you adopted a resolution authorizing the Marin General Services Authority to collect franchise and pay fees for cable television providers. Uh, in essence, over time, as you know, the MTA's role really went from negotiating local cable franchises to serving as a local entity authorized to collect state mandated franchises and pay fees on behalf of the member agencies. The resolution, you also indulge, you also introduce that at your April fifteenth meeting and now to terminate the Marin telecommunications agency, MTA, by repealing the town's chapter thirteen point one two telecommunications of the town code. With this adoption, it would take effect thirty days from tonight. Now, it's important, we pointed this out at the last meeting, that the repeal of chapter thirteen point one two will not impact the town's regulatory authority over wireless telecommunications facilities, i.e. small cell facilities or five G, uh, which is provided, that's all taken care of and handled in title nineteen telecommunications. We brought Gail here because last time there's a question about a section of the code that we were taking out regarding that applicability. So we thought it'd be good to have Gail answer questions, but Gail might want to address that one issue if she can recall what it was from the last meeting. Just so that this point, I I don't have anything else for staff report, I could just turn it over to Gail if she has any comments.
Okay, Gail, did you want to uh enlighten us and give us a little more information?
Uh, sure, and I'm going to put on some glasses so I can actually see here what I wrote down. Uh, I think uh that I as I understand, I think the quote, I don't know what section exactly Garrett's referring to, but I think it's it's a section that that talks about the requirement. It's thirteen twelve oh three oh A that requires basically says except as otherwise provided by this chapter is otherwise expressly provided and authorized by the state of California or is otherwise expressly provided and authorized by the United States. Streets within Marin, the Marin community shall not be occupied by or used for telecommunications facilities except under a franchise issued by the agency pursuant to the provisions of this chapter. Uh, so that the chapter thirteen twelve is really a chapter that covered branch of cable and telephone franchising. Uh, it was adopted or enacted in nineteen ninety seven. That was after the telecommunications act of nineteen ninety six, uh, which was a federal statute which opened up competition significantly. So there was an anticipation that there would be a lot of new entrants into the telephone market. And I think there was, I I obviously wasn't there at the time when this was enacted, but I have seen it in some other cities as well, similar sort of franchising language that really has sat dormant on their books for many years with respect to telephone franchising. And I think the reason why it may have been adopted at the time was because at the time there was some uncertainty as to how these new entrants, whether they would actually fall under existing uh state franchise authority. That's Public Utility Code seventy nine oh one. There were um, so this was adopted in nineteen ninety seven. There was a case in that was resolved at the Court of Appeal in two thousand and three involving uh, new entrant Williams Communications. It was a city of Riverside and Williams. And that case basically determined that uh you could have uh that all these kind of telephone companies, even ones that are building fiber systems and offering a mix of telecommunications and non-telecommunication services, they all enjoyed the state franchise under Public Utility Code seventy nine oh one. And so I think that may explain why it was originally adopted, but it really has never been uh available once the law was clarified for actually granting local telecommunications franchises. Because uh everyone who would be putting in telephone telephone companies would be public utilities putting in communications facilities pursuant to the state franchise. Uh, there was also, there may be a question about whether seventy nine, Public Utility Code seventy nine oh one also applies to wireless. And there were several court decisions related to that issue that all decided it that all came to the conclusion that it does include wireless providers and wireless facilities as well. Public Utility Code seventy nine oh one, so again, there's no uh real room for local telephone franchising. And of course, local cable franchising uh went away with the in two thousand and six with the adoption of the digital infrastructure and video competition after DIFCA.
So Gail, I'm the chair of the Marin telecommunications agency as it exists today. And even though you gave a really good explanation, I think it was very technically complicated. And I'm not sure that it really cleared up for people who have questions. The question last time was the worry that by getting rid of or repealing this ordinance, that somehow we were giving away the right to for um these public rightaways. And Janet Coulson was reading your email and explaining this was already taken away even before this was adopted. And and you're pointing out that in nineteen ninety seven, when this was adopted, you think that I'm trying to interpret it because it was a little confusing for people who don't follow all this stuff. That um and I don't mean to be negative, but it's a little late, I'm sure everybody's tired. But the point is it was already taken away and you're pointing out that there was a court case that even really took it away. And so there was any question whether or not you had that was taken away by the court case, but then. But then subsequent, in DIFCA in 2006, it further diminished any capability. So we got through the first reading last time, but this was the one question that was hanging. And so I think you've provided a lot of technical information that's boiling down to what was said last time. And I don't know that we still have that question tonight. There may be somebody on the line that's going to raise the same issue. It might have been better to wait rather than bring it up so early, because I don't think everybody remembers that. So just to help, but we're here tonight to continue the repeal of an ordinance that's been on the books for a number of years that basically talked about the formation and the agreement of Marin Telecommunications Agency. It's been out of date for a number of years. And now that we're looking at disbanding Marin Telecommunications Agency, we need this final piece to be done. And last, last time we did the first reading, as well as adopted a resolution delegating the authority to the Marin General Services Administration for collecting the franchise and PEG fees in the future, as well as some other activities that are currently done by MTA. If that's helpful at all or not.
Helpful for me. Thank you very much. And thanks, Gail, for the, that's hard to do, a brief explanation of something complex at 12:37. So is there any questions from anyone?
No.
Seeing no questions, I'm wondering if anyone from the public is waiting to comment.
The answer is no. There is no one left from the public attending. We just have CMCMTV signed in.
Okay. So unless there's any other questions for Gail, we can...
I will make a motion.
Okay.
So, and the reason is because I'm comfortable with this. I think we talked it through last time, and I don't think we're doing anything that we're not intending to do here. So I will move that. We read by title only and adopt an ordinance of the Town of Fairfax, providing for the termination of the Marin Telecommunications Agency and repealing the telecommunications ordinance codified in Chapter 13.12 of the Town Code.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second?
Second. You beat me.
Okay, so we have a motion Ackerman, and second Kohler, and I'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Hellman. Councilmember Reed.
Aye.
Councilmember Kohler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ackerman.
Aye.
And Renee Goddard. I forgot my name. Aye. So motion carries, and we are moving...
Starting up with us, Gail.
Oh, I'm happy to stay up. Nice to see you. Have a good evening.
All right, take good care.
Thanks, Gail.
Bye.
Bye. And so now we're rounding the bend to the last item, which is item number 11, which was pulled from consent. Receive a report of the cancellation of all Town Board Committee Commission meetings through the end of May, with the exception of the Town Council and Planning Commission meetings. And Garrett, would you like to give us a staff report?
So really briefly, as you just reported, we weren't planning to have any other committee meetings other than obviously Town Council meetings and Planning Commission. Now, the Climate Action Committee and the Open Space Committee have asked if they could hold regular meetings in May. Our staff, you know, staff surveyed the other towns, and no one else is actually allowing these type of committee meetings. Holding virtual meetings can be a little complicated because of the public participation, the noticing, and everything else associated with that. And so our take is, we just didn't see it being a driving need for these two committees to meet. But that being said, you know, if the council wanted to allow one or the other two, then that's what we would do. There are some issues that staff would have to make sure, ensure the public participation. It can be a little more complicated, too, if things go a little squirrely. But pretty much, in a nutshell, we're just seeking for, asking for some direction on this.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Garrett. Any questions of Garrett?
Basically, you just feel like there's risk involved in the complexity of managing the public question. I mean, there's a lot. I know Michelle deals with a lot with these. Is that basically it?
That would be it. I mean, for some of these committees or commissions, I would think staff would have to be there to do it all. Maybe for Climate Action Committee, they could do it themselves, but there is a portion there that has to be properly listed. You know, you need roll call votes, you've got to make sure the public can participate. The only issue that could occur is if some member of the public gets in there, does something inappropriate and captures that meeting, then we'd have to go to more of the council format, where you're panelists, and we limit the interactions, highly more complicated and labor intensive. Maybe it's not a big deal, because they're not televised. But that was our, yes, that's our main concern.
Barbara?
So it seems like, oh, I'm sorry, did I unmute?
Yes.
Okay, it seems like what you said is staff, town staff would need to be there to make sure it was done correctly, to make sure there's no violations of the Brown Act, which can happen inadvertently. And so to me, it would, is that correct? I mean, I'm not sure that just because you have two council members on climate action, does that mean that all the technical machinations that Michelle goes through could be gone through very easily, because we're sitting here as council members, we're not doing it. But, and it's different than doing a Zoom meeting if you're, you know, just doing it with friends or an informal, not Brown Act committee. Is that right?
Right, right. So there is things for to be posted that we'd have to get, especially if they want to meet next Tuesday. We'd have to make sure they post everything properly, we got it on the website, and that they would have all the information. Technically, it could be as simple as they do one Zoom ID, and everyone participates, as you do with your own private little Zoom meetings. And you just, whoever's there would get to comment. That could be fine. The issue becomes, set aside the posting and all that other information, is if that meeting goes sideways, then in the future, assuming they wanted another one in May, then we need, staff would probably have to be involved to make sure it's done properly. First time, maybe it's not an issue, maybe it works fine. The noticing and making sure the agenda is correct, that would be some staff work that Michelle would have to work with the CAC, because they would want to post it for Friday. Unless they do a special meeting and cancel their regular meeting on Tuesday.
Bruce?
So I, as to why I brought this off of consent, I was not aware that the Open Space Committee had the same question. But speaking for the CAC, I'll just say that we have at least three subcommittees. And we have, it's a very active committee, and we have some very active subcommittees. And at least three of the subcommittees, two of which I serve on, have been quite active. So one thing I'll say is, we do have, all of us are pretty familiar with Zoom, and we have a lot to report. So two of those subcommittees are the, that I serve on are, one of them is working on a rewrite of the Climate Action Plan, and have been meeting at least every week, sometimes more often with homework in between. So really, an intense amount of work on that. And the other one has been the Microgrid Subcommittee, which we talked, we brought a report to you folks and got a chance to talk last meeting about that. And there are some things with that that are fairly time sensitive in terms of trying to get some grant, get some funding, some, it's called S-GIP, that could reimburse us for batteries. So if we don't move along fairly quickly on that, we'll lose that, and that could pay for half of the project. So, but it's uncomfortable in these subcommittees. So the way we work the subcommittees is they are less than a quorum of the CAC, and the subcommittees are not empowered to make any actual decisions themselves. The subcommittee is advised, go back to the Climate Action Committee as a whole, and with whatever they've been working on. So it's kind of uncomfortable on the subcommittees to not be able to go back to the CAC as a whole and say, this is what we're, this is what we are, where we are so far, what do you all think about the direction we're going? So that's the main thing, is just we would like to be able to tie back with the subcommittees to the committee as a whole. And of course, we weren't able to meet last month due to the same issue, the COVID. Our regular meeting date would be May 12th, as Garrett indicated. That would mean this Friday would be the deadline to put out the agenda. But we, of course, put out the agendas in general, and I would expect that we would put a Zoom link in the agenda, as well as the process for calling in by phone. And it would have to be a Zoom link that didn't have a password on it, unless we, well, maybe it could have a password on it, as long as it's publicly available, but I don't see what that really gains you, because, but none of us have actually ever been Zoom bombed. We've had many Zoom calls, and that hasn't happened. So I'm not, you know, if that happens, then we'll deal, but it doesn't mean that it's a Brown Act violation. It just means it's an ugly situation for us. But we, my sense is that we should go ahead and try to do this. Our council meetings, by the way, are generally held pretty rigidly to two hours, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. So that would be May 12th.
I would say the CAC has made a really good, or Bruce for the CAC has made a really good case for why it's important for them to meet. Being the liaison to the Open Space Committee, and I don't know if anybody's on, that's a different kind of committee. And I don't think there's anything time critical, and they also do not, other than a couple of members, they're not that technically savvy. And so I would say that Open Space could wait, because I see their agendas every month, and there's nothing really pressing that's going on. I'm sure they just like to get together, like probably all our committees would. But it sounds like CAC has a really pressing need that's time critical. And hopefully, maybe in June, we can start doing something, which will be, allow some of our other committees to meet.
May I ask, so I'm a little confused about what CAC can do by themselves to create a Brown Act publicly accessible meeting, and how much staff would have to be involved in order to pull that off? I'm not clear on that. Garrett?
We think CAC probably has the technical ability to do this. The only issue is, Michelle will have to work with them to make sure that the agenda is posted. We would have to post it on Friday, but make sure it properly has all the information for the public meeting, and then we have to get it on the website. So that's just one extra thing that we have to do. Not the end of the world, but it's all just one more thing when you add up that really, you know, we're in the office, maybe two, three days a week, but we try to keep it so it's no more than two. And then I actually don't think Michelle's supposed to be in the office this Friday, so we need to change things around to make that work. But again, if it's just CAC, and it's this one time, we'll make it work, that's fine.
Okay, thanks.
That's our original inclination, but that's why we did the report.
I had one other question. Bruce, given that we know things are changing, I don't know, Garrett, what you think of this, but if we were to push it back, not wait until June 12th, or around June 12th, but push it toward closer to the end of May, would that maybe help? I just know the extraordinary amount of work going on right now with staff, with the budget, with the amount of hours and late nights that they're putting in, that to add something feels, I want to support the Climate Action Committee in doing this. You guys are on that, you know, you're accomplishing things, and we don't want to, you know, impede that in any way, but I'm also very, I feel very protective of staff right now.
Well, I can answer the reason why May 12th would be the best date, I think, because we, in particular with regard to the microgrid stuff, we would like to get a report to council by the 15th to at least begin to digest it that would have to do with budgeting. There's also a lot of other stuff on CAC that is going to have to do with budgeting, and I don't know how far we'll be able to get with that. But this has been, you know, the CAC has really wanted to bring some budget questions to the council, began to do that, and the whole idea was that this would all be discussed at the budget meeting. Now, the budget meeting's coming up, and CAC can't meet.
Can't meet.
So that's what makes it difficult.
That's a pretty big, that's a pretty big deal.
I thought we were really looking at a baseline budget, though, and in September or something, talking about, because we were saying we're not really sure where we're at, and that, you know, we weren't talking about bringing on new programs at this time, even though, I realize you guys have been continuing to work, but I think we talked at the last meeting about, in September, we'd know a little more, and we would revisit budget stuff at that time. So is there some way you could conceptually talk about what you'd like to see? Because I don't think we're going to be looking at new programs, frankly.
Well, I, I mean, right now probably isn't the time to talk about the CAC's budget, because it's not on our agenda, so we can't really make any decisions about it. But the, again, coming back in particular to the microgrid thing, that is something that I think we might, and I don't think last month we decided that we're going to just absolutely use the baseline budget. We decided that, yes, we like staff's idea of presenting a baseline budget so that we can use that as a starting point, but we didn't say we're not going to consent or anything else, because why would we even have a budget meeting?
Garrett, excuse me for interrupting. Garrett has his hand up.
Yeah.
Usually very useful when he puts his hand up to talk to us.
Usually important.
I think to facilitate discussion, this was a report. For this thing, given what Bruce needs, and it sounds like the council could go either way, Michelle may not be quite as happy, but we'll, just this one time, do a CAC meeting on Tuesday. If it doesn't happen Tuesday, it'll be a special meeting either Wednesday or Thursday prior to the budget workshop. So we're fine, we could just, we can live with it, although it's easy for me to say, since I'm not doing it.
Michelle, I think if you agree, it would be probably helpful if I volunteered to help with that process, because Walt, even though Walt is the chair and is working on an agenda right now, the details of working on how we're going to put the Zoom link and the phone number in it is, you know, the Brown Act thing is something that you and I have talked about a lot. So if I can be helpful, I'd be happy to.
Okay, thanks, Bruce. John, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, I mean, when I ran the volunteer board, we always did our own posting and stuff, and obviously, and I suppose it's three places, it's not rocket science. Now, we have the website also, and it's important to get those correct Zoom links in there. And I'm all for taking as much pressure off of staff as possible, but I really see this as necessary to move forward. Frankly, I'm surprised the volunteer board isn't wanting to meet, because there's a lot of...
There's volunteers.
Yeah, we can use volunteers. I mean, you know.
We have lots of volunteers.
Yeah, you do, but it's, I mean, the volunteer board's not doing anything, so. Yeah, but that's set aside.
Let's conclude this meeting. I think we're ready to wrap up.
I'm all for it, and I would very much support making this CAC meeting happen.
All right, terrific. So it sounds like we are going to move forward with the CAC meeting, and that is that. I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of two... I would like to adjourn tonight's meeting in memory of two Fairfax residents. Edwin Killeen Tabor, who's Rose Tabor's husband, passed away. A longstanding member of this community, Rose was married to him for sixty years. He was a strong, courageous, brave man who went through an early, an early polio disease that affected his life, but he lived a full and very active life, and it gave a lot to this community. And the other Fairfax resident is William Samuel MacDannold, who is a longtime Fairfax resident, and we send our wishes to, to Rose and to William's families, and, and that's the end of the meeting, so.
Can I add one? There's one more.
You may.
That's not on there, my Aunt Rosalyn Golden died last week, probably of COVID, in a care home in New York.
Sorry.
Yeah. All right, everybody, so everyone be well, please, stay safe, we'll see you at the same channel, maybe not at the same channel, at the June meeting, keep you posted. Okay, good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, good night.